Professor over here. I will kick things off and Gus will be joining in via computer in just a few moments here. But I do want to kick off tonight's select board meeting Tuesday, January 21st, 2025. This meeting is being held in a hybrid format. The select board is here in person. Members of the public may attend in person. In addition, members of the public who wish to participate via Zoom may do so by joining. Either you can go to the town website, click on select board meeting. You'll see the Zoom link right there. If you don't have access to a computer, there is a conference line that allows you to dial in. I think the info packet is fantastic, so click on that link and you have all the information that we're sharing here this evening or reviewing here this evening. But I do want to make sure everyone realizes that this meeting is being video recorded. And certainly before we get things underway, I do want to take a moment of appreciation for our troops serving around the globe in defense of our country. Thank you. All right, kick things off. Appointment, Department of Public Works to discuss transfer sticker, transfer station sticker program.
Good evening, thanks for having us tonight. I'm going to give a brief presentation on an overview of the transfer station. It's going to be conducted by some of our staff members. I'd like to introduce Sarah Downs, our Public Works Office Manager. Jessica Robinson, our DPW Administrative Assistant. These two here are probably the biggest part of the backbone of the DPW. They work really hard. They really do a lot of things for the town that people don't really realize. So I'm really happy that they're able to come and present tonight.
All right, thank you.
Sarah and Jess are going to talk about some of the programs that we have at the transfer station, some of the services that we currently provide. We're also going to talk about some of the, some of the elements of the sticker program that we have. We're also going to give us some historical financial information as well as present some of the recommendations that we hope that the select board will support and possibly vote on tonight. So if you have any questions during or after the presentation, we'd be happy to answer anything for you. So with that being said, I'm going to hand it over to Jess and she's going to start it off.
All right, excellent.
Just getting it up on the TV here.
Frank, you're driving?
Yep.
All right.
Right. The Medfield Transfer Station, let's see, we have it up here.
There we go, sorry.
This is just an overview, so we're going to actually go to the next slide. The Medfield Transfer Station was once operated as a landfill. It has been capped and closed for many years and has been since operating at its current location for over 30 years. It offers disposal or recycling in a seasonal swap area managed by volunteers from the Transfer Station Recycling Committee who contribute to the success of the swap program. Unlike many towns, Medfield includes the disposal of many items into the sticker price with no additional fees for certain items or trash bags. And then, next slide. Solid waste is hauled to Millbury's incinerator four times a week while single stream recycling and mixed rigid plastics are collected three times a week. Tipping fees have risen over time due to population growth and more items being recycled. The Department of Environmental Protection enforces waste ban items on certain items such as textiles, hazardous waste, electronics, mattresses, which have been a waste ban item since 2022. In 2022, a gate system was introduced. This is the next slide. Two, with two part-time employees to help improve and assist in operations. Their presence has reduced sticker misuse, which has made everything run smoother. They also assist with mattress collections and ensure items are directed to their proper place, which keeps the flow of the transfer station running more efficiently and smoother. Composting at the transfer station has been a longstanding practice with significant environmental benefits. For instance, yard waste such as grass clippings are converted into loom. Additionally, thanks to the Transfer Station Recycling Committee, we have a company come in called Black Earth that picks up up to four totes of compostable materials weekly. Since T-SARC introducing the Organics Program, participation has grown supporting sustainable efforts. Next slide. When the transfer station first opened, there was no cost or expiration for obtaining a sticker. In 1999, the transfer station introduced a two-year sticker charging $20 for the first vehicle and $5 for any additional vehicle. The sticker system was implemented to provide for accountability, ensuring proper use of the transfer station and deterring misuse. We currently require an application system that has been in place for many years. To apply, you must submit a complete, completed application along with proof of excise tax to Medfield. This can include documentation showing your vehicle registration is garaged in Medfield or an insurance binder indicating a Medfield address for the garage. I will now hand the next part off to Sarah, who's going to go over the financials.
Over the years, the sticker prices have risen. As you can see, in 2011, they were just $50 and 25 for the secondary sticker and stayed that way over two two-year cycles, three, three, three two-year cycles. After that, each two-year cycle, there was a raise. Until recently, over the last two cycles, it has stayed consistent at 110 for the first vehicle and $30 for any additional. Next. Currently, we have about 3,500 residents that get first stickers alone. After that, there is second, third, fourth, and sometimes even fifth additional vehicles at one address. Sticker revenue is brought in and it shows a flexibility in our revenue because we do it on odd years. On odd years, when you apply, the revenue looks higher than in even years when you do have the people who don't really use it as much. They might use it around the holiday times or new residents that come into town. So we do see a fluctuation in the revenue. Again, odd years being more dramatic. We open the sticker in odd years after town meeting. So some basic rules for our sticker program. As stated before, the first sticker is 110 and any additional is 30. A prior practice was with non-excise paying tax in Medfield, a surcharge of $25 was an additional fee. Leased vehicles used to show a garaged address in the leased company's region. The registry has recently changed this and as you can look at your registration, it will show you a garaged address area and that is where you pay excise tax. Your leased company will still be shown, but the town that you reside and park your car at will receive the excise tax. Over the last three years, the average excise tax is $154 to $164 per vehicle. This is from our assessing department's records. To keep up the transfer station, we have an operating budget. One of the line items is a grounds and building and that will take care of the grounds and the current transfer station building. This will maintain the facility such as the tipping floor, the garage doors when they need work done, the aging building, repaving, the gate attendant shed that we've recently added, and any equipment that we use on a daily basis. Tipping fee is for items such as recycling or solid waste that is either picked up or hauled away. As you can see, these numbers are quite greater than our grounds and building as this is charged per ton. There is never going to be the same every year because everyone throws away something different at each trip. Recycling is picked up three times a year, three times a week and solid waste is hauled four times a week. Over the last four years from 2022 today, the tipping fee alone has gone up 12.4%. This would be a current deficit of $11.03 if we were to just use the tipping fees to go along with the stickers. In a two-year cycle alone, that is $38,000. As you can see, over since 2019, green is your operating cost with salaries included and red, purple is the revenue we have brought in from sticker sales. You can see that there is quite a big gap between. In 2022, DEP put a waste ban item onto mattresses, which means that you cannot just throw away a mattress. We launched this November 1st of 2022, charging $40 per piece for each mattress piece thrown away. We have a vendor that comes in and will pick up the mattresses and dispose of them properly. As you can see, the first year was only two months, so it shows that it was even for how many mattresses we got rid of versus what it cost us to get rid of those. Other towns around are showed on the bottom right. These are towns that offer if your resident brings to a recycle center or a transfer station center. This is not a pickup service. Other towns offer a pickup service and they have different pay structure. The mattress disposal program currently works as a $40 per piece item as stated before. Currently, we are seeing anywhere from a $200 to $225 loss per trip based off of a trucking fee. It is $400 every time the truck comes to pick up. Our units can hold 50 units, however, we only have one container currently. With that median, we've only been picking up about 37 to make sure that we always have an empty container to be able to take in mattresses. If we hit 50, we are not able to pick up anymore. The projected models, if we were to raise the cost, is currently $40 and in a year for 12 trips, we're at about a $2,500 deficit. If we raise the price to $45, we have a $360 deficit. If we were to raise the cost to $50, we would have revenue in the end of 18, 18, $1,860. However, we do need to take into account the raising prices with the vendor as it has not happened yet. The transfer station and Public Works recommendations are to raise the sticker price for the first vehicle only to $125. We would like to keep the additional vehicles at the current rate of $30. For mattresses, we would propose to raise per piece to $50 to take into account the raising fees of our vendors over the next few years. We would also like to look into a second mattress container to optimize the collection, to even cut it down to maybe every six to seven weeks instead of every four weeks with getting 50 mattresses per container. And last, for non-excise tax vehicles paying the town of Medfield, we would like to charge $100 surcharge for out-of-town vehicles or consider not allowing the out-of-town or out-of-state vehicles to register for stickers at all. Or consider not allowing the out-of-town or out-of-state vehicles to register for stickers at all. We'd also like a special thanks to our T S A R C committee for all their hard work, continued efforts, dedication and cooperation. Thank you.
So if you have, if you have any questions, we're, we're happy to answer anything you have. Um, these are, these are recommendations based on, you know, what we've been seeing as trends through the transfer station over the years, what, what to anticipate coming up for, uh, additional costs. And, you know, the, the excise tax one is, you know, we're looking for the guidance from, from the board to see how to handle it. I mean, it's, it's been very difficult, uh, especially during the, uh, the sticker seasons to, to handle these vehicles and a lot of, you know, get a lot of calls from people saying, why are we allowing non, you know, out-of-state vehicles? You know, so, some have other homes and we understand that, but there is with no, do we not charge them? Or do we charge them? Or do we allow them into the transfer station or not allow them? So those are the kind of questions we're, we're looking for, for your guidance.
So first of all, thank you guys very much for coming. I appreciated the, uh, the education. So I'm curious about some of the things that you, you, you explained to me. For instance, how many mattresses are we doing a month or a year? And, and the second container, that's gonna make it work better, I guess, is what you're telling us.
So the first year, obviously, we really can't count because that was only two months. So, um, in 2023, which was our first full calendar year of accepting mattresses, we collected 453. So a mattress is the mattress alone. It does not include the box spring.
Yeah, I see the numbers now on the pie chart. Thank you.
And just one more thing to note with a mattress is if you have a split box spring, that is still counted as two pieces.
So that's like two mattresses then, without the box spring. Okay. And so, um, and the benefit of the second container. So do we buy the container or do we rent them? How does that work?
We're gonna look for the contractor to, uh, help us out with that to see what they can do for us, uh, to see if they give us an, an additional one or if we have to pay for one. Uh, and we'll talk with the, the T S A R C, uh, committee as well. If there's a, a large cost, we can, uh, possibly work together for that.
Okay. And then this, I had the same sort of question about the stickers, the, uh, how many stickers do we do? It sounds like thousands.
So in a two-year cycle, like a whole cycle, we're close to between 52 and 5,300 stickers total. That includes anywhere fir-first to fifth vehicle and replacement stickers. When you get a new car, your windshield is damaged.
Yeah, I'm fascinated, Sarah, that you said that some people have like five stickers. That's good. And, and I'm also excited to hear that, um, that the registry has changed the, the leased vehicle so that they put the Medfield garaging on them because that's, because we get a huge amount of tax revenue out of the state excise tax. We get a couple million dollars a year out of that. And if they weren't, if we weren't getting the credit for all of that apparently in the past, it's good that we are now, so.
You can now have three different addresses on your registration. You can have your leasing, you can have your garage, and you can have your mailing address.
Man, I've only got one. I've gotta get with it, I guess. So, well, I, I guess I, I, and I, I like your, your, your recommendations. And, uh, the only other thing I wanted to ask about was out-of-town people. That's the, the hundred dollar fee, is it?
That's what we are proposing.
And, um, I, I had actually thought that we didn't let out-of-towners in, but you, you know, if they own a house here, we let them in. Is that the deal?
Due to prior practice, we had continued on. This was not a select board voted on, and that's why we are presenting today for direction.
Yeah. Well, I think if people are paying, paying the property tax and even if their home here is like a summer home or something, a second home, doesn't bother me if they, they get into the, the transfer station. But you're gonna, we, we charge them a little extra. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you both.
I don't think you have to go back to the slides if I can remember my questions. The revenue in, the information or data that you had showed that there was actually, actually a surge in 2021. Is that, is that a COVID-driven bump there?
We think that it was the gate system because that's when the gate system started to be implemented. And so it was directing people up to getting the correct color sticker.
Okay. And then, and then it, then we, when it went back down, did we drive them out or is it?
So when it went back down, it went back down in an even, um, year.
Okay.
So we didn't.
So, and then, okay, and then the, the odd year, it's back up higher than 20. I got it. Okay. The, the, uh, let's think of what are all, I have one other question. I'm trying to remember what it was. Let's just stick with your recommendations then. The not, I think I know what it is now. So the, the non-excise tax vehicles, is that truly people who have a house here? Who have a house somewhere else where they can register a car more cheaply? And so they register it there as opposed, as opposed to an out-of-state person saying, hey, they gotta really, you know, I live in Sherborne and it was a lot easier for me to get to the Medfield transfer. We don't have that. We have people who actually own a house here or pay real estate taxes on a house here. It's possible they come here. I don't think they come here for vacation, for summer homes like they used to 100 years ago. It's just that there's probably an economic reason why it's advantageous for them to be registered somewhere else. Is that the?
We have the two scenarios that we've come into. They are property owners. They might just not have their, uh, cars registered here, whether they have them at a different location. It could also be a work vehicle that they're using or if they are taking care of a family member.
So that gets me to a related question. The people with the, the households that have five vehicles, are those landscapers?
I don't think so. We do ask if it's being used for commercial use and they are not. They are being used for household use.
Okay. So even the, even the people who have a car that's registered outside the state that's registered for their business, that's not a business doing something, trying to bring stuff in.
Either a company car that they are given, and whenever we see a commercial registration come, um, we do question them and we do alert them. That the gate attendant will be watching because they can see that it's a commercial plate.
It's because, so, so just to comment on that particular aspect, I, I can get the sensitivity that when people that are here in town see cars coming with out-of-state plates, they're assuming it's people from out-of-state under whatever, you know, loopholes or subterfuges they're doing that they're getting to use our transfer station. So that, that argues, don't let them do it at all. I think for me, the stronger argument, particularly if there's like a hundred dollar. So, so here's the argument. You're registered outside of our state, so your excise tax does us absolutely no good whatsoever. You're not spending, you're not giving us any money for the vehicle that you have. That would be the argument that says that you can't use it. On the other hand, you're probably paying a real estate tax, which is orders of magnitude larger than what you would be paying on your vehicle, which says this is a service that the town offers its residents. You're a resident. So that would lead me to say, we probably do want to find a way to accommodate those people for, you know, the, the hundred dollars, or you could just say, not whatever it is. Why do you get a break? Because you have out-of-state plates. Why don't you have to just pay the same amount? If you want to register, if you want a sticker for a car that doesn't have an in-state plate, well, that's fine, as long as you can prove that, you know, you're, you're a legitimate resident, but why are we giving them a break? I just, I just charge them the straight fee. If you want a sticker, it costs this. If it's an out-of-state, prove to us that you really have a residence here, we'll let you pa-buy the sticker that way. So that, I think that's how I would deal with that, which would, would get you more money. On the mattresses, uh, I, I, first off, I think we should run that in a way that you don't lose money. The only question I had is if you did, right now, you were, if I understood you right, that, that you don't fill the, the container up because you want to make sure you have room, so you, you get them hauled out before the containers full. Therefore, each of those truck trips is costing us more because it's not as efficient as it could be. Uh, so one piece of that, you said, so we'd like to go from $40 to $50 and that would, I think you were saying would fix, would basically absorb that the inefficiency cost would get absorbed in the fee. And then if we got a second container, then the inefficiency argument goes away because we can fill containers up. My question, so if you do, and I think you said, we think we should do both of those, which I'm perfectly okay with doing that. But I'm assuming the rationale for why we not only are increasing the fee for the mattress to cover the deficit, but also going with two containers that will allow us to be more efficient, so we probably could run a surplus is to your point, you said, but the truckers haven't ever raised their rates. So we would like to do both of those things, which seem reasonable enough. Uh, and then if the truckers raise the rates, at least the first time they do it, we're actually in front of the curve.
We're not changing prices every year.
So that sounds fine to me.
So I'm gonna follow that train of thought with, I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. And thank you both for coming. I very much appreciate all the information. You, right now, the truck comes how many times during the month to pick it up?
So we call to have it picked up, but we're averaging every four, four-ish weeks, sometimes five.
Okay, so at least once a month, if not just over a month.
Correct.
And if you bring on this new container, is that giving you, because it sounds like the, the, what's killing us right now is just the pure truck cost coming in. If somebody come pick it up, we're upside down. So I have no problem with the fee going up, and I'm actually kind of intrigued. Why do the other towns charge more? I thought the state, when they did this, had a mandate on what to charge. That's not, so it's per town?
It's per town.
Okay, so we realized we were trying to be nice, but nice didn't get us anywhere. So whatever, whatever, 50 is what you guys would suggest on that. I have no problem with that. We shouldn't be upside down doing this.
We, we, we're not trying to make money on the.
No, no, I know that.
We're, we're trying to break even and anticipating increased costs on, on everything's gonna, you know, nothing's gonna go down.
Yep.
Uh, we don't want to, we're trying not to hit our residents every single cycle to say, oh, gotta raise prices, gotta raise prices. With this, we're hoping that we can last a little longer, even if we do, uh, get a deficit in the, you know, upcoming years and then wait another cycle before we have to raise it. But, uh, you know, it, it's just right now, it just, the, the trend is that we're anticipating some increases. And as you can see by the graph there, we're, um, you know, right now, even at $50, it'll be, we're still in the middle. We're not anywhere near the, the higher rates that, uh, some of the towns are charging.
Right. And, and so to that, I mean, even if a resident was, gives a hard time, they can certainly see. If I look at it, I think the wall poles on the far end and, uh, well, Sudbury, Weston, Wayland, Franklin.
Paulson is the most at a hundred dollars.
That's harsh. But you did say earlier, if it's a split.
If it's a split box spring, that is counted as two pieces. Even if it's a crypt mattress.
Yeah. So the vendor, you know, the vendor, uh, they're the ones that charge us regardless of the size. If we could change that, we would, but we're at kind of the mercy of the, the disposal units right now.
And the question on the application, and I should have looked this up before the meeting tonight. When, when somebody fills out an application, because you have to do that before you can bring it down to the transfer station, do they give you any feel for timing? Because I'm thinking if you had a feel for what was coming in, it would give you a little wiggle room to say when you may need to empty out what you have.
So, um, I think it's two or three days that we have to call for trucking. We try to call around that 37 marker because if, if their weekend goes by and we have 10 mattresses, 15 mattresses coming in, we can't accept all of them.
Okay. Yeah. And I, and I get you're, you're not trying to turn someone away after they've tied on the roof of their car or done whatever, because it's not like brain recyclers.
The E P standards, they have to be handled in a certain way. And once it hits 50, right now, we have nowhere else to store them.
Okay.
So your, your solution is that extra container, because then every, every trucking will be 40 mattresses. You'll just fill it up every time. So that'll be perfect if you can get that other container. Could I ask, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
You mentioned two, 2021 was a, a time when something, when we started to get more revenues. And it was because we had the, is that when the, the little house at the front?
That's when we started introducing it, yes.
Yeah, okay. And, and do people try to sneak in now or not?
Not anymore.
They have a tough time doing that. But what happens, you know, our guys who work down the transfer station, they can't be looking over their shoulders and see, um, you know, the, the stickers coming in. We found that a lot of maybe a, a good handful would have, you know, would take advantage of the system and not get their sticker until the second year and want a prorated sticker. So by having the gate attendants there, they're, they're forced to get a sticker right when they're supposed to get a sticker. Or else they, they're not able to use the services. And, you know, we're not trying to deter people from using the transfer station. We're trying to make it easier. We're trying to make it fair for everyone. And the people that are using it the right way and correctly, we, we don't want to punish them and we want to make sure that everybody's playing by the same rules. That's all.
Yeah, but we do want to keep the, the out-of-towners coming in and just dumping it. Do we allow the, do we allow commercial people to use it?
No, we don't.
Okay. Landscapers, no?
They, so again, some of the trucks that are being, uh, registered are landscaper trucks or commercial trucks. But our gate attendants will make sure that they are not bringing in commercial debris or commercial, um, you know, items. And that's why having the gate attendants has really been really helpful.
Good, good.
The other thing about that too is generally, not that we want to attract landscapers, but they're usually bringing recyclable materials as opposed to bringing the trash that we pay a tipping fee for.
And just to clarify, tipping fee, in case anyone's watching and asking, what is it? That's when you bring something and you toss it over into the cement building, right? Is that, would you consider the tipping fee?
Correct. Anything in the tipping floor, the tipping fee also includes all our recyclables too.
And so did we notice a difference when we went from, I remember the old days where you had to do the green bottles, the brown bottles, the clear bottles, the plastic, and now we have single stream. So did that do anything for us in?
Well, at, at first, uh, you know, single stream has been really popular because everybody could put it all in one container. When you separate them, now you're caught, you're introducing costs to dispose of different companies coming in or bring it to, uh, another facility. When the prices are higher, it's, sometimes it might be more beneficial to be separated, but the work, the cost, the equipment that you need, the cost, the return on investment isn't there.
Okay.
Um, right now, you know, everybody's used to the single stream. It's hard to get them out of that mode and then back into it when you need to. So, you know, it's been as successful, we're trying to do, you know, with the, with the transfer station recycling committee, trying to find ways to make recycling more attractive. Now with the textiles, the, um, the mattresses, all being waistband items, we're getting more and more recyclables. And also the, uh, the organics that the transfer station recycling committee had introduced, we're gaining more popularity with that as well.
Okay.
Can I, can I put a plug in on something here? Then this is not directed at, you have an influence over it, but it's not directed at you guys. This is for anybody here, anybody who's listening here. There's a, the, first off, it's a question, I'm gonna start with a question. At one point in time, the Girl Scouts were collecting cans and bottles that had deposits. But I think it also, or concurrent or prior to that, the town was also doing that. And that accumulated into a pretty significant chunk of change. As far as I know now, I don't, it, it's, so my question is, is the town still doing that? And are the Girl Scouts still doing that?
Don't know about the Girl Scouts. The town is still doing it and that money goes to the Gris Mill.
Okay, so this is, this what, this is public, public service announcement. This is what, the pet peeve of mine because it started with my boys who kept throwing beer cans and soda cans in the blue boxes. And then just before I'd go to the transfer station every time, I would dig back down through those, pull all the nickel deposit cans and bottles out, put them over into where I bring them back to get them returned. Would I go to?
How old were your sons when you started doing?
It started, it's some, some, some subset of that started in high school and it continues to this day as they're in their late twenties and thirties when they come. So I still check the blue box after they've been over for the weekend before I go to the transfer station. But after I, and, and I don't hammer on them because they, they have to make their own decisions. But I have to make my own decisions too. And I go through those blue boxes and I clean that stuff out. And then I go to the transfer station. And as I'm dumping all my stuff on one side of one of those machines, I see almost everybody sitting there dumping on the other side. And I'm looking at all these bottles with deposits and cans and with deposits all going in the, the recycling instead of going in the deposit thing where we get good money. So if, if you're gonna do that, think about it from an environmental standpoint, from an economic standpoint, and from a town citizenship standpoint, you can help the town out without it costing you anything other than putting those out and turning them in in the place that we collect them.
But where is it?
Where is it?
Where is the, the, if you're going to bring recyclables that are worth a nickel?
So it is next to, between our tipping floor over by where you get rid of your fluorescent bulbs.
Okay, so redeemable beverage, okay. Might, might I make a suggestion? Is there any way to bring that closer to where people are throwing their recyclables? Because once you park your car up there and there's lined, people just want you to move your car and get the hell out of there.
It would, it would be, it would be difficult to have it near the recyclables as you want to keep that flow of traffic moving. You would have people parking all over the place trying to, to do that. So that's why this is a kind of a dead space where people would drop off the tip floor and then head over to there and be by themselves to, to put them into those containers.
But a bigger sign so that as people are leaving the tip floor and suddenly go, oh, I didn't know that was there, that might.
We're also looking to, uh, get a, a newer container. I mean, that one's pretty beat up and, um, you know, we do have, uh, some plans to do that, so.
And, and is it all for one? Is it glass recyclable can, anything worth a nickel goes? And, and is it all for one? Is it glass recyclable can, anything worth a nickel goes in that one thing?
There's, there's separations there.
There are separations. That's why, to your point, that's why it may take a little bit of time? Okay, all right. Because I feel like if, if somebody saw that where we recycle today, it gives them a chance to, even when they're there to be like, ooh, wait a minute.
No glass containers.
No glass, but just, just the cans and.
Just cans. Okay.
It was those recyclables that bought the water wheel at the Gris Mill.
Yes. Okay, all right. Good, good service announcement there. All right, so, so in simple terms, when people look at it from an annual basis, we started off at ten dollars a car and two dollars and fifty cents for a second car, but that was in nineteen ninety-nine. And then as we moved through, here we have this past year when I went and did my first car for a hundred and ten, so fifty-five dollars a year, and whopping fifteen dollars a year. You're keeping it fifteen dollars a year for the second car. And now for people to just look at it, now it's gonna be sixty-two dollars and fifty cents per year for the first car.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, I don't know, and I'm gonna throw this out to anyone in the audience. I don't know if anyone has their trash collected, um, with the big bin at the end of the driveway? Does anybody have that? Okay, what do you pay, do you pay weekly, monthly?
We all go to the transfer station.
Do you mind going on the mic as I put you on the spot there, Lauren? Sorry. Because I, people may wanna know this answer, so I figure.
Name's Lauren, we live over in Sixtirfield. We go to the transfer station because we do have private trash pickup and they don't recycle glass. Um, and so we go to the transfer station for our glass, and we did go to the transfer station for composting. Uh, but now we have the Black Earth curbside composting. Um, but I honestly don't know what we pay, because I just, it just gets taken out. But I think it's definitely, definitely more expensive than going to the transfer station.
About six hundred bucks a year.
I think it's something like that.
And that's why I was going there, I think.
Sometimes it's almost a hundred dollars a month.
Okay, and so that's where.
It's not always, there are some that are not good and don't always come regularly, and it's kind of a pain, so.
So, and that's why I wanted that, just data point for, uh, and I was busting Christine, I'm like, oh, they're not gonna raise it. But when you look at what you're doing and how much, it, it's so easy to go to the transfer station. And it's not like you only get one trip a day. I mean, you can, whether you're bringing leaves, whether you're bringing, you're getting ready to move, um, it's a huge asset for people in town. And, you know, I know I've helped my neighbors that don't have a sticker, but they're in a jam. So, um, you know, if we're gonna vote tonight, it would be voting on bumping up the mattress from current price of forty to fifty and supporting the, the new, that would allow you to support the new, um, uh.
The new container for the mattress.
The recontainer. Um, I was gonna say recycled container, but I know it's not it. And then would be voting on increasing the sticker for summer of twenty twenty-six?
So the new cycle will open right after town meeting of this year.
Okay, and then the new sticker would be effective twenty twenty-six?
July first of twenty twenty-five.
Odd calendar year is when you buy the sticker, but it actually starts with an even.
So, so July of?
Of this year.
This year, okay. I couldn't remember when I bought my sticker.
They open it a little earlier just to, uh, for traffic, or people leaving town, that they're prepared when they come back.
Okay. Uh, before we put it to vote, anybody in the audience have any questions, comments? If you do, please come up to the mic, just so that people at home can hear you.
Hi, Jeff Hyman, Metacometer Street. Um, just a question on the numbers. You said you, on average, it's like four hundred mattresses a year?
Yeah, this, this past, uh, calendar year was four hundred and fifty-three mattresses.
Okay, but you pick up, so it holds fifty, and you have it picked up once a month? That sounds like more mattresses than that.
Did they pick them up at thirty-seven?
It's a median. It, every time is different.
No, it was.
It's the last six months.
The other question was, with the fifty dollars, I'm sorry if you answered this, is that covering our cost? I mean, we're looking to cover the cost. We should always cover the cost.
Go, go to the slide if you don't mind, Frank. It, it's actually gonna give a little wiggle room for, for, we're not looking to make a profit, but what it does is it prevents them coming back next year and saying, now we need to go up another two dollars. So if you look at it by going to fifty, there's a difference right now from if, two, two hundred and fifteen to, and annualized, twenty-five hundred, round up to twenty-six hundred, um, to, right now, with not knowing what increases this, um, delivery or pickup, excuse me, company may have, it gives us a little wiggle room without having to come back a nickel and dime. There's also a question from the audience. Um, Dave is asking, why is the dump sticker going up? Um, so Frank, can you do me a favor and go to the slide that showed the, uh, the revenue versus what the stickers bring? There you go, you had it. Um, so Dave, if you are watching, you'll see right here that, um, the stickers are not even coming close to covering the expenditures, uh, of the transfer station. And we're not trying to bring the purple bar all the way to green, but we're just trying to make a small dent. And if I'm speaking out of turn, you can correct me. Um, so that is why we're discussing looking to do an increase from a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty-five for the first car, but leaving the second car at thirty dollars. And Dave, you can type back if you have any other questions or hopefully answer what you were asking.
Just, it's because of my comment, and I, I would say you should have that applying to both cars garage tier and cars that are non-exise tax cars. It's just a flat, that's the fee for.
The only question I would have on that, and thank you for reminding me for that, is, you know, you guys will know this, and, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, Mo. But when people come in and they don't have, I'm sure some people are doing it totally legit, right? That they, they have a home in New Hampshire, or they're in Florida, and it's less expensive to insure their car there. Um, and they're not here enough, so they're taking advantage of being a full-time resident in another state. But yet they come up here, whether they have their second home and they just don't use it, and so this is not their primary residence. But then, I just wanna make sure we're not leaving the wiggle room for people to, to work around that because of the way the, the, um, Registry of Motor Vehicles is doing the address scenario. And I'm gonna give you a, for example, and I know Georgia, I don't wanna get mad at me, because I know she, it's not her fault. But I have a car that's a twenty-nineteen, and I have a car that's a two thousand and six. Two years ago, I paid more excise tax for my two thousand and six car than my twenty-nineteen. And at the time, it was only, I think, uh, it was only two years old, or three years old at best. And I was like, okay, how does that work? Right? It was not Georgia's fault, it's the R M V. So all I question too is, are we getting the right figures from the R M V? When you give the average on cars, I know an example was given to me that someone had a brand-new, I think it was a hundred and eighty thousand dollar Mercedes-Benz, and they were paying like twenty-two dollars. But yet my two thousand and six Lexus, that is literally my transfer station car, I was paying more than, so it just didn't add up. So I'm curious, when we look at if the excise tax fee is supposed to be helping the town? Is the data coming from the R M V accurate? It's not you guys' responsibility, but it's just food for thought.
The state depreciates the fair market value of the cars dramatically. No one would sell their car for the value of the car that is on their, their excise tax sticker. And that's because nobody wants to pay excise taxes on cars. It's a very unpopular tax. Fortunately, it's a tax that goes to the town of Medfield, so that we have an interest in it being higher, but nobody really wants it to be higher. Um, and the system the state has put in is one where the, the prices go down dramatically after, after you buy the car. Three or four years in, you're usually in a very reasonable range for the tax.
But wouldn't that be odd that a car that is?
Your situation is very odd.
I was just like, okay, this makes no sense. I mean, because I, I know the value of my other car is significantly more.
So I just, I have a, I have a clarification, because I think I've heard two things this evening. So Sarah and Jess are recommending a hundred dollar surcharge in addition to the sticker fee.
Oh.
So I don't know whether or not you had picked up on that.
I misunderstood, I misunderstood that.
Yeah. So just for context, when we first started doing the transfer station sticker program, we didn't allow any out-of-state cars. So even if you did have a property here, pay real estate taxes, and have a house either in New Hampshire or the Cape or wherever, and you had your car garage there and were paying your excise taxes there, we did not allow you at the transfer station. Over the years, that seems to have been relaxed and a past practice, a precedent was set. Not sure who did it, but, um, we all know I do. Um, anyway, that was, that was never voted on by the board. So I think as we're changing the fee structure for this, it's the right time to also make a decision on that, because it's not fair for Sarah and Jess to represent a surcharge when it hasn't been voted by the board.
In that case, I'm, I'm in favor of the recommendation you had. I didn't, I didn't, thanks for picking up on that.
We wanna make sure we have it clearly on the application as well.
Okay. All right, so it's three things you need us to approve. Okay. Uh, so again, Chris?
Chris Potts, Seven Curb Street. Um, so three points. One is, I just, I cannot say enough about how great the transfer station staff is. They are just phenomenal. It's just always such a great experience going in there. It's really actually a lot of fun. We fight over it in our house, and we're just gonna go to the dump. So I just wanna applaud everybody that works there. The second thing that I'm really curious about is, well, Nancy has done an incredible job with the swap. And so I have a two-part question. One is, um, are there any costs associated to the town with running the swap? And then the second part is, do we happen to know whether we are attracting people from more people to the transfer station because of the swap? I don't, it just anecdotally, it seems like I see a lot of more people filling up like pickup trucks. And it's not new life, which is another wonderful benefit. But it, like, they, they're like cleaning out the place and then walk it, you know, like driving out. So it made me wonder whether there are some like commercial activities going on that are maybe happening. I don't know, I just didn't know whether you looked at that or not.
So, you know, with, with the guys at the, the gate and Johnny and Bill that've been there for, forever, they're, you know, they're, they have really a keen eye for, for looking at what happens at the transfer station. I, I think the swap is very popular, and I think it does attract people to get stickers. I think maybe some people even buy stickers just to use the swap. Uh, we don't allow outside, um, entities to use the services of this, of the, uh, transfer station. So everybody that has a sticker is allowed to come in. Anybody from the outside, we don't allow. People would ask, well, I'm, I wanna donate things. And, you know, it's, it's hard for us to say, yeah, you, why don't you come? And you can donate this, and then, but if, once they get in, they can use the transfer station anytime. So it's, it's a residential transfer station, it's not commercial. It's only for red, Medfield residents, that's what it's, it's, was meant for. So that's what we try to do. And with the gate attendants, it makes our job a lot easier, because they control that and they, um, they make sure everybody's playing on, on the same field. But I, I do believe that the swap does attract a lot of the residents, um, to, to come to the swap and get stickers. They're open from May through, uh, September, and I'll give a plug-in for you, Barb. But they, they do a great job down there, and, um, it does, uh, you know, it helps with, uh, the people that we have down there that are, you know, that help to direct people to different locations.
Yes, that's great. What's the cost of the running, running just the swap alone?
The swap doesn't cost us anything except for sometimes, uh, a new tent or a, uh, or some kind of, you know, electrical down there that they need. So it's very minimal at times, and a lot of it, uh, comes from our R D P funds as well that we get from the state. So it's, it's, uh, very minimal to run that.
Thanks.
Just a lot of volunteers.
All right, so if there are no more questions, I'm gonna put this up. Motion to vote?
You, you can correct me if I, I think I have this written down, right? So I move that we, uh, accept the recommendations of the, the, uh, D B W, uh, transfer station staff to raise the following fees. Raise the two-year sticker fee to a hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Hundred and twenty-five.
Hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's, oh, you said.
I wasn't gonna let that get by, Chris.
You said sixty-two and a half, and I divided a hundred and thirty-five by two and got sixty-two and a half. So yeah, that's just what she said. Uh, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Do my math again?
Nope, you're good. Uh, second, raise the mattress fee to fifty dollars and, uh, procure a second container to achieve greater efficiency, efficiency on the hauling costs. And, uh, impose a one hundred dollar surcharge on the sticker fee for out-of-state registered cars of med, of town residents.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
All right.
All right, Sarah and Jessica, thank you very much.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, guys. Very informative. I hope everyone that watched or is here tonight picked up some little nuggets of knowledge. Thank you. Right. So moving, uh, to our second appointment here, Marion Binaldi, Town Clerk, to request a vote to opt-out vote by mail for twenty twenty-five and a vote to appoint election workers. And you just get to say, as listed in our info pack, since we don't have a list, she's good without having to read it.
So I'm asking you to do your yearly appointment of the election workers and the election warden and the assistant warden. For the election calendar for twenty twenty-five, we are just looking at, at this moment, barring any particular special elections or anything like that. But at this moment, we're just looking for our local election that will be happening March thirty-first, Monday. And, um, the town meeting as well, um, these workers will also be working the town meeting as well. So that's the appointment for that. And then the second item of business, um, is, um, asking, same as you guys did last year, is to vote, to opt-out of the vote by mail. So the Vote Act of twenty twenty-two actually required, um, you, you get the cards in the mail from the state saying, do you wanna, you know, a ballot for your primary, ballot for the general election? Um, when they wrote the legisla, legislation, it also includes locals. So this particular year, there are no state elections. I'm asking you to opt-out of the vote by mail and in turn, early voting for our local election. Because it's a local election, I do not have the capability of going to the state to try and get any money back like I do for primaries and for generals.
Yeah.
If anybody wants a absentee ballot, they're more than welcome to get one. But we're just looking to not do the early vote, to not spend the amount of money that we have in the past year moving forward for the local, so.
All right.
That's it.
Marion, thank you for coming. My question was, I saw the sixty-five-hundred figure. Is that the extra cost for doing the, the, the voting by mail?
No, that's essentially what it would cost. So that would be for postage, basing the average on what we just did for the primary. So the postage to mail a ballot is over a dollar at this point, for us to ma, mail a ballot out. Between the general and the primary, you're gonna be averaging about twenty, two thousand to three thousand ballots to locals, right? If the, if, my numbers are based on twenty twenty-five. Then that in turn would trigger you to do early voting, so we'd have to do early voting here at town hall. We would have to staff it. I have to get police officers, because now I have a polling location, so I'm gonna need details. So that's your overall figure that I, based on average of numbers of what I estimate it would cost for you to do vote by mail and early voting.
So that's the extra cost that we will save if we, if we opt-out?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
At state elections and primaries, I can fight for that money with the state, through the local mandate, through the auditors. I, I don't have that capability, obviously, when it's a local.
Do you have sort of a, a, I'm sorry, a ballpark figure of what it costs to run an election in Medfield?
Um, it depends on the election. It depends on the election. I'd have to crunch numbers. I hate just guessing, but, I don't know. Eight to ten, eight, somewhere between there? Eight to ten, depending upon the election.
Okay. All right.
And again, then you're taking into account of what money I could get back through the local mandate. We're kind of fighting or working with the state right now.
Working with.
Working with the state right now, of trying to get money back regarding the September primary and the November election. We did get money back from the March primary that averaged about fifty-six hundred that we got back for that particular election, so. They have certain rules about what they will reimburse for and what they will not.
Thank you for working with the state.
Yes, it's lovely. Love it.
I like your proposal. I'm in favor.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm personally in, in favor where you're taking this, but I wanted to just be clear about a couple of things. If we do this, what for, and I'm as much talking to anybody who's listening as anything else. If we do this, people can either go to the polls to vote, or they can exercise normal absentee ballot proceeded, procedures to cast a ballot if, if they don't wanna go vote, or if they can't be there for a vote. That would be the way you would vote in absentia on the election day.
Exactly. So essentially, if they wanted a ballot by mail, they could, on our website, they can fill out an application, they can email it to me saying, Marion, I want a ballot, and I will mail it to them. The vote by mail ballot takes out the implication that I have to get you all, get all the voters an application. You know, you get the little cards, like that part of it is just going away. But they could certainly get one, they just have to contact me.
Right. So only, I'm, I'm arguing the opposite side of where I'm on, so just to make sure it's, it's clear. Have you gotten any feedback from people who really say, gee, but we really wanna be able to do this, you know, normal voting where we, we don't have to be there on election day? Is there any overwhelming groundswell that I wanna vote local, but I don't wanna have to go to the?
I would, no, not now. Um, after the pandemic, I would be giving you a different answer, but things seem to be shifting.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with it.
Yeah, no, I have no questions. I'm, I totally support why you're asking this. It certainly makes sense. And this is, this is, hopefully, you're gonna stay a quiet year for you compared to last year.
Yeah, it would be nice. Having said that, the election season though was great, and we.
Yes, yes.
Got through it, and, um, lots of help and support from the town and all of the departments, so. But yes, we're looking forward to focusing on some.
Marion, do you want us to just vote this one election, or do you want us to vote a policies?
I, um, I'm gonna be doing this every year, um, because. I, um, I'm going to be doing this every year, um, because, but, um, depending upon the election, you know, or depending upon the year, but I'm always going to be coming to you, asking you to opt-out for the local election unless something dramatically changes.
Yeah, I was just thinking if you want us to opt-out going forward, I'd be willing to do that too.
I mean, that would be a question for Mark, but I think it has to be done yearly, but I don't, I don't know the legal implication of it. Do you have an opinion, Mark?
I haven't looked at the legislation.
We'll do tonight.
I think it has to be done on a yearly thing and I'd be coming to you for the election workers and things of that nature anyway. So it's not an issue.
All right, motion?
Uh, yep. I move that we vote to opt-out of vote by mail for the 2023 local election.
Twenty-twenty-five.
Twenty-twenty-five, I don't have my glasses on. Twenty-twenty-five local election.
Yes.
And I think we'd do that one separate from the election workers.
Okay, so motion for that?
Second.
Did you make that? Is that plural? She said it applies to the town.
No, 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 that's the election workers. Nope, you're good.
Thank you, Mark. You're running cover for me. I called it out. It was twenty-twenty-three.
So, so he, so Pete's second. So all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next one?
Second motion. I, I move that we appoint the election workers listed in the information packet in tonight's meeting for, uh, to work at the upcoming local election in March.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Chief Garrett, Police Department, to provide a quarterly update.
Uh, I don't know.
All right, good evening, chief.
Hold for one sec. Is Rep. Tarski here? He was, Rep. Tarski had a seven o'clock if he is here.
Okay. We, is, I'm good to go.
I don't see him. Okay. All right.
Oh, sorry.
If he steps in, you need me to pause, I can certainly do that. So.
Okay.
He gave us five minutes and then decided.
See you professor. All right, fire away. So say that to the chief. I'm not really sure I should say that. You can start.
I don't have a beautiful presentation that DPW had. Um, I was very impressed though of like drafts. You know, I'm here for a quarterly update. This is probably one of the first times I can say that we should probably talk about more than just the quarter. I think that this quarter represents, um, probably five years, five and a half years of really hard work. You know, I talked to you when you hired me about a few things and I said, we take a good, good department, make it great. And a great department strive for excellence. And I think we are in that mode right now. The officers are firing on all cylinders. Uh, there are three things that we set to really get a good grasp on. I think the end of this year represented all those things coming into fruition. The first is community engagement. I think that it's safe to say Nova is probably the big hit in the department. While she is a fabulous dog, the reality of it is Officer Hayne is just the right person to have with that tool and that resource. Uh, the dog might get people to start the conversation, but he gets people to continue the conversation. And that's just a skillset that, that, you know, we've been looking for in our officers. Uh, we started our motorcycle unit this year. Sergeants Christopher Lee and Tess went to, uh, very difficult motorcycle school so that they could go out and ride safely. Both of them said when they went to the school, they felt like they had never ridden a motorcycle before because the class was so intense. Uh, but what it did for us is it took down the barrier of the cruiser. It allowed us to be a lot more accessible and easily approachable to the community. The feedback from those officers has been that they are getting, uh, approached at stoplights. When they're in neighborhoods, kids obviously are really drawn to the bike and it's nice tradition, right? It's something that Medfield hadn't had for years. The final thing would be that we trained a little over half of our police department in the bike patrols. I think you saw some of them out on Medfield Day. Um, very excited. I ride the bike myself just to get out of the office. Put the uniform on, remember I'm a police officer. I'm going to talk to people. Um, so community engagement, I think, has been fantastic this year. The second thing for us is, uh, traffic enforcement and traffic enforcement is the number one complaint in town that we hear from residents over and over again. Uh, whether it's a perception issue or a genuine problem, there is a concern in town with our residents that people are speeding through and abusing our roadways. I'm not going to talk about what our reputation was. I'm going to talk about what our reputation is now. If you drive slow in town, you'll see a beautiful, uh, town and beautiful scenery. If you drive fast, you will see one of our police officers. That is our, um, our motto right now. We talked about, I talked about six years ago, we would educate, we would warn and we would enforce. And we are doing just that. We are in enforcement mode. I think our officers, we don't play catch'em, police things. Right? The guys, whoever did that for me right now. I don't do catch'em policing and I said I wouldn't do it when you hired me. Uh, I don't believe that we go out and we try and catch the individual. I believe that we post that car as visible as possible. You should see it in both directions and you should slow down. Uh, if you look at Weston 27, when we went out and did enforcement, we didn't hide the cars. We put them right in the middle of the intersection. We still had fifty-seven violators in nineteen hours. So I will tell you that we went from educate to warn to enforce very, very quickly. Uh, this year, Pete, you had commented last year that you thought the activity was a little low and I agreed wholeheartedly with you. Our officers conducted five thousand eight hundred and four car stops this year. Uh, they are out working very, very hard to keep our roadway safe. Uh, we do not have a mandate or a quota for tickets. I do not encourage our officers to write, uh, money citations. We are simply trying to engage the community and get them to respect our roadways when they travel through our town. And it's as simple as that. It's about keeping our residents safe. The last thing and perhaps the thing I am most proud of is I have a school-aged daughter. And when I see acts of violence on the news, uh, first person I call is Dr. Morrison. I think we, we are both always, it's in the back of our minds, right? That school safety is probably the second biggest concern. Education is a huge thing for our community, but school safety is something that we want for all, all our children. We want our kids to feel like they can go into that brick and mortar building and feel safe. So we've had an SRO in the schools. The SRO was primarily dedicated to the high school. Um, I wanted to change that. That had to be a culture change. It took time. We had a plan. We had a purpose and we have the people in place now to make those changes happen. So this year, in addition to our SRO, we have a school, uh, resource supervisor who oversees the program. And we have identified four officers to go into the schools as, uh, school liaison officers. They receive training and their primary focus is to go into each of our other schools and simply meet with school staff and the students. This isn't to discuss anything that might be going wrong in the school or any specific incidents if there are that gets deferred to the SRO. This is just to have our policemen talking to our youth, um, letting them see them at all ages coming up through school so that our first interaction with them is not because they had an incident at the high school that the police are now talking to them. We want to be part of the community. I will tell you, I spoke to Dr. Morrison about it and the feedback has been absolutely off the charts. The schools are thrilled with it. The kids are referring to the officers as Officer Mike, you know, uh, Officer Rob. Obviously Nova's still the favorite. But it's, we took our program from one person and we've expanded it to six. And with the department that has seventeen sworn officers, nineteen, including myself and the deputy, I think that's pretty damn good. Um, and I think that the schools, uh, the students that are going and the parents that send their students and entrust them to us to stay safe. Uh, I hope that we're doing, doing right by them. So that is kind of just a quarterly update. I just think that we set out, uh, five years ago to, to do something which is difficult in policing and that's change of culture. Uh, and I feel like we've been pretty successful. I could not be any more proud of the men and women that work for this town and they give a hundred and ten percent every day. So. Do you have any questions?
So I would, it's not a question so much as I just think that, I think it's mission accomplished for you and, and I'm very appreciative of everything you've done for the Medfield Police Department and the town. So thank you. It, it feels very different to me than, than when, before you came here. So I'm very pleased. Um, I, I do like, you know, none of us like getting stopped by the police. That has happened to me. And, uh, but it is the way that we get compliance. And, and so that the fact that you're doing over five thousand stops, um, that's a hundred a week or something. And so that's, I see your, your, your cruisers out everywhere. As you say, they're, they're very visible and they're all over the place, uh, now. So I think it's, I think it's a great plan, a great system that you're working and I'm hoping that the, the speeding will, will stop or get abated at least.
Again, I, I should, I probably should have led with this. I don't think that we have more speeders this year than we had last year or the year before. I think that we are doing our job better.
No doubt.
Right. So I know that there's a new statute, I think, about cameras on, on school buses. That strikes me as a good idea because that's one area where I don't think anybody should be passing a, a school bus with blinking red lights. And, and people do that apparently. Um, so that, I think that's one of those areas where if we can get a photo of a license plate that that person deserves a ticket in the mail. I don't know if that's how it works, but, um, I know that we can't use cameras in Massachusetts for, for traffic violations at stop signs. I would favor that because I don't, I think that's dangerous and, and that people are going to get hurt, um, when you run the red light. But we don't have that option, but we do have the, it for the, the, the school buses now, I gather. And what was the other thing I was going to ask you about? I guess that's it. So I just, I'm, I'm very encouraged by, by the Police Department. So thank you.
Um, as far as, uh, lights, traffic lights or, um, red light cameras, as you just mentioned, they are not lawful in Massachusetts. They're exploring it. They're going to be exploring it for towns that are populations of twenty-five thousand or over. So we wouldn't be in that, that mix right now. Um, I don't, I'm not going to try and bamboozle you here. I'm not sure of what just came out with the, um, with the school buses. I'm very familiar with that program in Rhode Island. We used it very effectively. Uh, the school buses, if, correct me if I'm wrong, are privatized. Uh, they're not owned by the town. So that would likely be a decision that the company would have to make that investment. Um, it is the one ticket that we do have zero tolerance, uh, policy for. It's the only ticket I've actually written in town, uh, is, uh, somebody passing a school bus. What we will do is periodically send our officers out behind the buses and they will just follow them for, you know, a few blocks or portion of their route to see if anybody passes them. Um, haven't gotten a complaint in a while, but that is a ticket should the companies, um, install them and wish to pursue it. I think that's a zero tolerance, uh, ticket all day long.
There was one other thing. Um, I think I saw something recently that, that you were suggesting that we consider the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit for the whole town. I know that, that was permitted under the, the, was it called the municipal modernization?
Yes.
Massachusetts Modernization Act.
Twenty-seventeen, yep. So.
That strikes me as a, as a, as a good thing to think about doing, although twenty-five miles an hour on Route 27 doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but.
So I, I will say this, it was a conversation that was being had where I was talking about, I'm a huge proponent that we should have twenty-five mile an hour zones in our residential areas. Um, I think if you live on Summer Street, Pine Street, Nebo, we talked about, there are some streets that thirty really is very fast. Um, and we know that people rarely do thirty, right? They do thirty-two, they do thirty-three, thirty-five. Um, I think that that's a conversation that has to take place with the town because it will impact flow of traffic. I think it needs to be researched. I know we're talking about some new intersections tonight. So I think it'd be really important to see how our roadways look before we make that decision. I'm going to own this, um, sword is mine to fall on. I brought it up in a meeting. Christine mentioned she put it on the warrant. I did not realize the warrant was closing last week and I thought I had time to.
In full disclosure, you thought we were brainstorming and I took it one step further.
So there might be something on the warrant that I, I, while I do support, I don't think is, the timing is appropriate. I think it requires a lot of community input because it is something that is going to change the flow of traffic.
So, and I happened to go over the list of warrant articles with the warrant committee. Um, and based on their reaction, I called the chief when I left the meeting and said, I think we need to hold this. We have a lot more education to do because we got a significant amount of pushback from our own, uh, people. We're going to really need to, to do some education. So we may hold it, um, and not put it on this year so that we can do a full education campaign. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, the eight-hundred-pound gorilla in the room is, the state's not all on the same page about this because Mass DOT, which normally has input on setting speed limits, uh, had took a position on this and notwithstanding the statute, you still had to comply with that. So it needs some, I was working through.
It's not as easy as a vote.
Right.
Okay.
Just very quick thoughts and they're building on yours and you were, when you first came and we were interviewing you to be the chief, one of the reaction, one of the thoughts I had coming out of the Providence Police Department. My first reaction was, this isn't, this isn't Providence, you know, I don't know if it might be a little too, too hard-nosed for Medfield. That was first thought. The second thought after I'd met you though was, gosh, how many opportunities does a town police department have to have a leader of a department who's had the exposure to a comprehensive, large department that has the resources, the insight and the expertise to do things that usually only large departments get to do. And, and I, I was thinking of it more in terms of the career opportunity for the police in a town like ours, where if you're coming to a department like this in a quiet town like ours, chances are you're going to have a quiet and fairly predictable career doing things in fairly quiet and predictable ways. So when you came, my thought was, this could be really good because this is about the only way that a, a police officer in a small town like this could get exposed to, you know, high-level police operations. And, and I think a number of the things that you've introduced, because you, you're the one that brought in the canine. You know, there's a whole bunch of things that you've introduced that I'm aware of. And there's a whole bunch of other things I think you've introduced internal to the department that I don't know specifically, but around how officers should think about what they do, how a department should operate to be most effective at fulfilling its mission. In my sense, since you've been here, even though in some of the early years, you weren't getting a whole lot of, you know, help in terms of bringing those things on board. That's one of the things I've always appreciated about what you've done. Uh, you talked about the last five years. Uh, when I first went on active duty in the army, the very, one of the first things you get, you get taught is come in and set the standard high. You could always reduce the standard, but it's hard as all get out to raise a standard. And what we, you call a culture change, but I, I can look at it and just say, well, a bunch of standards had to go up and that was a painful process, which I, I appreciate your fortitude for being able to do that. Now, I look at this department and I agree with everything you've described and I've said, and now the challenge for the department, and I'm, this, I'm not, I'm not telling you anything you don't know, is there's a real interesting way a police department in a town like ours needs to operate to be effective. It needs to be firm. It needs to be fair. It needs to be decisive, even with people who live here, who, how, you know, how dare you? But even when it's doing that, it has to do it in a calm, professional, maybe kind is a little too soft, but.
Compassion.
Compassionate manner. And, and striking that balance where a police force doesn't get to be this hard-nosed, you know, enforcement arm of the town, but in fact does care and shows it cares and will even call the shot for someone who's not toeing the line. That's a, that's a challenge and my sense is that you're, you're doing a great job of, and not just you, Barry, the sergeants. You're doing collectively, doing a great job of guiding, in some cases, some pretty new officers in how to operate that way with that kind of a professional but respectful tone with confidence. That, and, and I'm, I'm very optimistic of where this town's department is going for the foreseeable future.
Thank you. I think the officers demonstrate a tremendous amount of integrity and ethics every single day. And I think we have a shared mission right now. The biggest thing, if I can impress upon them, and I, I used to teach it in the police academy. I, I live it. If you were to see the decision you made today on the front page of the Globe tomorrow, would you still be proud of it? And if you can say yes, then you have acted professionally, ethically and compassionately towards your community. And that may not always be yes to the community. It might not be giving them what they want. But if you can see it on the news the next day, you've hit those three benchmarks. And if you live by that, our officers are going to make mistakes. They're going to speak out of turn. We're human. And if you live by that, our officers are going to make mistakes. They're going to speak out of turn. We're human. You know, we are going to make mistakes. But do we learn from it? Do we grow from it? And do we improve as an organization? I think it's a resounding yes. I think we have the right people in place to get the plan and the purpose accomplished right now. So.
And I'm going to make my comments brief because I did see Rep. Tarski come in. So I know we were trying to get you on at 7:00. But I do want to comment on a few things and you just hit upon one of my, your hiring has been outstanding. Barry, as your deputy chief, phenomenal, right? To know you can leave town and he's here and the camaraderie with your staff, which because I live so close to the high school, I see your staff in and around and I just love seeing them. They're community facing, the windows are down, the smiles on their face, they're looking to engage. So what you shared tonight that I was not familiar with was the whole school aspect, that you're getting more into Memorial, to Dale. And because what that says is, most of the, obviously everyone, I haven't talked to anyone that you've hired that says, I'm an in and out. They love what they see here and they want to be able to build their career. That it's great to have, you know, Sarah or Tommy or Tyler meet, whether it be Officer Hane or Plant or Downey, any of the officers when they're young, because they're going to get to high school. And when they're in high school and they meet them again, there's going to be that relationship of, I remember him, he's a good guy, she's a great gal. Like maybe this is a small bump in the road, but they know the personality, they know their people. And that is, I think, so important and it also feeds to, they shouldn't be afraid. I mean, the police officer should be someone they go to, right? To say hello, to ask for help, not be like, oh, shoot, I shouldn't go near them, that's trouble. So to know you're doing that, I think, is phenomenal. And we've got so many new young faces in town that, you know, your staff, you've got all new people in the last five years, which I think is kudos to you. And when I talk to Barry, there's more trying to get into Medfield, which, again, they're doing their job. And then, you know, last but not least, I just can't thank you enough. I came on this board, it'll be three years this March. And my very first, not my first day, my second day, I sat across from your desk and we, actually not your desk, beside your table, and you told me everything you really wanted to do and it was going to take time. And I can look you square in the eye right now and say, you did exactly what you told me you were going to do, what you were trying to do. And we're there today and I just think it's phenomenal. I just give you the utmost respect and to your whole department. Thank you so much.
I appreciate it. Like I said, we have the right people in place. I think, you know, there's always going to be an apples to oranges. Are we ever going to get an officer that has an opportunity to move to a bigger department? Yes. But I think that we have the programs in place, the people in place, the positivity in place to keep that small-town policeman happy in Medfield. I don't foresee us having a significant amount of turnover. And I believe that we are in such a wonderful position. We have one vacancy right now due to a retirement of 30 years. And we have the ability to actually pick and choose our candidate as opposed to just needing to fill the spot. And that's a beautiful place to be in. So.
Before we wrap up, because I know we have Rep. Tarski coming, is there anyone in the audience that has any questions or comments?
If we pulled you over, I'm sorry.
White Street, holding party. I've been in that house for 30 years. I have nothing but good things to say about the police department and they pulled me over too. A rolling Boston stop, but I had two questions I don't understand. And maybe it's rules and regulations and maybe it's not. Why can't I see the police officer in the car? Why are the windows all so dark that I can't tell who's in there? And secondly, why do all the cars look like something out of a Terminator movie? They look nasty and mean and don't come here. And when I grew up, cars had white doors on them, the big stars and, oh, it's a policeman. Now it's like, I don't know what that is, but I don't want any part of it.
So I'm so glad that you asked this because for those of you who attend town meeting, and I know many of you do, Dick Judge really made a point of our black shiny police cars. First of all, the vehicles have no additional tint on them whatsoever. I refuse to allow them to put tints on. That is the way they come from the factory. The officers have asked for tint and it's been a hard, fast no. I do not allow the ghost print, so that print that's not visible on the car, you can only see if your headlights are on it. I believe police cars should be visible. That is my philosophy in policing. And the cars are black for the simple reason they are cheaper than the white cars.
Okay. You've answered all my questions.
A little knowledge nugget though, I didn't know that.
The white cars are expensive and we had the black and whites. It was actually a $1,500 per car surcharge. Not including if we had damaged the repairs. So it's just a cost decision. I'm sorry to disappoint anybody that thinks that was.
Jeff. Jeff Lyman, Metacommis, thank you, Chief. So it's been a long time, you know, living here for 30 years. It's nice to see people finally slowing down, me included. It took 30 years for me to get pulled over, but it wasn't recently, it was actually before you arrived. But, you know, I now stop at all stop signs fully. I mean that, like, it's sort of, the education of it is like a reminder that, you know, you really should follow rules. Just being honest. You had a choice in motorcycles. I'm glad you chose Harley-Davidson.
Absolutely.
Having driven one for 30 years myself. You've mentioned visibility a couple of times and I happened to be on a road trip recently and I had to drive to Pennsylvania. So you go through New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania. And what I noticed is when the cruisers are stopped somewhere, they leave a steady light on actually, like visibility even further at night. You leave the light on. In those states, there's a blue and a red light. But they just leave, it's not like flashing light, but it's like, I'm here. Something to consider. I'm not asking, it's not like a question about what we should do, but that raised visibility a little bit more, a little bit more welcoming, like officer here, light on, something to think about.
No, I'm happy for that criticism. We do actually have cruising lights on the car. We have that capability. We attached some additional red lights so that you can easily see our police cars if we are at a stop sign in the back. But I'm happy to have those running as we're cruising, yeah.
Not saying good or bad, just I had happened to notice.
No, it's good feedback.
You know, obvious. And the last thing's a question. So with our schools, I mean, we put a lot of emphasis on a person, you know, in law enforcement that's sort of protecting a very large system. What, everybody here probably knows the answer and I'm sorry I don't, but are we doing active intruder training in our schools? Obviously you can do with teachers, do we do with teachers and students? Do we both? I'm just curious very quickly.
Yeah, so two of our officers now are trained in both of the active shooter training. They are actually developing a program right now. We were hoping to get in February to do our simunition training. It might be April vacation. We do wait for the schools to go on vacation because we're going to use the facility. That's the facility we would likely be entering. So we want to have as much real-life kind of training that we can, right? So you perform how you train. This past summer, Dr. Morrison, I met and we actually revamped all of our safety plans to bring them up to date with the current configuration in the town. Without getting into the specifics of those plans, they were updated this summer prior to the start of the school year. We perform regular lockdown drills and safety drills with the school. I'm super confident that the teachers are on board. We have a very, very minimal non-compliance rate when we do our checks at the school, so. But I would anticipate our next round of training where we will actually do simunition training and have role-playing will be either this February or this April.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. One last question, Chris?
Yeah, Chris Potts, 7 Kerber Street. So, and I was very thrilled to see our chief pulling people over on Kerber Street herself. Not too long ago. So thank you. I just was just piggybacking on the school question. And it's really just an elementary question if I'm a parent moving into school and I'm asking, how is the SRO organized now? You said it so quickly that I wasn't, I even wasn't like completely clear. So we have one person who is sort of overseeing them. And then do we have one dedicated at each of the schools or are they rotating around?
No, I'll tell you exactly what we have. So we have a dedicated SRO who focuses the majority of his time and energy at the high school, sometimes at the middle school. Those are kind of the times where we're going to have some incidents with the kids that we want to be able to interject to make sure that we're giving them some off-ramps and some healthier choices to make if they're having conflict. We have a supervisor who two days a week oversees, he oversees it all the time. But two days a week, he works days to oversee the program and any needs that the school administration might have that they feel as though they can speak to a supervisor and get more direct answers, somebody that liaisons with me personally. And then we identified four of our day shift officers and assigned them individually a school. The requirement is that they stop in, we try and get them to stop in at least once a day to touch base with the school and see if the school has any events happening that day, any specific needs. So Sergeant Haldeman is the supervisor for the schools. Detective Plant is the official SRO who's certified under the state post requires that we certify. I am sending two additional officers to the NASRO certification school in February. And then Michael Downing is assigned to Memorial School. Officer Peter Braswell is assigned to the Dale Street School. Officer Robert Hane is assigned to the Middle School and Officer John McKenna is assigned to the Wheelock School. So they have specific assignments.
That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Chief, thank you so much. Great update.
Thank you.
All right. Rep. Tarski, here we go. All right, so now we're going to have Representative Tarski for the 13th Norfolk District join our meeting. Newly elected, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Good to see everyone, not just over coffee, but actually in official roles. So this is good. Just wanted to come by, say hi and, I don't know, answer any questions, make my face known a little bit. I've met a bunch of you at the doors. A lot of the campaign was spent knocking individual doors and trying to get to know the town, its people and its issues. And I plan to continue that as I step into the role fully. I was sworn in January 1st and it's been a roller coaster ride already. Pretty cool, so.
And just a point of clarification, your district one and district two?
I'm one and two and then Representative Vaughn has three and four.
So hopefully everybody knows what district they live in, so you know who your person is. Pete?
So congratulations on your election.
Thanks, Pete.
And I guess my only question is, is your office in the basement at the State House?
Everyone starts there.
Yeah. And Lita Harkins went there after she backed the wrong speaker candidate.
Right, that's, yeah. So that was the big, you know, rumor going into this job, if you make a mistake, you go to the basement. But the truth is, every new rep goes there and it's part of like a bonding slash minor hazing? Where all the new reps get together and sort of talk about their job, what they do and sort of try to figure out this thing together, so. The mystery, I actually asked this the other day, there are people actually work in the basement. I don't think they did anything wrong. I think that's just their office space. I think it was just, I don't think it's such a bad thing, actually.
Well, thank you for agreeing to be our representative. I appreciate it.
Yeah, it's my pleasure, honestly. And I look forward to getting, to meet a lot of you. For those of you that didn't meet on the door there in three or four, you can still come to me. I'm sure I'll work with Marcus on a lot of stuff. You know, we have a shared interest in Medfield as a whole, not an arbitrary line. So come and look me up. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm at Joshua Tarski, joshua.tarski@masshouse.gov. And happy to be a resource to anyone here, anyone online, et cetera, so.
Of course, congratulations, Josh.
Thanks.
Welcome and welcome aboard because we've talked a little bit about which precincts are you representing, which ones? When I first got introduced to the idea that we had two reps in town, I said, oh, great, this is a town that only represents a half town of interest to any rep. We won't have anybody who cares about us. And I learned pretty quickly, I've been here for 30 years now almost, so it's been a while back. But actually, when you have two reps that do exactly what you just said, which is there is no dividing line, the two of us are working together, we have a shared interest. The interesting thing, if you really have reps that do that, is that you have two reps where most towns only have one. And I understand election mathematics is probably going to dictate where people campaign. But I think in the time that I've been here, that basic situation has held true for our town. And I would hope that our town has done things that help the reps know that they're appreciated. So you should expect that, but if you're not getting it, you should give us some feedback on how we're not doing that because it's a two-way street. That you're trying to get things done, we shouldn't be trying to ask you questions. We shouldn't be asking you for things that it would be really stupid for you to go out and try to get for us. But we should let you know what we need and, you know, it goes both ways. You also let us know what opportunities are up there that are coming down the pike. And I think we've had fundamentally some good collaborative relationships, which I know I certainly appreciated what the reps have done for us over the years. And I fully anticipate that I will going forward. And you can obviously always come to a select board meeting and get a flavor of this town. You just sit there for half an hour and listen. I have one question for you.
Yes.
When you're, you know, on the surface, you get elected as a representative and you're in the legislative branch of the state government and, you know, got a place to sit, I got, maybe it's in the basement, but I got a place to work from and everybody sort of gets a vote. What's surprised, and then you have to be there long enough to start to get the practical understanding of how, I'm going to call it the game is played, but that's not pejorative. It's just how do things get done? What's surprised you or what's an insight that you've gotten around what it takes to be successful in the, you know? It's an early question.
It's okay. I think it's already clear. It's really very relationship-based. For me to get stuff done here, one, I got to be plugged into the town. So you guys, you know, feed me with information and needs and then I take that and I have to have friends in the house, especially leadership and other reps who can sort of coalesce around certain needs and wants and make the ask in a way that, you know, actually can be accomplished. It has been stressed since January 1st, swearing in, it is a relationship business. So that's, you know, that's what it is. It's good, you know? That being said, that's why I'm giving the invitation, everyone here, to tell me, you know, please, even if it's like outlandish, tell me and I can, you know, at least shoot the questions out and see if we can get a piece of something. And then I think with more experience and a little, you know, more experience under my belt, I'll be able to get more done. And I should be able to get stuff done even at this phase in my career. Right, so. I'll put in a full day's work. All right.
Well, again, congratulations.
Thanks.
And so we'll ask a quick question because you, coming into Medfield, I think the biggest thing on our plate right now, one of the biggest things is Trinity for State Hospital, right? Getting that money is absolutely positively vital.
Yep.
And then the second thing is, the big thing here in town is we've got to get a new school. So we were just accepted into MSBA.
Yep.
Now we've got, starting in April, I think roughly 270 days to get through that first phase.
Yep.
So I think those are the two things that, and certainly we've got residents here that can chime in more, but we know that that's going to be drawing a lot of attention because it's going to, the school will impact our tax basis.
Yep.
And State Hospital is vital because if that doesn't get built by Trinity, it's really hard to think who's going to come behind them to step in for that project without potentially forcing those historic buildings to get tore down. And that's what, you know, out of roughly 700 people at a town meeting, I'm going to give a rough guess, 680 said yes very loud and 20 said no, we don't like it. So we know there's a very large corner of people that want those historic buildings there. They're looking forward to how that's going to be refurbished.
One of the first people I met in the town of Medfield was Jean. She took me on a tour of the Belford, showed me, you know, the plans, the vision. The developers did reach out to me. I should have a meeting with them within the next couple of weeks.
Oh, great.
So I will try to find out, you know, what the ask is and game plan, how to get as much for that down here as I can.
Right.
Okay, I got to get into that a little bit and I'm curious to see what Trinity says. With the MSBA stuff, I have a little more experience with that as an educator and having, you know, worked at a school that actually in 2017 was rebuilt. I haven't dug into how much the deal costs and stuff like that. But the treasurer, her office had a meeting with the person in charge of the MSBA and I'll have a meeting with him in the next two weeks too, to find out some details about that. And if, I'd be curious to, I would love some of your opinions on that, like.
So I'll just give you a quick, so we have our school building committee that was put together, a little revised from the last go-around where we were accepted, but the town voted no. So we're, I'll speak for myself in this one. We're sensitive to making sure that we get as much input as we move through this. But we have the, we saying that the town's been told by the school building committee, it was unanimous vote, that it will be, something will be done at Dale Street. If it gets voted, it'll either be voted to reno or new build. But, you know, as you know, the process, I mean, it's not guaranteed until the town gets that final vote to say, we support it with the cash and et cetera. But at least the school building committee. But at least the school building committee has put together, they've decided the spot. We know that we don't kick off with the program with our assigned person from MSBA until, until April. But I will say our school building committee has been really trying to get out there with the people. They have a newsletter they send out. If you are not on the Medfield Insider mailing or someone on your staff, it is at least a great way to at least see what's happening each week. There's, there, if anyone hears anything that happened in August of 2024, you know, January of 2024, there's all the links to all the older articles, quick way to get caught up with any issues that may have gone down or links to info packets. Not trying to give Chris a plug, but, but, but it's, but. But, but it's for if your staff, I don't know if you're, anyone your staff is with you. But I mean, that's, it's a great way to at least get caught up real quick without having to make a ton of phone calls and track people down in Medfield. At least it's there.
I think it's my main source of info for what happened in Medfield, actually. Yeah. It's awesome. So I read it every time it comes out. Thanks.
But yeah, and I'm sure at some point between Mike Weber and Meredith Chamberlain, who are spearheading the, the school building committee, you can always reach out to them and just give any input. But I mean, so far, again, I'm speaking for myself, so far, so good. They did a lot of work before they got to the point of voting on, you know, were they going to do something at Dale or elsewhere? And, and knowing they did that based on a survey they did, roughly 96% of the people that had provided input had said that's what they were looking for it to be. So that, that helps unify the town so that we can, if we, it goes the right path and everything comes together, we can stay in the MSBA, use those dollars and be off and running.
Sounds great.
Okay.
Yeah. Don't be surprised if I reach out to you as well, just to, oh, some of those names. I have met with some of the folks who are leading the MSBA efforts here. So that'd be good to, like, speak with them.
Great.
And then I can talk to the treasury folks and maybe see if some bridges can be built, maybe.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then can I ask anyone in the audience if they, if anyone's here and has any questions, Rep Tarski? Don't be bashful. There we go. Bill.
You didn't know we had four select board members, did you?
No.
One of them does most of the work.
Bill Masaro, Evergreen Way. I'm in the butter of the Medfield State Hospital. And I had the fortune, great fortune of working with Denise and with John Dooley when he was a representative.
Yep.
And I've spent 16 years concerned with the environmental issues up at the state hospital. Our representatives and Denise were very, very helpful. The state has been many times reluctant to do the right thing. And they, she has helped us very much and I would look forward to working with you as necessary. And I promise I don't, I don't send cartoons, I don't send jokes, I don't, I'm just deadly serious about what happens up at the hospital and to make sure that the environment is safe, particularly now that we're going to have 700 people or more perhaps living there and everything else. So we have a good relationship at the moment with D-CAM. It was not very nice in the past. We wound up going to mediation for a year to get the final solution that built the overlook. So as administrations change, new people come in. They don't see the history, they don't know the history and everything else. And I've spent many times briefing people on what's going on up there. But anything you need to know about the environmental issues there, please get in touch with me. Everybody knows how to get me. And I wish you luck and congratulations on your election.
Thanks a lot. Thanks. And like I said, if you, if you send me an email to Joshua Tarski at Mass House, I do coffee hours all the time. Okay? And I would love that. Okay? Yeah.
All right. If there's no further questions, we'll get you off and running. Thank you so much.
Probably going to hang around. But thanks, everybody. All right. Thanks for inviting me.
It is entertaining if you want to stick around. All right. So next up, Parks and Recreation, that's another big thing. I should have had that as number three. Parks and Recreation Commission to provide an update on the FAFF Center and what's happening at the Metacomet tennis courts. And up, there we go.
One of my close friends was the former department head at his high school recently. So he heard about the FAFF Center already. I'm like, great. I'm so excited. Thank you for having us tonight. We have Lauren from our commission as well as Rob in the audience today. I'll start briefly talking about the FAFF Center as that's a little bit more complicated. But the FAFF Center is permanently closed. We are currently working with Frank as well as Christine and a whole team of us about modular spaces. We're looking at a 48 by 60, which we feel would be very helpful for programming. It won't fix all of our programming issues. We did go today to MAP to look at their two sites. They have one at Memorial as well as Wheelock. Looking at the 48 by 60 is something that we feel is most needed. Hopefully we'll be able to have two classrooms simultaneously going at any given time between in fall, spring. We have a roughly 50 to 60 programs going. Since the FAFF shutdown, we've had to cancel at least 14 programming, programs. That number will continue. We don't have, one of our, our biggest issues that we're facing, a lot of our issues, but there's not a place in town that has a really big space that's financially like a gym space. So right now when we do in the middle of the daytime, we used to do multi-sport programming. There's just not a space for it. There is a church in town that has a gym, cost efficiency, it's just really high for an hourly rate. So it doesn't really make sense because then we'd have to charge a lot more for the program. When they're smaller programs, we're hoping to pivot a little bit more when the spring comes to our beautiful fields to be able to do more stuff outdoors. So with currently the FAFF Center, it's important to note, we have been telling our families, we will be sending out an email. The FAFF Center is permanently closed. Camp is the biggest question on the horizon and that's why we are doing as much as we can. We had great meetings with the school department. It looks like we'll be able to use some additional space at Dale as well as this year moving to Blake. So that is very exciting and hopeful so that it won't impact our residents and families. Camp, we always have a waitlist depending on what camp it is. Discovery is our younger kids, around 20 to 25 on a waitlist, Adventure around the same amount. Fourth of July week, we really don't have a lot. A lot of people are traveling. So that is for us right now going on with the FAFF Center. We don't have much more than that, other than it is closed and it's going to remain closed. And that we're figuring out our next steps. And our next steps with the commission as well as myself and the rest of our department, we're really hopeful for the modular space. We have identified and we're hopefully having a meeting next week to discuss really what that would look like. Our, our ideal location at this time will be at Hinckley, having a big area for parking. However, there's, there's more opportunities there, especially camp is only three months out of the year, but it's our biggest operation. But we do feel also at Hinckley, it's centrally located, more opportunities for families to be there, but also take full advantage of our brand new playground as well as maybe do some more fall and spring programming because we will be based out of Hinckley Pond. So there's some good with this. It's really teaching us how to pivot and this department did really well in COVID. Working with the town and town departments, I think we have been doing a lot of great things given the two-month turnaround of getting a phone call that, hey, we need to evacuate your building and no one else can go in it until we get an engineer out. I'd like to thank my staff. They've been doing a great job. Right now, we're currently operating out of five different buildings. Our offices as of January 13th, last Monday, we are based out of the UCC. We will have a kind of meet and greet just so families and residents can see where we're working out of. We want to make sure that, one of the things when talking to the UCC is making sure that we're still visible. We can also have foot traffic. We would like to see our families and our residents. We do have a working phone line now. So we're excited to be a fully functioning recreation department. I really want to say a huge thank you to the COA, the library, public safety building. The UCC has been amazing. Medfield TV reached out for help. A lot of you can see that people are coming to help us and so that is refreshing. I wish I had better news when it came to summer camp. It's still up in the air. We're trying as best as we can to get as many numbers as we can. But obviously having a building shut down with one of our primary camp locations, it's difficult, but we're making it work. And I think we have some really good ideas. Jackie has been working really hard to figure out what summer camp could look like for us. So we're excited for that.
And then Metacomet, or do you want to, want to have questions about?
I can go to Metacomet or.
I'm going to jump to Metacomet. That way, that way if people come up, they can ask all the questions.
Yeah. So, and then right into Metacomet. This year, the Park and Recreation Commission and I have, we're putting forth a, all four Metacomet tennis courts. From last year to this year, unfortunately, there was either a lot of storm damage and ripped up part of the courts or we possibly had vandalism. Or if you went to the courts right now, Court One on the left-hand side, there's a whole strip missing, exposed concrete right, right in the middle of where they seal coated before. But if you look, it's not just that. And that was part of the capital projects last year. It's in rough shape. Having tennis courts in New England, the shelf life has surpassed. We seal coated it eight years ago, at the same time that the schools did their seal coating. And unfortunately, the patchwork and the weathering has just been lifting. So Christine has worked really hard on figuring out the numbers of how to make this project work. And so I can turn to, to you as far as the, so we have right now, Park and Recreation Commission has voted to take $80,000 of the revolving account and put that towards the capital project. The other part is Metacomet lending, the lighting project turned back. So last year we got state of the art lighting. People were like, well, why didn't you get the tennis courts done? It was, we didn't have the money to do a full tennis court and we didn't think that our potential vandalism and/or would rip. So that's why we went and opted for that. We also did have a state earmark at that time that was originally for $100,000, but then cut back to $50,000. So then the capital stabilization fund had to come in and help. So that's why we went forth with our Metacomet tennis lights. We knew that the courts were in rough shape, but we're also hopeful that we're in this position today as to getting them redone. And then it has been for the capital stabilization fund, $190,000 and then an assessor overlay account, which is $50,000. And we were able, Christine was able to get a quote of around $375,000 to get this project done.
Pete, question?
Thank you for coming, Katie. First of all, congratulations on a, on a successful dealing with a, just in a terrible situation. Having your, your facility shut down is just about as bad as it can get. So I'm, it sounds like your programming is way off unfortunately. And that's, and you're, you guys operate on this revenue model where you, you actually make a ton of money on your programs. So.
Out of time, Katie.
Well, that's unfortunate. But I, I like the idea of, of your modular going down next to the swim pond because I've heard you say that it's so important for your facility to be near the swim pond because the kids use the swim pond from the program, from the camp program. But I guess, can you run the, do you have enough space there to run the outdoor programs that you want to run that, that you haven't?
At Hinckley?
At Hinckley, yeah.
So we would probably pivot to McCarthy and Metacomet to be, we have a lot of land space over there. Hinckley, it's also exciting. We're like the home of the Marlins in the summertime. So they'll have a place for their swim meets. We are going to pivot some programs. The issue right now is, is when we can get this modular in. And so we plan, it's a staggering, as far as, right now, we've already usually planned for the summer. And so spring programming, we can't basically, we can pivot and say, hey, we're going to get the modular in by hopefully, if all goes well, May, that we could probably do some one-off programming. But then we could really gear it for the fall is saying, hey, listen, we will have this ready to go. How many classrooms can we utilize so that way we don't, we can be cost efficient? Right now, we rent space out of the UCC, so it's $35 per room per day. So on top of us paying rent, that is also an additional expense that we're not used to. So with the modular space, we'd be able to, hopefully if the 48 by 60, the one that we previewed today, if ours is similar to that, we think that we can run two programs at a time out of, out of the modular and then pivot to more of stuff around Hinckley. And a lot of nature classrooms, we do a puddle stompers class down there and they love it. But how amazing is it when we have a rainy day that they can also now go inside?
Yep. So my mind went to having the whole camp program at Hinckley, but apparently that's not in the cards. You have to, you're going to have that up at McCarthy, it sounds like.
Oh, no. So camp, sorry. I might have misunderstood. Camp is predominantly going to be out of Dale Street. So Dale Street. So we normally operate out of Dale Street with our adventure camp, which is our older camp. And then our discovery camp, which is our younger camp, is the one that's usually based out of the FAFF Center. However, we are looking at different options of, we have a half-day program as well as a full-day program. So seeing how many full days we can fit and how many half-days we can fit. We feel if the modular is set up by the summertime, what we're hopeful for is that our half-day program could just get dropped off at the modular, so we don't have to worry about walking back and forth. Our Dale Street has always been where we operate out of. And then our full-time campers go from Dale Street in the morning. After lunchtime, they walk down to the pond.
Yeah.
The modular, would it be big enough to house 160, 150 people, which is our camping mall?
So the one that we're looking at, at MAP, their capacity is 58.
What a lot to deal with. Thanks for making it happen. Good luck in making it better.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming, Katie. I, I think anybody just listened to what you just said for the last 10, 15 minutes. I know I've listened to, I actually tuned into the last Parks and Rec Commission meeting. And the, the operational complexity of what you're dealing with, with so many of the variables not yet fixed. So it's like a multi-variable equation and no one will give you the value of even one of the, one of the variables to anchor on yet. I just compliment you in particular for actually being able to visualize that in your head, keep it in position and understand how I explained it the way that you did. I was going to, I wasn't even going to mention this until the select board reports. But one of the things I did a week and a half ago was listen in on the Parks and Rec Commission meeting. And I, I may be a little bit of a government geek, so maybe the reason I think this was so great has something to do with what my interests are. But I found myself watching that meeting, and I'm saying it now because you've got commission members here. I found myself watching that meeting saying, I wish, if there aren't very many citizens, residents here in town watching this meeting, I wish more of them were on watching it. Because what I watched throughout that entire meeting was a group of people who were basically collectively trying to solve a difficult problem. They were dealing with difficult issues. Not everybody got their way on all those issues, actually, as you know. And the ability of your collective group to do that, focus on the issues, have the collaborative discussions, have the give and take, deal with the uncertainty, sometimes push one person down on something or tell someone else that an option, it just can't happen. That was the most phenomenal example of democracy working the way that democracy should work that I think I've seen in about three years, at least. And so I just, seeing as you're all here, I'd rather you hear it from me now rather than, you know, nobody hears it from me at the end. It's a tremendous job. It's a tremendous challenge you have. And I think it's a tremendous job that you're doing to try to address that challenge even. And there's no, just kind of like, so far there's no philanthropist here in town that says, gee, I got an extra million in my bank account. I was looking for something good to do with it. Maybe you could use it. It's not going to happen.
But if it does, they can call us at Park and Recreation.
I wasn't sure.
Note the new number.
Big power ball. The new number. Exactly.
So I, I want to just compliment all of you on what I saw there. It was phenomenal. I know you're not through the woods yet. I don't know how much we collectively can even help you. If anybody's going to help you, it's probably Christine more than anybody else. But you just need to know how impressed I am with what I saw you all doing at that meeting. I have one question. The assistant director is, I think is coming in or is, I'm just curious, status and, and if you have an idea how the assistant director will be fitting into this in the middle of the chaos.
Yes. So as of right now, we had finished, we have finished interviews. And I think it would be in our best interest to potentially hold on hiring somebody. to potentially hold on hiring somebody. And a couple of reasons. One, it's the climate given. We have a lot of variables that we're trying to figure out. I want to make sure as a director, we're bringing in someone that's going to, we're all excited for them. We're all like, right now, our morale's a little low. But I think it's in, within the best for the town's interest as well, given the circumstances, is to kind of wait and put that on hold to see how town meeting shakes out. I, I've spoken to a lot of our families recently, and I'm saying, we're a team approach, right? And that's what I've seen in the last two and a half months with Christine and Frank and Brittany and all the department heads helping us. I think for right now, the best thing to do would put on a pause, see where this modular shakes out, see where programming shakes out, and, and, and really wait, because I think that would be a great decision also, so that we as a department and the commission know like what our stability is. What does that look like for us? Because there are still things unknown, but.
So thank you for coming. And I too, I've watched a couple of the meetings via Zoom, so fabulous what's happening. But I have just a variety of questions here. So the nets at Mete Comet, is there a reason why we leave our nets up during the winter?
So, not really. We do, up until we've had a pretty, what's the word I'm looking for? We didn't have a lot of snow, so we try to keep those as long as we possibly can. When the Commission met last meeting, we have decided to close the tennis courts, so we will see the nets coming down probably within the next week or two.
And I thought of that after watching your meeting and realizing the nets were still up. I was like, well, the last thing we want to do is encourage people to be on those courts right now, because they're not in good shape. And you, it sounds like the courts that are near the basketball courts at the high school, they're in horrible shape. And thankfully, they're being resurfaced right now. And I think that same company is exploring giving us some pricing so they could look at doing Mete Comet for us, which would be fabulous. And then have you been able to summarize the programs that you know sadly have to be eliminated? And the reason I ask that question is, there's a lot of creative people in this town. And you know, this, this is not your problem, the board. It's your, you were, five people were elected, like we were elected, to kind of take on certain responsibilities in this town. But it doesn't make it their problem. It's anyone who's in town, who has a child in the program. It's all the creative minds that can come together. And all I'm going here is if, if you say these 11 programs have been eliminated because the FAF Center's not open, there's not a facility, blah, blah, blah. I would love, and we did this years ago with the State Hospital, where they had a, like a, just a big think tank, and just posted things you could put up and be like, okay, it, just because we can't do these 11, what could we potentially do? Think outside the box. I mean, I, when I heard you make the reference about St. Edwards, made me think, okay, this summer, this town pretty much, I love being in Medfield during the summer, because no one's here, right? So you're like, okay, if you went to St. Edwards and said, what would we be able to potentially do from end of June as school gets out through the third week in August? Because we know this, the, the traffic in, in resident is low and light, but as a Catholic church, they're certainly looking for money. I would love, because I'll, I'm going to throw something out there, because everyone can watch this meeting, so I'm not saying something that wasn't already put out there. But when Mike Marcucci threw the idea of, you know, to literally approach the Catholic dialysis and say, St. Edwards, if there was ever a reason to potentially unload it, that's not a bad location for Parks and Rec. You've got kitchen, you've got a basketball court, you've got this huge room that today has a bunch of chairs, and I go there, so I'm, I mean, I talked to a couple of people that go to St. Edwards, and they're like, that's certainly a bad idea. I'm like, well, it's not, because it's built, it's would, you know, whatever the purchase price would be, it had to be less than us building a new, brand-new facility. But it's that crawl, walk, run where if we start using it and we see what's there, and they see that we are a good group to work with, just food for thought. Because it's there, and, and when you have your highest number of programs is period when this town is light on residence, why not? And then, it's just the only two of them, like.
Yeah, I'm coming, I'm coming. I have a question. What are you, I, I just want to understand, what are you suggesting we use it for? For summer camps or just for?
So for summer camps for now, like just because they have the gym. And I have to believe during the day, the gym can't be that crowded. And if, and if the, if the, the number of, of parishioners has decreased over time at St. Edwards, there's still a fixed overhead cost to that building, so.
I totally get what you're saying. I just, and that makes a lot of sense. I do want to just, in defense of Katie and the team, they are all so spread out. So continuing to spread them out, I think, would actually stress the system even more. I think, you know, we're extremely grateful to the schools and our commitment to providing childcare in an affordable childcare summer, option in the summer is like our highest commitment. And I think that that's a great idea. I do have concerns, like, I mean, that is something that we really challenge them on, was like, just the driving to all the different places. So that is a great idea, and we should definitely explore it, maybe for some programming options. But I just think, you know, the schools have been extremely generous in letting us use Blake and Dale. And as much as we can use Dale without getting in the way of their updates is what basically they've let us do. I do want to just, like, there are spaces available, but I do also think that there's a, there's a diminishing return where we would be spread a little bit too thin. So I don't want to make them keep, you know, I've challenged them on the driving, so I don't want to make them drive to like 5,000 different places. So just in defense of that, but I do like thinking about alternatives for space. I mean, I think that, but I'm hopeful, we're very excited about the modular. I think anchoring us to a space is going to be great for the town, and having a place where people can go, you know, consistently is going to be really important.
Yeah, no, and I'm just throwing it out there, because it's a gym. The other thing I know you struggle with, because when I was in my, my college days, I was actually Assistant Waterfront Director at the Swim Pond. I was lucky, I split it with the, with my friend Skip. It rained every day that I worked, so I didn't work, we went to the movies. It was sunny and hot every day Skip worked. It was like this one summer where, if you can't control the weather, that impacts your camp greatly, right? Because you have all these outdoor activities. So Lauren, that's the only reason I was thinking, if you have another gym to fall back on, where you know that you can have your programs day in and day out, you don't have to worry about the weather so much.
I think one thing that I've been super duper impressed with Katie and Jackie and Kirsty is they've offered up some options for some specialty camps. And maybe that's a place where we can also think about considering a specialty camp. That's something that we could talk to Jackie about. Just to think creatively, like, you know, we've had this model for so long, and it's been really successful, but now it's kind of been uprooted. And I've just been really inspired by the way they've responded with creative options. And I know there is some discussion about specialty camps, and maybe we could think about having a specialty camp there where people are just there. But I do think, you know, 12 different locations, like, you know, especially when, as commissioners, we like to try to pop in. Like, I don't want to drive to 12 different locations either. I definitely don't want to make them do that every day, but, but for specialty camp, for additional, like supplementary programming, I think that that's a great idea.
And we can look at costs. It, it's kind of like what Lauren just said, is when we're spread, we're a licensed camp. So that's also a factor, is so thinking of like, just like little small things of like having medical refrigerators at every single one of these locations, because we have to. What does that look like for transportation at the end of the day? If we don't bring an Assistant Director on, that's two full-time staff members with six locations. And so we already run a pretty large camp, but I will definitely circle back. The other thing is too, is like talking to them. I think it was like Fast and Furious when everybody, when we were trying to figure out where to go. So I can definitely circle back with them because the cost efficiency. So it's like, it, and I get it, but at the same time, like you said, it, it could sit there empty. Why not make some money and say, and we, but we can, I can circle back.
Well, and I think just educating, you know, the parents are the ones, I know, listening to your meeting, there was, there were parents online listening, because this is what they're banking on, and suddenly we've thrown a curveball that we have a building that's been condemned. So, you know, that being what it is, it's a fact, and it's nobody's fault. What do you do? And it's not going to be normal, so it's, it's really a community solution. It's not five board members and, and a higher director. It's, you know, if, if there are people that are creative and say, okay, I, oh, I'm looking at these 11 programs that have been wiped out. Gee, like, could we do the following? Where were these held? Just, all I'm saying is throw the idea out there, right? You, you don't have to do it behind closed doors, because, you know, there, there's a lot of creative people in Medfield.
And we're encouraging our families. I believe February 12th is our next commission meeting. We had a good handful of families. One thing that has been brought, when we're out in programming, one thing that two families brought up, one sent an email, is also talking about town meeting, is they're looking for Park and Recreation to potentially hold babysitting. So that has been brought up to us as some of the barriers of like, they're happy we're on Zoom now, right? And we're happy we're on Zoom.
Think I'm happier on Zoom?
I know, I saw you sign on, and I was like, Eileen is happy. But like, that is something that we have already been approached by, especially given the circumstances of having an article for a modular that will significantly impact us if we don't pass it. I think that's something Park and Recreation could go down, like, how do we offer at town meeting? So that was at Kinder Basketball been brought up, like, what do we need to do as families? And I was like, hold on one, like, let me see, I, I actually didn't know we didn't have the childcare, but I was like, that could be something that we could try. Like, that is something we can listen to. But we did have a good amount of families come and voice, they want to get involved. I think for us, it's how do we want them to get involved in a sense of, we already figured out like X, Y, and Z, so how do we utilize them as much as possible? Because that's one thing that's great about our families and our residents, not just summer camp. They want to help us. And so I think that's just trying to find where that avenue is to help us.
And then you keep referencing UCC. This is a silly question, but someone who drives along and has no clue that suddenly the FAF Center's not open. Are, are there notes there to tell people? Okay.
So we, we, MINTA at the church has been amazing, so we have signage over our offices. We have signage when you walk into the building of where our offices are. So if you were, we're trying to have the public come onto closest side to Bank of America. We're in the process of getting a banner, as well as an A-frame sign that will sit outside that says Park and Recreation Entrance, because most of the programs that we do are right when you walk in. We also, parking is a challenge, we acknowledged that before signing that lease. But we've talked to Bank of America after hours, they can park there, so that's really good for our night classes. Like, we have kids hip-hop there tonight, so families can pick up. There are some barriers and some challenges with this move, but we think, given, we've been there for a week as tenants, we'll hopefully have banners up, I would hope, by the first week of February. It's at Sinorama, and we're just figuring out how much signage, and we don't want to oversignage.
And are you doing that at the FAF Center, just something big, if somebody drives in that Park Center temporary location?
Yes, our building inspector, when, he has a sign that says the FAF Center is closed. And we are also gearing up to, we're trying to, we'll be sending out a lot of our information. We're getting a lot of summer camp questions and putting it on our website. It's on our MyRec website, where the FAF is closed, like if you want to find us, the UCC. So if anyone is listening, it is the church located right next to Bank of America. We like the location, it's very walkable for lunch options, so that's a benefit of this.
If you have anyone that's ever been in the Boy Scouts for Eagles Court ceremonies, it's where the Eagles Court ceremony is held. No, so that's, those are the questions. I, you know, again, I know this has not been easy. Nobody likes change, and when change comes at you and you never, you don't even see it coming. And there's a lot of people between the MAP programs that the parents are looking for. So I applaud everything you guys are going through. I know you still have a long road ahead, but thank you for everything you guys are doing. All right, thank you. And.
Renee Halli, Free Harding, so a little selfish, sorry. I was not aware of the Mete Comet tennis court issue. Is that going to be ready for kids' tennis in the spring, for the high school tennis team?
It is not.
So where are they going to play?
They're renting space, the school department will announce shortly, but I believe that would be at Kingsbury for, for spring tennis.
So our tennis fees are going to skyrocket?
I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Question, fire away.
I don't know what's come over me. Questions? Jeff, I'm at Mete Comet Street. So Katie, just a question. So the lights at Mete Comet now, the new lights are phenomenal. They direct light to the tennis court and not the surrounding area in this kind of eerily amazing way. And having, living near there, so it's night and day. So that should be the precedent moving forward, and I'm, I'm sure those lights are more expensive, and I'm sure our select board will support that. I understand that you guys utilize as much of the school's, you know, space, certainly in the summer when the schools are closed and the air conditioning's running. You guys use that space, so that's good. I just want to say, I know it's going to come up, you know, demolition of the FAF Center building. I don't know where the $7 million number flew out, I don't know where it was. Okay, thank you. It's, I'm off by a lot. That, that seems reasonable, so thank you. And no matter what, we, you know, in my line of work, it's, you get bids, right? We always get, we look around and we get information so that we do, that we make the right decisions, so thank you.
All right, so if there are no more questions, thank you very much for coming. Fabulous.
Thanks, Katie.
All right, number six, Trinity Financial and VHB. So we are going to review and potentially vote here this evening on the proposed VHB Medfield State Hospital Offsite Intersection Design Changes. We have North at Harding, West at Harding, and Harding at Hospital. And okay, there's, there's our VHB guys. I didn't see you back there, I was like, wait, they, it's got to be here. Saw you guys, I saw you online early, that's why I was like, okay. All right, welcome.
Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening.
Should we take it, take it from here?
Yes.
Okay, great. Jeff Ketterts from VHB, I have Matt Keely from VHB as well, here for circling back on last meeting's discussion on several of the offsite intersection improvements as part of the Medfield State Hospital project. If, if appropriate, I was thinking I could, not to just rehash everything from last week, but maybe do a, a quick run-through of everything, but just to cover, cover in entirety. And just go start to finish, we have some additions, but figured I could just do.
And I must do something to help you for the audience. By showing hands, how many people are here for the intersection discussion? Okay, that's what I thought, so that's why I want to make sure, give everybody a good drowning, so.
Sure. Sure. Do you have the PowerPoint page one that has, just to pull up the quick locust plan? I, I don't think I included that in the video.
Of when, the timing of when this would start and potentially complete?
Sure, so, and Abby, if you want to chime in, but.
So do you mind going along? So the question that was just asked, in case you guys couldn't hear it at home, was the timing on the intersections. When, we've voted on tonight, when will we potentially start these? And when would the anticipated completion be done? And I'd even add to that, which I'm sure we'll answer tonight, would all three be done at once? Would there be a priority as to how this is done? Just, so.
So, or yeah, I can even, maybe Abby, feel free to cut me off. Once we get, so we have three locations essentially. Once there's consensus on, on the concept plan for it, we have probably about a, a two-month period to go back and, and design the plans, take them to a level that we can bring it forth to the town for local permitting. We need to go to Conservation Commission for some work in the buffer zones. So we'll probably have a month or two permitting process, and then we'll finish construction documents. So my ballparking, I would say, probably, probably July-ish, we'd be done with the design part and, and ready to move into implementing this work as soon as possible.
Thanks, Abby.
So the town received the money for this from the state, and we'll have to go out to public bid for this. So there will be, by the time that they're designed and permitted, they need to go out to public bid. So ideally, it would, the work would start by September. And we would be, Dan on our team would be sequencing the work and figuring out what's most efficient. But all of this will be publicly noticed, and we'll let everyone know.
Take it away.
All right, so just a quick overview, I'm sure everyone's just as familiar with the locusts here as I am. Which, thought helpful just to show in relation to the hospital site, the three locations that we are talking about this evening, kind of moving from northwest to the southeast. Hospital Road at Harding Street is first, and continuing down West Street at Harding, and then Harding Street at North. So I'm kind of present the concept studies that we've pulled together in, in that order and run through. And essentially what, what we've done building out of the master plan of the State Hospital and the town meeting and the development plan approval is, we've gone out, we've gotten field survey, we've done wetland flagging to have a, a strong base plan and understanding of the conditions at each of these intersections. And we've prepared a series of conceptual options and sketches showing various configurations. Then for each intersection, what we did is, we pulled together a summary matrix to evaluate several different criteria. Then for each intersection, what we did is we pulled together a summary matrix to evaluate several different criteria. And it's a pretty subjective rating system, but the intent is, is to put some numbers towards each of the concepts that we can use to relate concepts and strengths, weaknesses of each. And what we did is we evaluated six different criteria. The first one was right-of-way impacts. Essentially, does the concept require any, any takings or any work outside the town owns right-of-way of the streets? The second criteria was environmental impacts. So does it include work within wetland resource areas, impacts to vegetation? The third is traffic operations. How will that, how will the configuration improve the traffic flow and circulation? The fourth was safety. Whether it's vehicular, pedestrian, but, but how the configuration will address that. The fifth was constructability. That could be, you know, general complexity of phasing, duration of work, temporary traffic controls as it's happening. And the last criteria was anticipated cost of the improvements. So we'll go through each of the concepts, explain what's shown. And then at the end, we have that summary matrix, just kind of comparing how they weigh out against each other.
And I'm Lynn Clumon from 14 Harding Street. So right in the epicenter. Did these plans, is there consideration for pedestrian, you talked about safety, but sidewalking as well as motor vehicle?
There, there's certainly, oh, sorry.
Particularly on that stretch is what I'm getting to. Several of us live in that area of west to Harding to north where, you know, you see people risking their lives as they go to the past with their dogs or trying to get, you know, road to the other side. And just wondering what we're doing to address that as well.
The, the concepts have not shown that, but that'll absolutely be a part of the, the next process we take forward. And we'll be working with, with the town and with DPW to make sure that we evaluate in a line with their complete streets approach, pedestrian connections. You know, there may be instances where there's not through connectivity, but it may be a matter of making sure there's at least safe landings, crossing locations for each. So that'll certainly be a part of the, the next stage of design. We haven't gone through detailing that yet. But regardless of which option is selected, I would say we, we would need to look at that the same way.
Thank you. It's, it's, you've got some of the rendering lending themselves to that more than others. So that's one of the.
I'm going to do one thing here, if you don't mind. What I want you have to do is be able to present. And then I have no problem with questions at the end. I'm, I'm the most open person of that. But I just don't, I want to let him go with his train of thought. But Abby, do you have one quick thing?
Yeah, I just want to correct. There are no considerations for sidewalk at this point in time in any of these designs from the very beginning. So while we're happy to try to make the most safe crossings where possible, we were not contemplating adding sidewalk. I just want to be fully transparent that that's not in the budget. That was never in the initial land disposition agreement with the town. It was designing, redesigning the offsite intersections. Want to be fully transparent.
Can I just have one comment? It has to do with something you just said. I just wanted. Renee Halli, Free Harding. So I was on the initial walk around, you guys all did, and I brought a lot of these things up. And I guess my big concern on how you started this conversation, because I had not heard it yet, the five, your five considerations. I did not hear consideration on the immediate neighbors of what you're doing as one of the considerations taken into account creating these designs. And I think you all know that pedestrian walkways was my big concern at that. And it sounds like it was not even taken into.
It's not that it's not taken consideration, to be fair, to Trinity. And, and we signed a land disposition agreement that said there are certain things they will fund. And improving the intersections is what their dollars are going towards. We, none of us can argue that we need sidewalks throughout this town, but there's another plan that we have for sidewalks in this town, but it, it's not on Trinity's plate to fund that.
Yeah, I wasn't specifically even speaking for the sidewalks at that point. It was that it was not even one of the five points in there was the impact on the neighbors immediately surrounding these three intersections.
So I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't think that you didn't take that into consideration, Jeff, to the extent that I know when we saw these the first go around, our biggest concern, Christine knows this, we were like, did you reach out to all the neighbors? Cause I didn't capture all the names where people were jumping on the bus with us. So we got these two weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago. So here's, here's where we're at. We just saw them three weeks ago. Two weeks ago at our select board meeting was the first time we had a chance to discuss them. We weren't voting on them because we needed to make sure if people were not aware they were out there, they needed to be made aware. So that's why tonight, when I read this, I literally said, we might vote, right? I do know that there is a sense of urgency because the money has been already given to, to the town of Medfield to start moving on these. But I, I want to listen to what Jeff has to say. We gave some suggestions last week, but that is why I wanted to make sure that the residents who are going to be impacted by these intersections are here. And we want to hear you tonight, but I just want you to have to go through the presentation first and foremost.
So if we want to start, first one is Hospital on Harding Street. And we have four concepts here, kind of two variations of, of two different concepts. So this version here is, is holding Hospital Road as, as a throughway. And it's teeing Harding up from the north to a, a stop, stop controlled intersection heading southbound. And through access being from Hospital from the west, heading to the southeast. We, we discussed some sight distance concerns coming around the curve here as well as some, some grade change and, and speeds along Harding Street. But this, this movement would essentially keep through access along Hospital and, and stop control at Harding. The second option is a slight variation to this, same configuration, but it converts this to a three-way stop sign. So same horizontal, vertical alignments, but an attempt to do some additional traffic controlled measures to, to stop vehicles from each direction at the intersection. The third option is, call it the inverse of this. And it's holding Harding Street as a throughway. And it's squaring Hospital Road up. So the stop is from the Hospital Road approach from the, from the northwest. And through along Harding. And then the fourth option is a similar variation of this converting it to a three-way stop. And this, this was an option added after our discussion last, last meeting. To, to balance out the comparison here. So these were the four options studied here. And on the next page, we can just run through the comparison matrix. And as you'll, you'll see here, there's a rating system, one to five that we had established. And from our right-of-way impacts, environmental impacts, constructability and cost. Our assessment is they're essentially negligible between the concepts. Differences here being trade-offs in traffic operations and safety. And that's providing the three-way stop. Not, not moving as many vehicles through the intersection, but a safer, safer configuration.
In this, to be clear, this is cross-country scoring, low score wins. The low score wins, not the.
Just pinch it out. If you pinch it out on the, like I just, I've, I've got a Mac like you and I just literally just pinched it out so I could zoom in and zoom out. Not working?
Maybe because I'm sharing.
Yeah, I don't think you're going to be able to do that when you're sharing your screen. Okay.
Wait a minute. Can you see? I'm confused about column, whatever, the square I'm looking at.
Sure.
Sorry, I'm trying to see if I can zoom in, maybe if I go back in and zoom in and then share it again.
So, so sorry, it was actually, we gave a, a one to a five, one, one being the lowest, five being the highest. From an assessment standpoint, so. And then at the far right, we tallying those, we, we rank them in the order of the score.
Yeah, my comment was about the right-hand column, not the.
Got it. Yeah, there you go. That's a little easier to read.
The yellow hatched one there.
You're talking about the yellow column?
Yes, correct. The numbers in the white box were from a, a one to five with, with five being preferred. One being not, not as preferred relative to those categories.
Lynn, can I ask, I do want to ask a question about the environmental impacts. Why is it on?
So do me one favor. Yeah, just because we could, if we, but we, I guarantee you will ask. And then when you do, we really need the microphone, only because at home, people can't hear it. And then they send me questions that I prefer not to have to answer.
So we can flip to the next, next intersection is going to be Harding Street at West Street. And there are two concepts prepared, prepared for this configuration here. So West Street in the bottom left approach and Harding is, is kind of heading top left to the, to the right across the page. So this option is basically showing making West Street the throughway. With configuring Harding Street to tee up to a stop bar at, at West Street. Similar conditions here, there's fairly significant grade change coming up from West Street down to the right of the page. There are also some wetland resource areas off the northeast corner of, of where these intersections are improvements. So work would be within the buffer zone. And some challenging sight distances for those approaches as well. The second option here is, is flipping this alternative. It's holding Harding Street as the throughway. And reconfiguring West Street to, to tee a little more into that with a stop. There is some modifications shown to one of the driveways there and pulling West Street a little further away. Property just south of the intersection. But the intent here is to, to bring West Street to a, to a stop and score it closer, closer to a 90-degree connection into Harding. So again, challenging, giving the, the configuration of those roadways. Comparison here, similarly with the other ones from a, the difference between the concepts really falls in the traffic operations and the safety standpoint. No right-of-way impacts. They work beyond the right-of-way, but it, it does, as I mentioned, include one of the options extending some of the driveways to tie it to the new roadways, but that's all within the town right of way. The environmental impacts here is, is a four instead of a five, just noting that there is work within the buffer zone. That'll need to go through Conservation Commission. The big difference between these two is, is the traffic operations and, and the safety. And from a, from a traffic flow, our analysis showed, showed an improvement. Teeing the West Street up to Harding as opposed to the vice versa. And we gave it a slightly higher safety rating primarily due to the, the angle of the vehicles pulling up to the stop sign and, and having to look over their shoulder to, to check for oncoming cars before making the turns. Constructability and cost-wise negligible between the two options. And then the last intersection, we have three concepts that were prepared for Harding Street and North Street. The first option, so this is holding North Street as a throughway. Harding continues into a, a stop. That would be for vehicles heading plan east, taking, taking a left turn on to North Street. And then for vehicles heading south, southeast on North Street, there is a slip lane shown, shown at the bottom here with a landscape island in the middle. Option two is a roundabout. Essentially equally balancing approaches and, and egress from the intersection. With each of these, I guess you can also see on the east of the page is, there's a dash line with some flags on it. That's the, the wetland boundary. So there is work in resource areas, but but each of these kind of outside of the 50-foot build zone, that's under the town by law. The third option is more the inverse of, of the first. And it's holding Hospital Road is, or sorry, Harding Street as the throughway. And squaring north up to, to a one-way stop where that thick black line is across. And then on the comparison here. I think options one and three were fairly similar. The roundabout was one that, that jumped out more from a traffic operations and a safety standpoint. Certainly significant benefits there. Consideration of constructability and costs. Likely a little more complex in, in executing the work and, and the cost of it. But I just wanted to pull that, that matrix together. So I think that's, that's it. We do have some other diagrams that show the west and Harding, as well as the Harding and North intersections together. If helpful to, to view something in more context. That happy to pull up if it's helpful in talking through any questions.
These ones, Jeff?
Yeah.
And just so you know, from Trinity's perspective, we are agnostic to any intersection design. Our inclination would be to go towards the safest one. This is obviously the town's decision. VHB is engaged by the town. What we are really here to push and to propose is a decision so that we can demonstrate to the state that the money is being used in a timely fashion. That we could benefit, the, the development could benefit from future investment in the infrastructure. So that's our dog in this hunt, just so you know.
Can I put that more bluntly? Mass Works gives us money. They've given us the first year's worth of money. And we need at least five years' worth of that to really get what the, what the project needs. And they won't give us the second increment of that money until we've spent the first increment. So when we, how about wanting to spend it, understand this is a train that we want to see five rail cars go by the intersection. And this is the first one. The faster we can figure it out, get to the right answer, but the faster we can move on this, the happier I think Trinity would be, the happier we all should be and the better position we are to accelerate or at least keep the state's funding stream on track, which is really important to, for this whole project.
And I'll speak for, I don't take this lightly. I've, I've said this and I know Chris has heard me say this, which is why it was all the information I'm glad was in the insiders. I mean, I look at especially Harding and North, that's a generational change. If we should go the route of a roundabout, that's, that's dramatically different than what we have today. But I think what we all acknowledge is that is such a bad intersection with curves and people stopping at West Street and some people not even stopping at the yield. It's, it's an accident waiting to happen on top of West Street, which is today that when you come down and you have to look over your shoulder, it's horrible. And when people cut across so quick and people coming up from Harding can't really see until the last second. We know that's an area and we appreciate Trinity stepping forward, saying, we know we're going to draw 700 more people. I don't know how many more cars, but technically there will be an increase in traffic with the, the residents being completed up there. That being said, Hospital Harding, West Harding, North Harding, we need to look at. And I'll, again, I'll speak for myself right now. As we go through tonight, I don't want anyone to feel like we're rushing anything. We, we've, we've, these guys came out back in July, wait, when I broke my ankle, August. Actually, August, I can tell you right now, August 20th, I broke it the 19th. So I walked around in a cast that night. They, they came out, we walked the intersections, neighbors were there. They then went back, they did some drawings. We finally had a chance to see them two weeks ago. We're here tonight. I'm glad that there are residents here. So I'm going to let my fellow board members ask questions and then absolutely the mic is open. Okay?
I don't have any more questions, but I just, you know, my, my opinions haven't changed. I, I think that starting up nearest the hospital, that intersection should be the two-way choice. Keeping Harding straight, that improves the, the very bad curve on Harding. Three-way stop, safest. I think it's the best for, for traffic. I think it's the best for for traffic and for safety and gets rid of that very bad curve in in Harding. At West and Harding, I I would have West Street be the stop. That gets actually the neighbors a little bit of pedestrian room in front of the houses that are on the even side of of Harding at that point. So that's a benefit that that you were talking about, Renee. And then at Harding and Hospital, no Harding and North, it it should be the roundabout in my mind. And and I know that Renee, you have the issue of of the distance to your driveway, but I think the roundabouts going to people are going to go slow enough that they're not going to it's not going to be a problem for you getting out of your your house, I don't think, along there. So I'm hoping. But I think the the safety and the and the traffic efficiency of the roundabout, it makes it the way to go. So those those are my choices.
Yes.
So I'll ask the one question I have and then I have a couple of just comments just to give you some you all some sense of the thought process. If you go to two A, the only question I had, and this is just a, you know, it's based two A on on Hospital and Harding, which is the while they're looking for it, I'll make the observation, I was pleasantly surprised two weeks ago to discover that my preferences, which I think are the same as Pete's, were actually also the number one ranked options that they had on those matrices you just saw. I wasn't I wasn't I thought I was maybe going to have to have arguments about stuff, but actually it worked out that way. So just so you know, this one here, here's the only question I had on it. This is the one I like. This is the one I think I actually suggested. The only when I looked at the diagram, the only thing that caught hit my hit me was in my experience as a driver, when you get to an intersection that has multiple stop signs, if the geometry, the configuration of those stop signs has one of the axes that's farther apart than the other axis, for some reason, and I've never, and this is just subjective experience, but over a lot of years of driving, for some reason, the long axis is the stop signs that people will think they can make it. And so the only question I had about this is whether there would be any benefit of having all three stop signs be the same distance from the center of the intersection, which would move those two. And it's, like I said, it's subjective sort of from years of driving, I've never understood why that's true. You'd think the ones that had the short distance would be trying to hop in, but it always seems to me it's the ones on the long axis that jump into the intersection when maybe they shouldn't be doing it. So that that's the only question I had about this option.
Um, no, it's fair. It's a fair point and, you know, to be honest, I'll work with our design team on this specifically that we can absolutely look at that, but I completely understand how that could be a point where maybe there's a little more delay time between getting to to the spot when others are already starting to move off of that stuff for us.
I'll defer to your expertise on this. It's not a position, it's just that I looked and that's the one thing that jumped out at me.
Maybe what I'd say is I I think we could that's something we could absolutely accommodate and and address in that.
Anything it would perhaps would even slow the the pass through in that intersection a bit more. I already made the comment about the number one options. The only other comment I would make for given people are bringing up pedestrian issues, if you think any of these intersections are leaving you worse off than where you currently are, I'd like to hear it because I don't think any one of these is making it harder. The the roundabout has issues around how do you how do you navigate it, but I don't think any of these configurations are leaving any pedestrian. So so you when we get to the, you know, give me the feedback.
Wait, 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 I have no problem. The key things can be at the mic. So I'm going to if you're so I'm not even going to comment because I think it's so important that the residents are here. So by all means, one by one, just say your name, where you live, and then any questions are fair to ask. So yeah, just go up to the microphone if you wouldn't mind. Thank you.
David Kemmer at 12 Harding.
It's not going to get loud, but at home they'll hear.
Oh, okay. Yeah, great. So I'm sure tons of questions and I have no doubt you have looked into all of this and there's all kinds of contingencies and and whatnot. It sounds like it's very important to get the money to use it and and so I sense the urgency and I empathize. There is, I obviously I live right at that corner, god awful mess, I've seen so many accidents, I fear every time anybody in my family walks the dog. That's not anybody's problem here because it's really only about four, five, six houses. I do wonder though, the roundabout seems like it's open to what anybody says, but it seems like it could be a good idea. I worry a lot about traffic coming from the north to south and then around the corner west. I don't know how that is how traffic flow with say option two roundabout or any others might be affected or if there is a contingency plan for later with other money to address that.
I'm going to ask Frank to do this. Frank, do you mind showing because I had the same question of Jeff when I was like, I can't envision one without looking at the other. So what I'd like to see you show is the roundabout with the West Street stop, if you have that.
And and I don't mean to complicate, just to make it really specific, that corner way before.
Do you mind showing to me, it just helps me with so go no, go back to the roundabout.
Yeah.
And then it's just it's the West Street stop instead of Harding.
If I'm looking at this correctly, this is our house, Lamont's, this is the this is the corner. It's all bad, but when cars come through here, they will, I presume will be slowed down somewhat by the roundabout, they'll have to look at cars. I stretch my imagination to see how cars will slow down coming around this horrible corner.
Agreed.
And either going in, I mean, I've seen it over the years, going into ditches, potentially hitting people, getting rear ended as you go into your driveway.
So if I'm not mistaken, you don't have the right to enter a road or a roundabout without slowing down because you don't have the right of way, the the person in the car in the rotary ha- a roundabout has a right of way, right?
Yes, I I think you're right and probably so. I'm just voicing a very concerned about practicality.
So Jeff, it's just something I I think is if there's a way to design it that you just can't whip into it.
Correct. You'd be you'd be at a yield point entering the roundabout from the north there. So.
You'd have to stop here, in other words.
Not necessarily a stop, but you would not have the right of way for vehicles within the roundabout.
Jeff, if you make this one more perpendicular to the roundabout, you can slow that traffic coming up on North Street so that they can't whip around onto West Street at a high speed. Do you know the roundabout over by Babson College on 135 at the bottom of the hill? The Wellesley redesigned it and they specifically took out the pavement so that the cars have to really slow down as they get to the roundabout. And you could do that here if you made North Street come in more of a perpendicular and and but I mean, you guys can design it to slow the traffic. I'm confident.
Jeff, a question though, just because I agree with the comment you made, but I thought the current curve, doesn't that track with the dash line to the left of the green? In other words, that that curve you're seeing there is a sharper curve than the one you currently have.
Correct.
The green is new.
The green hatch there is basically what is pavement now that would not that would be removed in the future, just for context of where they.
So people now drive along the dash line.
Correct.
So we're narrowing that so it's you don't have the ability right now, you can wing around it. I hate that. Yeah.
Right. Yeah, I'll leave it at that.
And just, I'm his his wife, or he's my husband, I should say.
Leslie Aldrich, 12 Harding Street.
So as he said, we are right here at this intersection. What happens often is just walking out when there's a backup over here, people make this a two lane highway and people go over our our driveway. And so I fear that if if people know some cars are going to go this way unless this is very, very skinny, right, they will go and they'll try to go by because they're trying to get their kids to school and they're getting very frustrated and they know cars are going to go this way. They come up here and I can tell you, waiting with your kids with the bus and fearing that you're going to get hit by a car for 15 years has been tragic. So I just, this is my biggest concern here. Safety is the biggest issue, so that would be.
So I think that can be designed so it is goes back to one lane.
That is supposed to be one lane. It's supposed to be one lane, right?
Because I I'm in town, so I'm going in the second lane a lot of times.
Right.
But I also think that and there could be an obstacle there to prevent people from driving on that shoulder area, so.
That's right, you have that comment when I put the sprinkler heads.
Fantastic.
I just put boulders.
Well, that's the thing. And I would just make it, I know you're going to speak.
No, no, no.
Make a like if we could get sidewalks, there is a school, right, as far as Memorial being right there, you can't walk out of Memorial and if you live around Memorial School, there's no sidewalks to walk your kids to school, which seems a little bit odd for a town like Medfield. And so to put this as part of the package, now I know this isn't what is in the package, but if we're going to rip up roads at this point and create havoc, this would be the time to do it and really make this a safe place and go all the way to the hospital, right?
So Christine, you're taking notice and we can review this with Mo because we have the the sidewalk plan and whatever, so.
Yeah, the the problem is that we just don't have the funding for it, but that's the issue.
If this end of town has no sidewalks whatsoever, so I don't know what the priority is with sidewalks.
So we have a if you go to the website, there's a complete streets plan and outlines. We have a what's called the heat map and we have an ADA sidewalk and it tries to fill in any gaps that we have that are existing. We have a $5 million shortfall before we even talk about adding new sidewalks on there. So I would say I've been here for 26 years, every single phone call I get is 90% are about sidewalks. I would love to sidewalk everywhere, I just don't have the budget to do that. We have tried, we just received $500,000 in complete streets funding to fill some of those gaps. We have some federal money to do some five sidewalk in the downtown, so we're trying every possible way. The capital budget committee is coming to meet with the select board in February to talk about can we come up with a dedicated funding source for sidewalks in town and build on that prioritization plan? The only way to do that is with an override vote, not something we can do within the existing budget.
I would suggest that we're we're gaining some land here and here, and I think the sidewalk just needs to go from North Street to West Street.
Yes.
I just I don't I don't have the money available to do that and I don't have it.
You've got a very talented DPW director that has a sidewalk paper.
I would go out and do it myself.
Could I just ask, I want to make sure I understand the question, the comment you made in terms of what you really mean. So in the same way I asked you, Jeff, about the dash line on the on the northwest side, there's a dash line on the southwest side, that's the current road, right?
Correct.
So to your point about what it's like now, that's because the cars are following the dash line that's there. My question for you is recognizing your caution about wanting to make sure that you don't have reckless drivers flying through rotaries, there's nothing about, is there anything about this as a roundabout that makes this more dangerous than what you currently have? Rec you know, we still have the issue of narrowing the roads enough, but there's nothing that makes this worse. Okay.
Well, I would say, Gus, that's part of what I wanted to to say is you you made that comment before and I think it's hard to tell from this whether it would make pedestrian traffic more dangerous. So I don't know if there's a widening.
I'm asking about the road traffic. Is there something that the traffic on the road is making it more dangerous for pedestrians?
Yes, that's what I'm that's what I'm saying. I'm not sure you can tell from this because I don't know if there is a widening here. I know the dash line is, I mean, I don't think people pay attention, they're weaving around each other to get around. Is there a hard stop for cars so they can't continue to do that to make their own second lane where there is no second lane?
So right now in this diagram, it would show that there's a narrowing of the road and the and on the north side, there's actually a sharpening of the turn.
Right.
So the short answer is yes. I mean, this, the message I think I hear from you is you got to make the road really narrow so people can't try to create two lanes out of one lane. Got that. This sort of shows that. I don't know if it's showing it enough or not.
Okay.
But what it's showing is a narrower travel path than what you currently have right now and actually sharper corners, which is another way that it flushes things down.
How about fading out of the driveway in such an area that I fear, or trucks or delivery trucks or Amazon trucks?
Got it. And and maybe we were kind of helps clarify this. So so agreed, each of the each of the movements here is is essentially going to be designed down to a single lane, so there there would not be any.
Well, there'll be a shoulder that would allow someone to pass somebody. I think that's going to be the concern.
Yeah. The 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 way we accommodate the extra space needed for larger vehicles is the the inner circle, kind of that donut in the middle. So we probably could have added some other colors to show this, but that would typically be something with slightly raised curb on the outer ring of that circle and, you know, likely an alternate material inside. So it would, the intent is for that to deter typical traffic movements, but a a large truck would have the ability to to drive over that if it needed to to make the turn. But the general traffic would be confined to to a single lane in each direction.
Does curbing help? Is that part of like the curb, does that creating a, you know, somewhat of a curb? Because I think part of what we're seeing is the cars, as we've said a couple of times, come up, take out the mailboxes, take out the stone wall in a couple of cases, they come all the way up on the front yard. So they're not really paying attention to where the road is actually when they're trying to get to school and get around the other cars who are trying to go down North Street. So I don't know, at some point we need some sort of sidewalk there. I know that's not this conversation, but if the, you know, we're looking at what would allow us to have that safe passage on the side and maybe in this case, it's which configuration do you think is most conducive to getting to that point when we can from a budget perspective? And are there solutions in the interim that are higher curbs that can can contain that traffic in a better way than it's happening today? And this last comment is just not to be, just to say, you have three out of the six families that live right in the center of those two intersections, the roundabout and West Street, and who had no idea about this, so that we weren't consulted, just for future when you go out.
That's why we had this meeting.
Yeah, we weren't going to do one on one consulting. We can't do that.
So there's no voting today?
Well, tonight we may vote, but what we're doing tonight is we want to make sure people who want to have input on this are here tonight. Because I kept saying, I don't want the three of us to just vote on changes on intersections when this is a generational, townwide impacting decision. I hate when it's put on the three of us without residents chiming in. I mean, we represent you, but you know, your vote, your voice absolutely matters.
Yeah.
And two weeks ago, we said we were going to do this. One of the very specific things we said is we need to make sure the people that are near these intersections know that we're talking about this. On a vote, speaking for myself, I don't want to wait, I don't want to just wait two more weeks to have a vote. Now, if tonight's discussion, it sounds like now it's there's so many issues here, then that's great. But all of the things being equal, it'd be nice to take a vote and and Pete and I at least have said what we think is the best answer. And I live on Harding Street, so I pay for whatever, you know, my opinions here, I've got to be accountable to myself for. I I really do think these are the best ones, but but I don't live right where you are, so I understand I might not have all the perspective.
Hi, my name's Joey Andardi and I live at Two Hospital Road. Can we put up the configuration, please, of the Harding Hospital?
The three way stop with Harding being straight?
That'd be two two A.
It isn't just two A, right? I mean, there's there's four four options, right?
Oh, you want that one?
You want which one?
Are we going to give you the visual of one of the ones?
Oh, I don't, okay, I guess it really doesn't matter. You can just put up one of one of those. I don't even know what the two A is. So first of all, I didn't come a couple of weeks ago. I I wanted to, but I didn't know what the process was and by the time I figured out what it was, it was too late, so I didn't get here, so I apologize.
No, you're welcome. Tonight is tonight, we want you guys, I was thrilled when all the arms went up. I was like, okay, this is good.
So living at Two Hospital Road, I'm right there, it's the house was built in 1896, whatever, it's that little stone post office.
We can point to it just so everyone knows.
Right around here.
Okay, so it's right on the road to begin with. So the idea, and I'm I go out every single morning to go to work and I know we're looking into the future to with more traffic coming down Hospital Road. But from what I see every morning, and I don't even see it every morning at this point, I see it maybe once every few weeks, is that when I'm walking to get into my car, there's like six or eight cars lying down at Hospital Road waiting for the traffic on. First of all, did the did any, did you guys do any kind of like traffic study or anything of the of like the traffic that that happens at eight o'clock in the morning around there or anything like that? You did? Okay, I was just curious, but it's okay. I was just curious, just because I'm just going to give you my opinion because I see it every morning. So the traffic backs up down Hospital Road and and the reason all those cars at Hospital Road are sitting there is because everybody coming from Harding, going down Harding, you know, there's no, there's no reason for them to stop, right? There's no stops down there.
They have to stop.
Well, no, you you have to stop coming out, but you don't have to stop going down, right?
So if you're leaving town heading towards Dover, you're saying?
If you're heading towards Dover, so right, if you're heading towards Dover. So there's no, there's nothing stopping traffic. So everybody on Hospital Road is waiting for, because there are, most people are taking that left hand turn in the morning because most people are going down.
In that little short stretch.
Right.
They have to make a left. Yep.
That's right. But the thing is, it's actually a natural stop there already because you'd be crazy to to try to take a left hand turn right there without stopping because you can't see around. because you can't see around that corner. So you have to stop and everybody stops because you have to, because there's no way that you can take that turn without peeking out to see what's, what's gonna come around the corner. Okay, so it's sort of like a natural stop, so anyway, so, okay, so, so, but the problem is, is the traffic coming from Harding going down Harding to Dover is like non-stop. And so when the cars are coming from Hospital and going up Harding toward the, toward North Street, that seems to me, it, it, it's a good flow, like, like there's no reason that people can't keep going in that direction and without stopping because it, it, it's, it works well. The only thing.
Yeah, stop, I'm losing, I live just right up from here and I can't follow what you said. When you said people on Hospital going to North Street.
So people, so people coming down Hospital Road, so you're either gonna get down Harding or you're gonna?
Going into town.
No, I'm sorry, down Harding to Dover. So my house is on, so my house is right here. So then you have people going, coming down Hospital Road, they're either going down here to Dover, right? Or they're going this way to, to North Street, right? So it seems to me, just because I watch it every morning, when I come out of my house, there's traffic backed up like five or six cars right here waiting to take a left because most people going to Boston or wherever they're going, they're trying to take a left and they're waiting for this traffic to stop because Harding Street just keeps going and going and going. And then finally when it's a break, then people start taking that left. And so, but the idea of putting like three, so I can see putting a stop sign somewhere along here so that people have to pause, so that the people on Hospital Road can take a left. But they, but they naturally have to stop anyway because there's no way that they're gonna take that left without stopping. But the idea of just saying, put up three stop signs because it's the safest. Like when you live in this little house, imagine, my mom's just getting driver, imagine, imagine every car, every bus, every truck stopping in front of your house. And that's what's gonna happen if you put three stop signs there and, and, and it's overkill. Like it's just, it isn't necessary based on, on, on what I see.
And I react just a little bit, that natural stop you're talking about? Because that's what, anytime I come from Hospital, I'm north, I'm just up past the pasture.
Okay.
That is a natural stop.
Because I don't know what that means.
I mean, I'm northbound on Harding, sorry, I don't mean North Street.
So what do you mean by northbound on Harding?
You know where Maple Leaf Farm is, you know where the horse is and the pasture?
They have knots.
So down towards Dover, that?
No, 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 up on Harding.
Harding Street toward North Street.
Towards Dover.
You know where K Mark is, do you know where K Mark is?
No, I don't.
Do you know where Marlin is?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm right across the street from Marlin.
Okay.
Okay, now, if I come from Hospital to go home, just, so I'm headed north on Harding? You're right, that's a natural stop, you'd be absolutely insane to just pull out. The problem is that the sight lines in both directions are so short that you actually have to sit there and you clear the right, you quickly clear the left and if you take too long to figure it out, somebody's already coming back up on the right.
Okay, so why not just put a stop at Harding, heading to a Dover then?
We're saying three, so you're, you're saying cars are gonna be backed up coming off of Hospital. With three stops, everybody gets a chance to make those turns.
I know, but what I'm saying is it's not necessary because the reason that people at Hospital Road are stopped is because Harding is just going and going and, everybody's going from down to, towards Dover in the, at eight o'clock in the morning, like that's where everybody's, everybody's going. Everybody's stuck here waiting for that traffic to stop so that they can take a left-hand turn.
So, so.
So where would you put the stop sign?
Yeah, where would you put the stop sign?
Well, I don't know, if not one of your suggestions to put a stop sign there, then where? Yeah, but why three though? I don't, that's the part I don't understand.
There's already one going south.
Yes.
There's already, as you said, a natural stop, which I'll say is in a dangerous configuration.
Yeah, but it wouldn't be dangerous if there was another stop on Harding heading toward Dover. I don't know north, south, I don't know.
And so you would have no stops on Hospital?
Not that, I mean, I just don't see the point.
You would legally have the right to take the left, so it's, what gets awkward there is Harding is the main road. And this is what the police always say to us about north, like north is the main road, but yet Harding kind of cuts across it and has the right-of-way. The way we look at this, and I've talked to a couple of residents that live on Harding, that they're, they actually have loved this idea because it's gonna slow traffic down. That Harding right now is a very, people speed leaving towns, people speed coming into town, and then we have the rail trail. So if you're coming down Harding to head to the center of town, you're naturally being forced to slow down as you're then heading down and the traffic coming up knows they're going to have to stop and we're removing the kind of that blind turn that exists today when people whip around Hospital onto Harding. So, so the thought is where we are slowing down traffic, right, that's the whole intent, we're trying to be safer. We're trying to regulate it so that you don't get those people just whipping around.
I understand, but it's easy for you guys to say, like, just put up stop signs, but what about every car stopping and starting? I mean, I walk out of my house some mornings and the smell of exhaust, it doesn't happen a lot. But like between all the buses living down the end of the street and, and all the trucks and all the, you know, it, it's like you walk out some mornings, you can't even breathe. It's like, you know, so you're gonna stop every single car in this configuration, like, you know, they're gonna stop and start every car that goes by?
So if I can give you, it's like a little bit of the same scenario, I live on Matta Common. So anyone who wants to go to high school or middle school in the morning, I, I can't leave my driveway anytime between 7:25 and roughly 7:36 because it's just bumping up a bumper car. And, and I know at the intersection of Pleasant and Oak, they experience what you're experiencing. Like it gets backed up in certain periods of time in this town. And then after school, it's not so bad because of all the after-school programs. It is, it, it, the only thing I will say, and you can tell me I'm wrong with this one Christine, is the buses is the problem right now, but I know Abby will be really happy when we move those buses.
Yeah, I'll be happy when you move those buses, true, just because it's like buses, buses, buses.
That is part of the trinity agreement, like we have to get those out of there. So that, where they are exactly right now, that won't happen. Where they end up going, we're not 100% sure, but, but it's, it's, it's trying to regulate knowing there's 334 apartments earmarked to be on the state hospital, which if we just say roughly 700 cars, we know they're either going to head to 27 or they're gonna head towards Harding. And how do we try to regulate that and make that safer? And that's really what we're trying to do and.
I know, but all I'm, all I'm saying is that everybody, like at this point, you have to stop at the end of Hospital Road to take that left because you'd be crazy.
Well, you have because you're cutting across traffic, so you can't just take a left and just take a left.
But if, but if we, so if we slowed the traffic on Harding Street, going down Harding Street, then, and they had to stop, then it would give opportunity for someone on Hospital Road to take a left when they stop the person on Hospital Road and take a left.
That's what the three-way stop does.
The three-way.
It allows them to take turns and so the traffic will flow.
I know, but it's like, but that means every, like, it's just.
Can we talk?
All right, sorry, yes, all right, call time. But the, okay, but the thing is though, yeah, I mean, it's just a quality of life thing for the people who live in that section because imagine you living there and, and stopping and starting and stopping and starting and exhaust and, you know.
To be honest, I thought this would be one you in particular would like better because the road is moved farther away from your house, so I'm, I'm.
It's just bumped out so that, so that it's not such a harsh turn anymore. It's, we're trying to straighten the view.
It moves away from my house?
Oh, yeah, yeah, this is all new gained land in front of your house here. This, this little bump out there.
The dash, the dash line's where the road is now.
That's good to know, but maybe at the same time they can fix the pitch in front, because everything we did, that's another.
So this, I think it helps with the pitch because the water comes off of the.
Water puddles, like all.
I think it's the Morris House here and, and this gets very icy because of the runoff. But everybody's gonna be going slow in front of your house, so that's gonna make the line better, I think.
What you were Jeff saying is that, that they, they will then go out and do the final design and all of that. And I know, I think Pete and/or Gus made the comment about the runoff at your corner today, just as it exists. So, I mean, I'm not gonna speak for you, but I am gonna speak for you, that I believe the intent would be, obviously the road would be designed, especially if we're having, you're not gonna set up three stop signs and have a pitch and a stop sign where you're setting people up for disaster.
No, the part of the design will include grading and drainage components.
Can I, can I, Jeff, in the interest of, we're cutting you off here, but I live, I live at 122 Harding Street. I'd be more than happy just to talk to you directly, I'm just right up the road.
Thank you for coming, this is what that's all about, like this, this is a procedure. We, I hate having to vote for residents when I feel like I'm, I'm not even getting a chance to talk to the people that are being impacted.
And next we have.
I'm Cliff Fitzgerald for Clayton Street, I'm the street right before that intersection and I'm wondering, why are we trying to make this more of a bottleneck? Because at peak traffic time, we're adding another 700 cars. How am I gonna get out onto Hospital Road?
I can answer that question.
So why can't we consider a small roundabout here? Have you, have you looked at that option?
Yeah, I, the, the right-of-way component there is, would, would be the, would be the aspect, to be honest. We, we can, we haven't dropped it on there, but I, my expectation is it's, it's, does not fit within the right-of-way.
When they say right-of-way, they mean they have to do a taking.
They don't have room.
So now I'm just at the mercy of someone to let me out at that point, to get out in the morning.
Through his stuff, I, I'll, I'll own this one, I'm the one, and they've heard from me, so you know, originally one of the early designs streamlined Harding to, to Hospital and then disrupted Harding and then down at West streamlined north to west, stopped Harding. And I said, it's the people in town that we should be designing our roads for first off, rather than shopping up the town road so that we can provide an expedited route for, for cut-through commuters to use. If you want an expedited route for cut-through computer, commuters, make it streamlined from Harding onto Hospital Road, add 334 tenants in the, in the new, or 334 more rental units on the state hospital. What you're seeing right now from Chapel Hill Landing by way of increased traffic, it will be even more. My strategy has been, and this, and this, some of the people that have been here for the 27 Route West intersection, if we can find a way to make that round, that a roundabout. The, the folks, the engineers we have on that have said, if you do that, I asked the question, what would be the intersection that would be more likely to draw people from Hospital Road onto North Meadows Road that want to get to the center of town? The answer is a roundabout down and on West Route 27. So people say, rather than us having to stop at the end of Hospital Road and, and wait for people, why don't we just go out to Hospital, why don't we go the other way to Hospital Road, take a left on North Meadows, get, zip around the roundabout and we're down at the Friendly's in no time at all. I actually want them to do that because I don't want them to come onto Harding Street.
But that's not part of the proposal.
Well, that's, I'm, what I'm saying is I'm looking at all four of those, I'm looking at all four of those intersections.
This is the pain in the neck, people don't go another direction and 27 can handle more cars than Harding.
I see, that's the method to the madness.
Okay.
Sure, if you see those, those thick black lines kind of cutting across.
I just wanna see where the stop sign is. Black lines, yeah, sorry.
In, in this concept, there'd be three stop signs from Hospital would be right here. From Harding North would be there and from Harding South would be there.
Doesn't seem much. Ah, Tom Tate, White Street, the dirt road that's left in town, and so I watch all this. So it's, I'm not really a participant, I'm more of an observer. And my answer to respond to your question, I don't see anything that these guys have done in any of these configurations that makes, makes it worse. Everything that they've done is gonna improve it in one way, shape or another. It won't make it perfect, but it's gonna be good. But here's, here's my point, and I'm really concerned about the roundabout, I love roundabouts, I think they're terrific. I don't think you got enough room, I'm sure you've got to stick out and measure it or something.
Are we talking about this intersection or the other?
No, North Street, North Hospital, the roundabout.
Harding Street and, Harding Street and Hospital. I think you're right, yeah, okay.
I, I'm concerned that there's not enough room there to put a circle.
Right.
I know you, I'm sure you did the math, it's what you do for a living, right? But boy, if you drop that circle in there, there's no chance you're gonna have any sidewalks in any, until I'm 100 years old, there's no room left, there's stone walls in there.
I just need to clarify something, you're talking north and Harding?
Yes.
Okay, just good.
Roundabout.
Okay.
Only roundabout.
Not this intersection.
Not this, okay.
No, not this. The only roundabout that we've discussed, which I think is a great idea, I love roundabouts, right? But I can't imagine there's enough room there, there's a stone wall there across that property right about here, right, that you got your dotted line on, okay? And, and I see you got it smushed in there, man, I can't imagine that works, I hope it works. The only other, the only other comment I would make is the West Street intersection, okay? And I've been, because I'm turning, I'm making the acute left there, back over your shoulder, and there's only one way to do it, I go in that guy's driveway, where'd he go? Almost into his driveway and then I make a left turn and I sit there because I can't see over the guardrails to down Harding, okay? So I can't just go out, so I gotta stop, and now I got cars coming at me and only 30% give a signal and the rest of them blow the horn, right? And I'm blocking the road, like, oh, thanks, there was a light there you could use. Anyway, my concern about that intersection, this is West and Harding, is the grade. It is really steep there. If you shorten that and take out some of that guardrail, that grade gets even worse.
He's belting it, they're not shortening it. So you can, you mind going to that diagram? They're actually extending the stop sign on West, so you're more onto Harding.
More on the flat part.
Yeah, that's why you noticed the driveway is being extended, that's why the driveway is being extended.
No, it's getting more. So you're gonna push it out.
Yeah, so see right here, so right here, if you notice, they moved it all the way to here. So that driveway is being brought out further.
I think, correct, and, okay, if it's further down, I'm done, next. We're good, okay, no, I didn't read it right, but I'm concerned about the size of the circle.
Are you the man that has the bees on White Street?
I'm sorry?
Do you have the bees?
The bees.
Bees.
Oh, no, those are John.
Yeah, and I'm sure you know.
John Newell, he's the guy that has Floyd and Glenn's. I'm in Glennie's old house, been there 30 years, right? Johnny owns that little piece of property that he can't build anything on, I'm sorry, John.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. You were talking this grade down here as well, yes.
Yeah, it's pretty steep.
That is, that is definitely significant and, and you know, it is still sloping down a little bit, but it does.
I mean, it's gotta be about an eight-foot drop there. I'm more concerned about the guy in the landscape truck who's gonna come up and turn left and go out that way.
Yeah, yeah.
That's gonna be a problem getting up that hill.
Yeah, but I, you know, I think.
But you guys are road people.
Yeah.
Down the street, so.
This, this does definitely do an improvement on that, on that site.
And you're saying it's further down?
Certainly a great change, but no, you're, you're still, you're still coming down the slope here. So it's not, it's not, I'm not gonna say it's level here.
Jeff, could you point out where the original road is on that, just so we, when he?
Sure, yeah, so this is, this is that current.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Right, but where's the guard, I mean, the guardrail now is?
Right, right on this corner here, right?
You're thinking that's it?
This is, this is the upper part of the, of West Street and the, and the guardrail's coming around.
Okay, don't take time on this, go ahead, you're up.
Rob Tatro, 12 West Street.
So we.
Hey guys, can you give me one sec, just so we can get some attention on Rob, thank you.
So we're, we're the first house on West Street and I just want to say we wholeheartedly agree with this. We've got blind curves coming both ways to our driveway. The fact that our kids were able to get out of the driveway through their driver's license years is amazing without an accident. So we did something okay there, but we're just saying yes to this, please. And then on top of that, just for those people who drive from West Street down to Nor, Harding, know that certain times of year, that is blind sun coming at you. So when you come around that corner without the stop sign and the sun in your face, it becomes really dangerous. So yes to the stop sign on West Street and Harding, please.
Rob, is that your house with the driveway extension?
No, no, we're, we're up here.
That's 16, I think, Harding Street. Yeah.
We're the first house on West. And then just quickly, we talked with Heidi and Tripp Johnson, who wanted to be here tonight. They couldn't be here tonight, but just quickly, if you could head back to the.
Three-way stop at Harding?
Three-way stop, please, and actually to Gus's proposal about the, the three-way stop.
Two-way.
No, two-way, that's it.
The three-way stop, yep, that, nope.
Yeah, that's it, that's Gus, Gus proposed making it a straight Harding and not that it's still leaving the blind curve.
So that, that's the one that they prefer. And if you don't know the Johnson family, they live right in the middle of that, very similarly to you. That is the design that they prefer and they just wanted that to be voiced. And actually Gus, when I, when I, when you were talking about the distance from that stop sign into that intersection, it made me think a lot of the Babson College, Wellesley Country Club intersection, for those people that don't know it, it's so awkward because the distances from the stop signs are so far away. So if you could bring that a lot closer, that seems to, to be reasonable to me, thanks.
Wellesley's taking up pavement at that intersection. They're making that intersection smaller.
For anyone else who's not familiar, if you go diagonally down to the right on this diagram, that's all downhill and beyond that is where the rail trail crossing is. And beyond that is where the rail trail crossing is, so it's.
I can't leave my house and go to the rail trail without taking my life.
I'm not sure if we're getting sidewalks. I, I'm totally, totally sympathetic with you.
Renee Halli, three Harding Street. Can you bring up the rotary picture, please? So I, I guess my first question is, when we did the walk around, I thought it was very clearly stated that with the wetlands, there was not even enough room for a roundabout. So what changed between then and now?
We hadn't gone out and flagged the wetlands, I, I don't believe at that point. But this, this exercise, we actually had a chance to have a field survey and have everything located and had an actual base plan to work off of. I know, I think we were aware that we're wetland resources in that area, but we may not have just had the actual boundary of it. Is my, I'm trying to think of the timing of when, when we did our walk with, I don't think we had done the survey at that point.
Part of our original proposal to include a roundabout, and this was like, I think, an additional service. And you had to go out and create the, show where the boundary is first.
Yeah, so.
Is it taking the walkway?
I'm sorry?
Is it taking the walkway that's there?
Hey, there is a sidewalk.
You're talking about the one way off, the one way off the road?
This whole, I don't know if the green one would be better, because I do want to look at that one too. So, so this is, this is like a walkway.
That's the other one.
I just can't picture with how this theme shifted over the, it's just another question we can't answer at that time. So like everybody else in, in our area, we are concerned about safety. I mean, we personally bought our house because we could walk to two schools. And then we realized we really couldn't walk to two schools. I am concerned about selling my house with this type of setup, which I'm planning on doing in a couple of years. Quite honestly, that people are gonna look at this and say, I can't do anything. I can't, we walk to town to dinner all the time and I'm looking at this. I don't know where I'm gonna cross the street. I'm going over here. Where am I walking over here? How am I getting over to the sidewalks that do exist? And do I go this way? And then is there gonna be walkway over here that what I assume will still be the sidewalk that will exist if it does still exist? I mean, I don't know how we're gonna get anywhere. We buy our houses because they're walkable to town. And without designated pedestrian walking areas, I'm sorry, but the pedestrian safety needs to be one of the further things to consider. The fact that we are making traffic flow for people who don't need to live in Medfield and not considering the safety of the people who live in these neighborhoods is absurd to me.
They still have to stop you. So are you saying that current intersection is safer than you think that one?
I believe it is.
There's no, there's no way to pass there anymore by the sun, by the sun.
Where, where am I walking here?
So you are, so that's that one pinch point is what you're concerned, even though that's still inside the dash line that shows where the road is right now. That pinch point is the one you're concerned about whether there's a way you can walk.
Not only that, I, I mean, even cars coming around the corners, this, this is how cars are gonna have to come on here and then do this. Or they're coming around here. They're gonna take them wide. I've driven in plenty of rotaries. I don't know how a bus gets through here on a single lane rotary. That, that's also another concern of mine. About crossing with no yields, no stops, like, we have breaks now where we can see cars coming and we can see when they're gonna stop. I, 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 I really don't, I'm very concerned about walking. I'm certainly very concerned about children walking. My driveway thing, I think this is far enough over. I'm probably okay. Because I couldn't picture this, because you would say you couldn't take, I, I was picturing it having to be way over. I wanna make, the gentleman who talked about the stone wall, I, I think we're on the same page. We would probably all give up our stone walls for sidewalks.
I think that one of the things that roundabouts does is it can slow the traffic down so much that pedestrians are, can cross virtually anywhere. Because the cars see them and they'll, they'll feed to them. Look at my blog. I've got, I've got a thing there about a, a roundabout in a downtown in the UK. And that's what they discovered was they didn't need crosswalks after the cars, the roundabouts, because cars just seeded to the pedestrians everywhere.
I believe in the UK, I believe in Massachusetts, people go rotary, they're forced to slow down in the rotary, they're speeding as soon as they.
If there is a crosswalk, they're legally not breaking the rules. So I, I would think that you guys would have crosswalks at all, across all these rooms that people need to get across. There's a legal binding way to make, make drivers have to stop and not just think everyone's gonna be nice and sharing.
I'm happy with that at the start, but I think, you know, not having walkways to get us over to the side, just not having walking spaces, I'm not gonna call them sidewalk. But walking spaces with protected curbs, it's gonna be very dangerous.
So let me ask you this as a question. If I'm not mistaken, there's a, there's a new law about providing four feet of space for people on a bicycle. Right? And so if that is the case, as we make these changes in all of these drawings, is it a given that, that, that four feet of space will be? I mean, this is, this intersection, I'm not mistaken, is part of the Pan Mass challenge. So every August, you're gonna have, I don't know how many hundreds of bicycles, thousands coming through. So I would like to think that Medfield is not going to install something that would actually go against that because we didn't build it to have the right passing lanes.
Now, definitely if you have a designated bike lane on that road, it's a four-foot rule.
So if it's already there.
It's there, but only if it's a designated bike lane. This is never gonna happen.
And everybody begs on Harding. No, I don't, Harding North is a very, very popular place.
Right, and you still have to, you still have to give people four, the law says you have to give people six. It's not hard, you don't need the designated. The, the thing that I'm genuinely not, it's a matter of looking at the details. This will slow traffic down more than the current intersection does by a couple of things. Number one, if I'm following the design right, the, the lanes are narrow, so the idea of somebody sneaking around to the right. First off, I've never seen anybody try to pass on the right entering a roundabout or rotary. Nobody does that. They, it would be suicide. This is, so it was intent, in my, the reason I liked it, that they used, was that A, it's gonna slow things down, it could make it better. B, when you do the traffic studies for commuting traffic in the morning, oh, it's West Street to North Street. If you do the commute, if you do the traffic analysis at noon time, it's Harding Street down to north. So there's, the residential traffic flow is one thing for part of the day, the commuting traffic flow is the other. Rather than forcing control on one direction all the time with a stop sign, this is self-regulating. It sort of allows the flow to go in whatever direction most needs to go. But nothing in this, once they said it would fit, nothing in this, this configuration is taking up less collective footprint in terms of the total width of that intersection than what we have right now. So the things you're worried about, you've got the pinch point, make sure you know where the sidewalks are, that's fair. But that right now, if I understand the diagram, is showing you where the road is right now, that dash line. So that's not where the sidewalk is or the non-sidewalk is even now. This is actually giving more space. And I think with roundabouts, there certainly are more constructed crosswalks, so it's not like, hey, you're on your own.
Maybe just a quick visual to Gus's point, three, three sides of this. The, the dash line here, the existing edge of pavement is, is roughly here. So essentially, this bump out is, is hitting the current edge of pavement, you know, within a foot or so. Existing pavement here is, is this gray line here. And here's the new one. So for these two corners, you know, this is holding in, it's, it's bumping in from where it is. This is pretty significantly bumping in. And the area where it is bumping out in turn, the, the existing edge of pavement is roughly in kind of where the middle of the proposed lane would be. So in the, in the lawn area over here, this is the only portion that is bumping up for just about what I'm asserting here. The rest of this, small section down here, the rest of that is contained within the current limits of.
It sure looks like a fifty-one radius.
Go ahead, Gus, if you're gonna ask questions, just keep people humble.
Yeah, it's about, it's a hundred and ten across.
I just want to close, close my part of this. And I'm sorry, I'm taking time. I, I'm not, I, I get it, you guys feel the rotary is the best overall. But I cannot believe we would vote on designs without having pedestrian safety incorporated into those designs. I do not like the fact that I'm hearing you want to vote on something and the pedestrian safety will come later.
The only thing I want to say about those, to all purposes, we're here today and the pedestrian is not right, right? And we, I mean, that, I, if you want to bike or run and you hit the pinch point that Jeff just commented, that we're not really improving, we're not making it better, we're not making it worse. It is what it is right now, right? And it is not right. But you guys, all the people out there knew exactly what was there, right?
No, it was not like that ten, fifteen, twenty.
It wasn't, the design was the same, the traffic flow maybe.
The traffic was not.
And we all know that. That's, that's, yeah. But more, all these towns have been built in Medfield.
Can I clarify one thing? We're voting on an option. We're not voting on a design. But they're, we don't want them to design three intersections or four intersections, or we're gonna throw three designs away. We need to know what the best option would be, and then they're gonna come in with a design.
Can we look at this right now?
Why are we looking at the rotor? I mean, there seems to be a lot of pushback on the rotary.
No, I think people like the rotor, the roundabout, but what they're concerned is, is how are we making it so that people can walk and, and access? Right? So right now, anyone living on Harding coming towards north, if they have to cross the road to get to the sidewalk that's there right now. Right? It, it is a very narrow road, especially with people, if they're leaving town, they're going Harding and cutting on West. It is really dangerous if you're biking or walking right now, because there's a lot of traffic coming with, with blind curves and going at a pretty, it's forty miles an hour on Harding, as you're in the West Street area. So this, the one thing I do see it doing is it's going to force people to slow down, right? If you're coming from Harding to center of town, you're gonna be forced to slow down. If you're leaving Harding, heading up towards, leaving Harding, leaving town, you're gonna slow down. So we are slowing the traffic down. I, I get what everyone's saying about the pedestrian traffic. We're not making it any worse, we're just not making it better. And I know people want to make it better. What's that?
Well, we haven't, we haven't looked at.
Yeah, and that's what Gus is getting at.
Back to the other, there were three, there were three options. So can we go back to the other? Well, I don't know, of that rotary.
There is only one road, there's only one that's not for roundabouts.
There's only one rotary, but there were two other options.
But there are stop signs. There's stop signs that.
But I'm just saying, like, can we just look at those and see if there's an opportunity for these pedestrian crossings that the neighbors are asking for? That's all I'm suggesting.
The only scary part there is, so Harding now, if you're coming from Harding, going to North Street to head to town, there's no reason to slow down. There's, you're.
I, I'm just asking the traffic, I'm just asking the traffic, the traffic guy.
My, I mean, the option three would probably be the simplest crossing standpoint, where you're eliminating anything. This one, where, where you've eliminated anything in the middle of it.
So that's what we have today, except for you've removed the island. So instead of when people hit North Street and Harding, you don't have that yield and just cut on to, to Harding. You have to stop. This is one lane, one stop sign. And that, so you've removed the chaos we saw that night when we were doing the walk around. And you've removed the, what Gus and I hate, which is that painted line that, that kind of infers you're supposed to be going right, but you know you're going left because Harding has a right of way. You've just cleaned up that line of sight.
Correct.
You've still created a lot of backup on North Street.
They fixed the curved line.
Yeah, well, that, that, the cheapest still have ever come up. But, so that, that's another option to look at right there, is you're not having any stop on Harding whatsoever. It's what we have today. It's just North Street is narrowing at the stop sign.
Yeah.
And my further, sorry, my further question is, this option is less expensive than the other, the rotary, right? Are there improvements to be made here for prompting, like, that could get us to a place where people feel safer pedestrian route? I mean, are there things we could do?
So there's a couple of negatives that come with this option and the other, other option that tees up Harding and.
Harding into north, in that the side street, which is the one that, the only one that will stop, is gonna incur a lot more delay. The main street, which is the street that doesn't have the stop, is gonna be traveling at full speed. So pedestrian crossings under that condition are gonna be difficult and maybe unsafe compared to, say, the roundabout. That's my main concern is pedestrian safety. These, these T intersections is gonna have one road that's going full speed.
The other thing I'd point out on that way, this is certainly simple, but right now, the way that intersection is, people that want to go north on Harding come out of one entrance, people want to go south on Harding, come out the other, you're, this is, if you're coming in from north. This one's putting all of them into a single outlet, which is gonna actually intensify the congestion there. Our, during commuting hours, the desperation of the people who want to turn right to get up to West Street.
So then my concern there is whoever lives on school and right, that's just gonna be the cut through, right? It's, it's, it's bad, but it's not bad now, but it will be really bad later. And so people are gonna be forced to go to other roads, which, we're, we're not trying. Certain roads in this town were never built for a lot of traffic, and I would argue that school and right are absolutely not roads that were designed to be main access roads. People find them because of Google Maps, but they're not, the, the heavy traffic should not be on there.
Can I just clarify a few things on the roundabout? You can go back to there. Just, there's a lot of talk of different components of it. And I know people aren't always used to looking at plans as black and white to you, but to me, I see all the islands and, and things like that. So I just want, I just want to clarify a few things. So this is being designed as a single lane roundabout. So that's single lane on every approach in a single circulating lane. The donut in the middle, that smaller circle in the middle will be a raised island, raised landscape island. The outer ring is what we call a truck apron. So that would be a different material, like a cobblestone or a stamped concrete or brick, or whatever it may be. It's not something that would be comfortable for a passenger car to just say, yeah, I'm just gonna go over it. It's, it's strictly meant for what we call trailer drag. So when a truck goes around it, the truck can make that turn with its cab, but the trailer might drag a little behind it. So the back wheels of a, a trailer might go over that cobblestone area. So that's how we accommodate larger vehicles without blowing up the intersection into a huge swath of pavement. Each of those approaches will be yield control. There's nobody that just can go through here uncontrolled. There's dash lines that sort of form the circle around there. So all vehicles are under yield control. And the vehicles within the roundabout have the right of way. So everybody coming into the roundabout has to yield to the people that are traveling in the circle. Like you said earlier, it, you know, we want to try and have people come into the roundabout perpendicular, and then they get deflected so that they go around the, the roundabout. That happens at about fifteen miles an hour maximum usually. So that's why we see such a significant improvement in safety because it reduces the amount of crashes and it significantly reduces the severity of crashes between vehicles and pedestrians. Each of those little delta islands there you see on, on each approach, those are raised islands. And, and when this would be designed for pedestrian accommodations, that would be a pedestrian refuge island. So you would cross from one corner into the island and then cross to the other corner. So just. There would be crosswalks. To, yeah. And I just want to point out, this is what we call a conceptual design. This is not a final design. This is not what would be, be built. This is to show the option of a roundabout and show how it would work, how it would fit. But this is by no means the final design. Understood, but there's no existing sidewalks that connect them to. So right now, we're just sort of proving the concept. And that would be part of the design as it advances.
Rob?
Rob Tatro, twelve West Street. So I don't know if anyone's had a chance to go to Sherburne yet, but right next to Sherburne Library, they just installed a, a new, a brand new rotary. It's about exact same size as this one that's proposed. And if you ask any resident of Sherburne that has to go through that rotary, it has vastly improved the safety of that intersection. That intersection was a four-way intersection, and people trying to get across that right of way had blind curves coming up both sides. It was the cause of many accidents. And I don't know if anyone's had a chance to drive it, but how the traffic flows so smoothly and so slowly through that intersection, it's just a beautiful thing. Go drive it sometime. It's, it's great. Then, and, and it has crosswalks at all four of those, at all four of those access points. I'm not sure, I think there's a sidewalk on one side of the rotary, but there's crosswalks on all four aspects of it. And then secondly, I'm a bicycle commuter. I ride my bike to school most days, other than these cold snaps. So I go from twelve West Street to Winter Street to Pine Street. I take Pine Street all the way to Central, and then I'm on Central Ave all the way into Needham. That's the most dangerous part of my ride every morning. And it's, and people will say, Rob, Central Street, it's, it's gotta be worse than that. No, that's the worst part of my.
Right, because I've got people coming behind me, want to get around me, people who don't want to let me turn through that rotary. And I'm on a bicycle and they've got two, two-ton cars. So by far, this, I would, I would welcome the extra ride around that corner because I know I could make it safely. that corner because I know I can make it safely. I do want to say, because I, I get that the money has to be used, and we're all talking about sidewalks that aren't going to happen, I hope that the, or, or aren't going to happen now, I hope that however this is set up with wetlands and how much limited space there is, that it doesn't preclude in the future so, something that whoever we, whoever can come up with the money or how we can do it can make it safer, because it's a great plan, it's going to slow down traffic, but there is a, there's a long-term problem with sidewalks that.
But to be clear, it's not going to interfere with the sidewalk that's already there up against the wood line.
But since Harding didn't have any, and did you take into consideration?
I hate to do this, but you gotta, and then I'm going to address some of the people that have asked questions here.
Because I really appreciate this, and I think this is, I'm glad we're addressing this, but are you taking into consideration the going in and out of driveways so close to this with trucks and landscapers and, you know, buses and kids outside, is that part? I know it will slow it down, but if people are stopping and trying to park their car on that street, is that part of that configuration?
Park on, on which street?
On Harding Street.
On the street itself?
Yeah.
Are they, are people doing that now?
Yep. Landscape truck, right, you know, all of that land.
Oh, yeah.
Because they can't pull into the corner, they can't pull into your driveway, because you can't get out easily.
Well, they won't be able to if they're literally blocking traffic going, I mean, it's going to, it's going to come down, that may impact them, but I've seen around, Metacom it's pretty narrow, especially before and after school. I've seen landscape trucks for the house at the corner of, the corner of South and, in Metacom, it go down the street, they go out on South Street, I think they're going to end up having to go somewhere else, but again, I think when Jeff and, um, sorry, that's my brother's name, I should have that. That, you know, that, we're seeing, like, I would like to say, in light number two pencil, they've got to go back and do more, but they only want to do that when they realize that they have our support. Right. Um, can I just, I have a couple of questions here online.
Just a quick.
Oh, go ahead.
You talk about the wetlands all the time, tell you, what boundaries are you setting between the, whatever you're constructing and the, and the wetlands? What are you using for a boundary? Foot, footage-wise?
Uh, so this, uh, just for context, here, here's our wetland boundary, this line over here, this dark offset here is 50 feet from that wetland boundary, um, so part of that 50-foot no build zone. This line out here is 100, so it was roughly about 70, 75 feet from the edge of.
All right, so you're going to have to go to ConCon then?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, just wanted to check.
Yes, all right.
Thank you.
Um, I got a couple of questions here, I've got Dan Maderos, how certain are you that the roundabout will not encroach on 190 North Street? Does anyone know where 190 North Street is?
Yeah. Sorry. So, this one right here. Okay. So it's that big white one on the corner with the barn?
So, so their driveway would in theory be, would you do a, a roundabout within some?
They don't.
Their driveway's on the other street.
Their driveway's just in the barn, they don't use it very often, their landscape trucks stuff, their, their driveway's over here, but this, this land you're taking here is all his, I think that's what he's at.
There's a barn there.
Yeah, that's the barn.
I don't know, they're, they're not taking anything, they're not taking, we're actually giving, they're, they're.
Sorry, yes, sorry.
That's all right, I just don't want him to be listening at home going, oh, wait a minute.
The green picture's all easier.
Um, so, then, uh, will there be any sidewalks as part of this plan? I think Russell Morris, we've definitely beat that one to death. A roundabout will increase the problems, I think we're hearing the conversation that that's, that not, we're not hearing that, it's actually going to be safer. No sidewalks is a failure in planning, uh, you do not need a dedicated bike lane, you need sidewalks, hosp, this is all from Russell Morris. Hospital to Harding must have a stop sign, as that is the most risk at, that is, that is the most at risk at this time. Blind curve and cars flying around that turn, and then last but not least, large trucks also need to be eliminated outside of local deliveries, they need to stay on 27.
The only comment I'd have in response to all those is that part of, certainly my thinking and our thinking around having hospital T with Harding, Russell Morris, right on the corner of Harding and Hospital next to you, has kids, and it's a blind corner right now, so by going to a T, suddenly he's in a much, his kids are in a much safer position. We all are in a safer position because you don't have the blind corners, but actually that was a factor, certainly in my thinking, but mainly, maybe yours too Pete, because we live closer there, so we're sensitive to that. Um, that's exactly what we think that that option up there will accomplish.
Okay. All right, so we're good with questions, comments from the audience? All right, I would just read it was online. So our charter tonight is to decide do we want to vote on each intersection to give VHB the ability to move forward, to go towards more final design.
At the risk of running, creating chaos here, I'm going to, we've got a bunch of people who came, who provided a lot of useful information, valuable insight, I think we tried to make the case that the options we're favoring are actually the options that will work for the best for your concerns, leaving aside that we haven't come up with full, you haven't gotten the full answer on crosswalks or any other pedestrian issues at this stage of the game, I think what we're saying is, nothing that we're talking about here to choose that was the best option is going to make any of that worse, and I think it's fair to say when we get to the more detailed design, certainly things like crosswalk planning is going to be an easy answer, other things like sidewalk planning is going to be a more complicated issue. It's outside the scope of this specific focus for redesigning the intersection, that doesn't mean it's outside of our attention span for ongoing conversations on that. I would be inclined to, I haven't changed my position on what I think the best options are, so I would like to be able to vote, but I'm willing to listen to the group, if you think that we really need to have another one of these to kind of have the same conversation even longer, at least listen to it. But personally, I would like to do the vote tonight, uh, I think, you know, recognizing there are going to be continuing conversations about the devil being in the details and what can you do this, or can you do that? Is that a reasonable? Okay, okay.
Abby's like. And you know what, it's important, it's important that, you know, we do keep moving this along, because then we can get more money, and you never know. If they get a windfall, we might go begging them for sidewalk money, but right now, they got to get what they need just to.
I do have one question though, I still.
Do you need to be a favor of the mic, otherwise like.
I'm unclear about the fourth option with the hospital Harding, because that wasn't on the original, so that must have come up.
So 2A, when we met, met two weeks ago, and we were looking at that, Gus brought up the idea of the original three, three-way stop, it was still very blind. We were trying to make, to what Matt has talked about, like, safety and clear view, you have a better vision now with the stop sign being pulled up, because you can look clearly to the left, clearly to the left, to the right, um, and see what's happening. Before you were set back, and it, like, we were, even Gus brought up, the closer you bring the stop signs together, it's a lot easier to go through that, letting cars go versus playing like, and beat that guy.
I, I suggested that third stop sign on Nor, on Harding North, specifically thinking that that would be what, if you're going to do a T with hospital like that, you got to have means for the people in hospital to get out, so that's kind of what, I'm the, all the things being equal for me, living north of there, I'd rather not have, I'd rather be able to zip through like I do right now, uh, but I didn't think that was the right answer for the intersection.
So I do need to leave, I just really wanted to say thank you for taking the time to listening to us and sending out the flyers, because I know I had asked for the personal interaction a little while ago, um, and I look forward to continued conversations. So I just want to say how much we appreciate.
Thanks for coming.
You're here for, thank you.
Yes, oh, yeah, I also wanted to say thank you, um, for, for hearing us. I, I guess the decision on do we vote now, for me, it's, it sort of depends, and it depends on whether we'll be able to stay connected, the devil is in the details on the specific design, if it is rotary, that we can be part of that conversation about what that rotary looks like and feels like and what gets put in place to make it as safe as possible, that's important to us.
So I'm going to ask a silly question, do you have all the contacts for everyone that was here tonight?
We sent it out by, um, by snail mail.
Okay, so my biggest concern is, I want to make sure that we know who's here so that, because I, I'd love to tell you, I remember everybody's name and address, but I don't, um, but if you make sure that you've shared that as we move forward, you guys are the ones that are going to be impacted, right? So we are concerned, and, and, you know, we're trying to make everybody happy, but we know in life that's not the reality, but the one thing I will, and I'm going to put my eyeballs here on Jeff and Matt, you heard what the absolute number one concern was tonight, right? So as you're looking at these designs, you know, we can't afford sidewalks right now, but we would love to be able to afford them in the future, so as this is being laid out and you have to meet with the Conservation Commission and you're asking to be able to shift things, it's all going to be about not just what we may build in the next year, but what we may try to do in the next 36 to 48 months. So, as long as you guys are hearing that, because if you come back and we've ignored that, then these guys have a right to go with what you didn't even hear us.
Yep, understood.
Two second question, Chris Potts, um, I think it was Eileen you had asked this, about the sequence, to address the sequencing, so would these all be constructed all at once or would they be sequenced?
Good follow-up, thanks. What would, how do you guys normally do that, Jeff?
I can, uh.
So like, so if we all agree on these three intersections, how would you go about doing that? All three at once, one more pertinent than the other?
I don't think we, we know yet, so what we'll do is, we're going to have VHB, we'll advance the design, we'll come back and show you the progress, we will be going through the permitting with Conservation Commission and, I don't know what other groups, but, um, yeah, and then at that, at the time when we go out to bid, we'll be soliciting bids from general contractors who will give us, you know, we're not the general contractor, so maybe there's a way they work through them, or we just don't have enough information.
In your experience, you don't typically see, especially the way it would impact flow of that road, not all done at once, is that just your experience, or there's no experience?
I don't have that much experience doing off-site intersections, so, I, I'm.
The, all three at once would effectively shut down Harding Street.
Yeah, I can't imagine.
For half a mile, with people living on it.
When you build with, situations, you generally space it out.
Okay. So we're going to apply logic, I'm going to, I'm going to take this conversation, we're going to try to apply logic and we're not going to try to wreak havoc.
Either way, there will be some level of traffic management plans to, to construct that and make sure that's vetted, yeah, regardless.
So the det, the detour down White Street wouldn't take more than three months for the rotary, roundabout, right?
And you'd like to keep it that way?
Right.
All right. All right, so on that note, do I have a motion to approve the, the intersections and we'll vote one by one?
One at a time, yeah, why don't we do it that way?
So let's start with Hospital and Harding, is that someone that we started with first?
So Hospital and Harding, I move that we approve option 2A.
Second?
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Next one is.
Why don't we move to Weston Harding?
Yeah, Weston Harding, we are, it was option two, right? I just want to make sure I got the right. Harding West, option two, uh, so I move that we approve option two for the reconstruction of the Harding West Street intersection.
Second?
Second? Did you just say second?
I did.
All those in favor?
Aye. And, yes, and I move that we approve, I want to make sure I got the right one here, but I think I did.
Option two.
Option two of the Harding North Street intersection involving the construction of the roundabout.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Given the green light, so at least go to the next stage here, so we can come back and see something a little more detailed. What, roughly, what's your turnaround on that, turnaround timeline, I should say?
I would, yeah, I'd say about two months for us to take, next design level.
Flowers.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Right, so, uh, discussion items, potential vote, fiscal 2026 operating budget.
Yep, I was just going to give you a brief update, uh, actually Frank, if you can just bring that up.
Good day, thanks for coming.
You have us 12, um, 12, 14, 16, Harding, that whole group down, right?
Did you get a, did you get a letter?
We did.
Okay. Yeah, so we'll just do the same thing, we did, I think we did 325 feet around everything.
Whoops.
Yeah, we'll do the exact same thing.
Thanks for coming.
And I email them on the website, feel free to email me and I'll just, because I have Renee as well, if I know when it's coming up, I'll shoot you guys an email and you can keep the neighborhood involved as well. Yeah, yeah, just shoot me an email.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, just shoot me an email.
Okay, uh, thanks for coming, thanks.
Thank you so much.
No, I can't talk now.
Right. Now on Medfield, 2026. So I just want to give you a quick update on where we are in our budget process.
Oh, good, because next slide, budget, and it's like, so I'm looking for a book or a large thing, it's, no, it's not in here.
Nobody, no, we're still, we're still working. So as you know, this is year two of the new warrant committee, um, budget process, where we basically essentially have a revenue consensus hearing, uh, before we even begin meeting with the department heads, um, after doing the, the revenue and fixed cost forecast, uh, the warrant committee is recommending the 75-25 revenue split again this year between schools and town. Uh, the initial guidance was given in the fall, and the goal of this guidance is to make sure from the onset that we are providing, um, a proposition, Proposition 2 and a half compliant budget, so, next slide. So just to give you, I had handed this out a couple of months ago when we first did the initial, just always helpful to see, so we anticipate, uh, our revenue forecast was $73,944,205. We take out what the fixed cost forecast is, and I just want to make sure everybody's clear that when we talk about fixed cost forecast, we are estimating what those fixed costs are. So we actually won't find out until we're at, um, annual meeting slash connect 351 this week, we will have a better idea of what our health insurance costs are, I'm anticipating that the governor and lieutenant governor who are speaking on Friday will announce what the state aid number is, so you might see Frank and I running out the back of the room to work on this budget worksheet. So these are all estimates of our first, uh, fixed costs, so basically bottom line.
Capital budget?
Hmm?
Where's the capital budget?
That's voted separately outside of this. This is just operating budget, capital budget and municipal building stabilization are outside because they're funded from the special stabilization funds.
So that, so the, that's not counted in the revenue here?
No.
I'm just, I'm doing accounting thing here, so all of the capital stuff, in terms of sources of capital and expenditure capital in this picture is all outside.
Yep.
Okay?
Yep. Um, so looking at that fixed cost forecast, then brought us down to the revenue available, um, for this year's budget is a little over $2 million, that, uh, is divided out between the school and the town, as I said, the 75-25, um, and it left the town with, uh, an additional $515,254, uh, for the fiscal year 26 budget. Okay, so our initial town budget, we are working on that, you cannot see it, um, we have met with all the department heads, uh, we just finished up with conservation last week, I think we have one more before the end of this week. What my initial budget looks like and what it includes for you is the funding for the proposed class and compensation plan. It includes a 2% cost of living increase for non-union personnel, it includes the new fire collective bargaining agreement, it includes any of the safer grant costs that Chief Carrico, uh, discussed with us, um, it includes a new intermunicipal, uh, agreement for the veterans agent, which is on the agenda this evening. It also includes full funding for a full-time conservation agent and a Parks and Recreation Assistant Director. If you'll recall, last year, we did not have the funding to do full years, so we started them on January first. It also includes the first year of our open gov implementation. This is the first full operating year. The prior year fiscal year twenty-five was paid out of capital budget, and that was to get the program started. We're still working on that, but we still will incur the first year implementation costs.
So what's the bulk part about that? Is that, it's not a, for just the annual implementation, that wasn't a big?
It's fifty-five thousand a year, yep. And then we have some funds set aside for ground maintenance. As you're aware, Parks and Recreation has announced that they will no longer be maintaining the town properties, which are Dwight Derby, Library, Town, I'm gonna forget one of them, Council on Aging, Meeting House, Pond, Townhouse. So we need to... Baxter, no, right now, they still have Baxter Park. They don't have, believe they have the staffing with Brian leaving. They don't have the staffing in order to do what I call the municipal grounds maintenance. When we get to the next slide, you're gonna see we also don't have the money to do what the Collins Center recommended, which was a full grounds division with under the DPW. So right now, we have a small amount of funds set aside. We've asked for a couple of landscaping contractors in town to give us an estimate of what we're talking about. We will also be assuming four of the spots at the state hospital that will have to continue to landscape even after Trinity takes over, and that's the backfield, the green arboretum. So we do, we do have some maintenance at the state hospital as well.
Vine Lake is still separate, that's.
Separate, that's covered under, under cemetery. Okay, and we also are seeing a substantial increase in our natural gas costs overall in our budgets.
We all wish.
Yeah.
We need to get the Energy Committee chair in.
So what's not included in the budget that we wanted to include? And that's not to say we may get great news from the governor and lieutenant governor on Friday, and we may be able to incorporate some of this if the guidance does change for the schools in the town. But right now, we can't fund the new staffing to develop the full DPW grounds division. We're about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars short on that. We did deny a request for the Council on Aging for a receptionist. We asked them to continue to use the senior tax workoff for that. This budget, as we're working, does not include a managerial merit. We were unable to increase the funding, it was about a thousand dollars for library materials. We had been planning on a floating town clerk, not town clerk, sorry, not, Marion is not floating. An actual floating clerk for the townhouse departments. Because we run so lean, we have some departments, if somebody goes away for a week, we essentially shut that department down. Board of Health is a perfect example of that. We envision having a halftime clerk within the town hall that can cover those departments. You know, three of us are gonna be at a conference this week, just somebody who can, who can do that. Unfortunately, it's not gonna work for us this year. And we did not include a day captain or a deputy chief for the fire department, which was in Chief Carrico's budget. So as of right now, that's not included. So as I said, the warrant committee will continue to review these budgets. We were hoping for some updated budget, budget guidance if there's additional revenue, and the key dates for that will be on the twenty-second, when we see Governor Haley's budget. February eleventh is the school budget review. We should mid-February have our health insurance update. Right now, we're carrying, I believe it's a ten percent increase, and we have been cautioned it could go slightly higher than that. And then just to put on your calendar, April first is the warrant hearing. I know it is April Fool's Day, and May fifth is the town meeting. So by February third at our next meeting, I will have a budget worksheet for you that better reflects all of these. We just still have so many moving pieces. I didn't wanna give you anything until I've had a chance to talk to the department heads of how we're gonna actually divide that revenue up.
Very helpful, thank you.
You're welcome. So this is basically what we've been working on solid since about mid-November. And when I say we, I mean Frank. So that's where we are on that. We'll, you know, I'll be with all of you on Friday, and hopefully we get some really good news and get some great news on our, our insurance. We did see an increase that we did not anticipate in our property insurance, and that is based solely on our claims in the last two years. Losing the modular at Dale Street was a significant cost to us, and we've had a couple other smaller claims. We were denied for the FAFF center. They said it is the reasons why we had to close on our normal wear and tear that should have been, been addressed, so. But they are working with us on some other items as well, so. They've been, they've been very good to us. Even with the denial, they've been trying to help us find some different ways around.
Chris, what was the modular at Dale that you mentioned?
One of the classrooms had some mold damage earlier this year. So we had to, we had to file an insurance claim, and I think it was seventy-eight thousand?
Somewhere around there.
Yeah, it was a seventy-eight thousand dollar claim in the modular, so anytime we make a claim like that, it's gonna go against our experience, so.
Usually Maya gives us the health insurance increase on MMA meeting.
They haven't done that the last two years. We've really been pushing them to do that. They give us a range, but, and they gave us a range back in October, and I, we really are just pushing them for the actual, the actual percentage increase would be really helpful to us.
Absolutely.
So I will, I will keep you posted, and we will have budget worksheets for you at the next meeting. The only thing I wanna mention is what the chief talked to you, is that we are most likely going to pull the, the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit until I can give her more time to do more research and more discussions with our residents before we start doing that.
If we were to do that, we, I didn't think that we could impact twenty-seven to one oh nine, so sorry.
No, those would, those would stay. It's, it's twenty-five unless otherwise posted. So you actually don't have to move it to the, the entire town to that. You can have different areas.
It's self-free, your nebo's, whatever, that can all, but you can't touch the roads, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
One oh nine is, is not a state highway anyway. It's just a section of twenty-seven.
But we wouldn't be putting a twenty-five mile an hour limit on that.
No, I was just, but I was just pointing that out.
Yeah.
All right, so. So twenty-seven?
Is, is that the twelve acres?
That is the twelve acres, yep.
Okay, I, I just would point out again that whenever that twelve acres gets identified or whatever, that there's some historic items on a national historic register that are over in parcel B. Just, just keep that in mind.
The other point, I'm guessing the exact wording of this article, when it says issuing an RFP for a parks and rec facility, that...
Yeah, the wording will change. And, and you actually, Chris and I actually had this conversation last week. You don't need authorization to issue an RFP, you just need the authorization for the disposition. I was just trying to encompass everything so people would know, just a heads up for what we were looking at.
Okay.
Move to action items, vote on the letter of support for the town application for the MassSave.
No, we had been working with Susan McPhee and the Energy Committee on this. As you know, we've been trying for several years to get an energy manager position funded within the town. We did have an earmark several years ago that we thought would kickstart the position, and then with the nine C cuts, and I think they gave us about four months to spend it. It was impossible to hire somebody and spend that money within the four months. We ended up doing energy audits, which proved to be very helpful, both for the twenty-year capital plan and the Energy Committee. This is a new MassSave municipal energy manager grant program, so it was identified as something we might want to apply for.
That's something I'm signing.
Yeah, but I think, I think you have some questions, I'm guessing.
I have a couple, not, not argumentative questions, just to understand. So in the second paragraph, it says, "We've been working successfully with Spark Energy Conservation over the past several years and plan to continue this relationship with the addition of a part-time person working with Spark and dedicated solely to the town of Medfield." My question was, is this a part-town, part-time town employee? Is it a contracted town resource, or is it part-time funding of a Spark Energy employee?
It will be a contracted person hired through Spark Energy dedicated to the town.
Sort of a hybrid of two. It's not, and the reason I was really asking is, are we adding a town employee? And the answer is no.
We are not. We, we do have to, implying for the grant, they want to make sure at the end of the three years, because it's funded for three years, that we would, if we found the position to be useful, that we would try and fund the position within the town, which is what we've said all along. It gives us three years to transition into it.
Okay. That, that's fine. And, and therefore, with the, the part-time energy manager, the extra hand was reporting, is that person reporting to the facilities manager, but actually, this is a contracted person working with Spark?
Working with Spark. The way Susan and I have said it is they will report directly to me and be working through her company.
Okay. And this gets more philosophical, so recognizing that this, I think, isn't ever, this is the ever-source grant. So I understand why energy would be the focus, but the, on the second page first bullet, "Plan projects for next green communities grants in the coming years with emphasis on electrification." And I said, "Why are we only emphasizing this? Is it because this is an ever-source grant, or is this saying this is our strategy?" And where I'm coming from is, first off, green communities, I think, has got a broader scope than merely electrification, and the net zero goal has more scope than pure electrification. And so the fact that this is calling out is the emphasis is there. I'm asking the question, why? And that's partly because I've asked the question about other things like carbon sequestration, and it's pretty much not gotten any answers. So if people say, "No, our whole strategy is just electrification..."
I don't, I don't think so, because I, we talked to Susan and asked her to give us some examples of where this would go above and beyond the work that, that Spark is doing. And we envision this to be a quote-unquote boots-on-the-ground in Medfield for community outreach for residential heat pumps, solar programs, expansion of our EV programs, our MassSave Main Street for our small businesses, Medfield Day.
Okay.
So I think there's, I think there are additional things that we're going to do. One of the things is a good example is the EECBG grant that we did this year for the windows. I know I had my staff spending a significant amount of time working on something that was way outside their comfort zone. It would be helpful to have somebody in to kind of streamline that for, for them.
And then the other, the related question, I was saying, "What's the relationship between this and the full scope of green communities?" And my sensitivity is that some of this, some of the stuff that is pushed in the, in the direction of energy and decarbonization is not consistent with environmentalism. And so I'm sensitive to that, but okay, I got that.
Yep.
Ready?
I am ready.
I move that we sign the, that we authorize the chair, this one's just you. Okay, that we authorize the chair to sign the letter of support for the town's application for the MassSave Energy Manager Grant Program.
Second?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Vote to sign the intermunicipal agreement to accept Sherburne into the Veterans District with Medfield and Walpole.
So this is expanding our current district. Currently, it is just Walpole and Medfield, and Sherburne expressed an interest in joining that, and Walpole has redesigned the program and shifted the cost. This will result in about a nine thousand dollar increase for us. But I also think it gives Ian, who is our veteran service agent, who is tremendous, some administrative help to manage all three towns. So I think it'll also provide a better service to our veterans.
I move that, Pete's good, yeah. I move that we sign the intermunicipal agreement to accept Sherburne into the Veterans District with Medfield and Walpole.
Second?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Vote to sign facilities contracts, AECOM for window replacement at the town hall for seventy thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars and ninety cents.
So my question there is, we already approved this on the twelve seventeen meeting.
You, you approved the grant application? Now this is the contract to actually do the work?
Yes.
Okay.
Pete, any questions on that?
No.
Ready?
Yep.
I move that we sign the AECOM contract for window replacements at the town hall in the amount of seventy thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars and ninety cents.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right, and then the Talte Town Hall flooring replacement, eighty-three thousand dollars and fifty dollars.
Five years in the making. We are replacing the carpet after twenty-eight years at the town hall.
Looks, doesn't look too bad though, I gotta tell you.
Okay.
Was this, this is the one that you and I were talking about at the last meeting? Is this the one that you said, you guys, you and Ben went round and round with them on the final?
No, that was the window one.
Oh, it was the window, okay.
There's, there's some, after twenty-eight years.
I read, I read the floor. I don't see too much unusual about this.
No, the window one. So, yeah, that's probably the best improvement in the whole thing.
Ready?
Yep.
I move that we approve the Talte Town Hall flooring replacement in the amount of eighty-three thousand fifty dollars to be completed by February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Second?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Vote to sign the financial management policies and objectives as revised in twenty twenty-four.
The only question I had, Pete, we deferred this from our last meeting because you had had comments, and when I looked at the new thing, I don't know what the changes were. Were the comments you made, were they some standard policy changes that you wanted, or was it more just word, it was word?
It was just more wording changes, and, and I don't know if they, they never sent me a copy of it, so I don't know if Steve included them or not.
I believe he did.
He did.
Yeah, we met them after you did, and I believe he included yours.
The hard part was, in reviewing it, having already done all this stuff upfront, suddenly there's no other clean copy in our packet. It's like, no, I'm not gonna do a page-by-page, word-by-word comparison to look for stuff, but if it was strictly editorial kind of stuff, that doesn't matter. Ready? I move that we vote to sign the financial management policies and objectives as revised in twenty twenty-four.
Oh, now it's...
Plus January twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, you're signing them twenty twenty-five, so I, yeah.
So, so is it gonna be dated twenty twenty? Okay, right now, it's, the, the thing we got said, I think, December, December seventeenth. So anyway, the, the most recent, the recently revised version of the financial policies.
Second?
I did, second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Vote to increase the municipal building capital, capital stabilization fund override by two and a half percent to one million one hundred eighty-eight thousand six hundred eighty-four for fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Quick trivia question for you, Christine. How much are we pulling out of that fund for FY twenty-six?
For FY twenty-six, it was one point five.
Still pulling more out than we're putting in?
Yes, and based on both our financial policies and what we anticipate for next year, we're always holding about a year's worth in anticipation for the next year. So we, at the end of this year, we should, we'll have the money available to fund next year.
Okay.
Yep.
I move that we increase the municipal buildings' capital stabilization fund override by two and a half percent to one million one hundred eighty-eight thousand six hundred eighty-four dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Second?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Vote to authorize Medfield Outreach to sign the memorandum of understanding with the University of Massachusetts Lowell through its Zuckerberg College of Health Sciences to establish an educational relationship, provide experiential learning opportunities for students enrolled in the college's health-related programs.
And believe it or not, Kathy McDonald is still with us. She is here if you have any questions.
I have, I have one question.
Kathy, I'm promoting you to speak.
And can we kill the seven-question thing so?
I did, I just got rid of them.
Okay, great.
There, Kathy?
She is.
Yeah, the TV's just really quiet.
Hold on. Not yet.
One sec.
Go, 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 go.
Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Ah, we can hear you too.
Here's my quick question. We signed, this is another internship agreement, which is, sounds like a great thing. We signed one with Simmons College last summer. This, so this one is, is this an expansion, a replacement? And if it's an expansion, do you have capacity to handle two interns at the same time, or are you not doing that?
Okay, so let me answer that, thanks for asking, and I'm not trying to be, give me an option to, to appear in front of you. So I'm happy to, but I'm a black screen, not because I'm being difficult, so.
We believe it's really you. If you weren't an imposter, then we need your face, but we're, we're okay.
So this is a separate internship, so we're, we're thrilled that now this is the third academic institution that has approached us for learning opportunities. So we continue to sort of improve upon our reputation now with Boston College, Simmons, and now UMass Lowell, the former two, both BC and Simmons, for clinical opportunities, and this is for public health. So our ongoing dedication to prevention, social determinants of behavior is really landing, and people are seeing us as an opportunity to come learn as a very valuable placement. So this is for a master's of public health intern, and I predominantly see her working with prevention, also some of our opioid efforts. Also, when we rehire our public health nurse, this room should, should, shouldn't that be a match? It's not dependent upon it, but to do some carryover there. Addition, this, this opportunity allows us to have one to two projects that this master's-level student would contribute to our community that should benefit our residents in the domain of public health. So I see that is this reciprocity here, you know, I think there's the up curve, the learning curve, with starting with a new institution, but it's, it's, it's gonna be comparable to what we do with Simmons and BC. So we're, we're super excited for this. I've already had an informational interview with this young woman, and I think we've been lucky together.
Okay, great.
Sure is.
I'm good, you're good, Pete, you're good?
Yes.
I move that we authorize Medfield Outreach to sign the memorandum of understanding with the University of Massachusetts Lowell through its Zuckerberg College of Health Sciences to establish an educational relationship to provide experiential learning opportunities for students enrolled in the college's health-related programs.
Second?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Vote to authorize town administrator to sign the grant agreement with the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust to help finance the establishment of an asset management... to help finance the establishment of an asset management plan for the town sewer collection system for the amount of $150,000. Any questions on that? Any questions?
So.
Oh, sorry.
Thanks, Kathy.
Kathy, thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night, you guys.
So this is a $150,000 grant, and I wrote down town share 100,000. Is that right? 25,000 in kind?
Yeah. And this was.
I think that's in addition to the, I think it's 150 plus, 75 plus 25.
Yeah, and the 75,000 was included in the water and sewer capital last year. So they were anticipating applying for this money.
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
I move that we authorize town administrator to sign the grant agreement with the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust to help finance the establishment of an asset management plan for the town sewer collection system in the amount of $150,000.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Vote to sign the contract with Selberg Perkins Design, Inc., develop a signage and wayfinding master plan for the downtown area of the town of Medfield. So this is what we saw last.
You saw it, you, yeah, you awarded it to, to the firm, and then this is the contract for them to get started.
And Maria had sent this to me to review this afternoon. The only comment I had on it was that the company, the consultant had, the proposal was for $35,000 plus, plus expenses. And I suggested Maria's that we would be author, we should be authorizing this whole expenditure amount. So the total that Maria came back with is the next $2,500 in estimated expenses. So the actual total value, including expenses, because the ceiling on this is $37,500.
Pete, any questions?
Nope.
I have a copy, Chris, if you want.
All right, away.
Okay, I move that we sign the contract with Selberg Perkins Design, Inc., to develop a signage and wayfinding master plan for the downtown area of the town of Medfield to be completed by December 31st, 2025. Total ceiling value on the contract, $37,500.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
You may want to say $35,000 and $2,500 for expenses.
Okay.
Okay.
But it's still, it's still coming on the same contract, all right?
Yeah, but it was that. They were, they was, they came back with looking for expenses, and we talked about different ways of capping that.
Okay.
Do we care? At our level, do we even care? It's a, you know, the contract, the proposal says that, the contract says it's in accordance with the proposal. All we're doing is authorizing the expenditure.
Well, I mean, they're getting provided, paid per, the way you'd like to see it, for services as they perform them. So you want the services to, for the full $35,000.
Well, it's a time material, so it's a ceiling of $35,000. They don't need to use it. They don't, they don't get it. They're billing for the, they're billing for their time, the way it's written, it's a ceiling of $35,000. And, and.
That's going to be the, as I recall, that's going to be for all the projects. Yes, that's the ceiling, but that's what it's going to cost.
I don't know what that even means. It's either time materials contractor, it's a lump sum, not a lump sum. So I think we're just, I actually think we're having a contract semantics debate.
And it's 10/30.
Yeah.
So it, we wanted to highlight that we did just put a $2,500, $2,500 cap on expenses, which wasn't.
And I don't know why we're doing that. It's all, it's, it's in the document, it's in the contract.
Okay, okay.
I'm just saying, our, our function for approving this is approving a certain expenditure for money.
Okay. We did?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so meeting minutes, I think we've put back on here just to make sure that we.
Did you actually take that vote before I interrupted?
Meeting minutes, we did not approve a couple of meetings ago for May 28th. We have them back on there. I went in, made some changes based on literally reading closed caption and updating what was said.
And then Frank, on the 18th of December, sent out an email for the July 14th, unless I just missed that we approved it. It's, what do you have?
You know, I thought there was a second one.
The 714 sent out a 1218 email, which as far as I know, still needs to be approved. I only had minor edits. The May 28th, 2024, I don't even, I hardly had any edits, but I think Pete did, and I think he might have. So I'm good with both of them.
The July one, you know what it is? When I had Brittany, when I was updating this this week, and I realized there was nothing in meeting minutes? I thought there were two, but I wasn't sure. I knew May 28th, so the July one, we'll put on the next week.
So, yeah, so I.
Send out a December 18th.
Oh, I sent December 18th, December.
Yeah, that's what, remember I asked you about it at the last meeting? So, oh yeah, I forgot about that one.
Yeah. And when Brittany was putting it on, I'm like, I think there's two, but I'm not sure.
I didn't forget about it. So 7, so 714, we defer to the next.
Yep.
Okay. And I'm good with approving May 28th.
And did you, I don't know what you changed on the 28th. So the issue there was that I brought up the question about whether or not you left in the language about wanting traffic lights at Weston 27 as it stated in the minutes. And that's when you said you'd go back and look at them again. So did you change that?
Basically, literally, I edited the whole thing. I did closed caption, and I put, so what, what, what was said was literally put in the minutes. There was no fabricating, there was no, this is what I implied, this is what somebody thought they heard.
So it sounds like I need to go back and look at it now.
Yeah.
And I think, I forget whether it was May 28th or July 14th. The only thing I added to the edits that you guys did was that in the list of which select board members were present, Pete had left off. But he wasn't identified as being absent either. So basically, it was editorial in terms of the details.
Frank, can you send me the May 28 minutes after that Eileen has, because I don't know how to get them at this point.
It should be in the Google Share, right?
I can just reshare it. That way, make sure everyone has the same.
So I need to find it in.
Oh, yeah, I can just reshare it. That way, it'll be right at the top of your inbox, or it should be.
It comes in on email.
So I can go find that email then again.
Yeah, but I can, I can just resend it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll put that, defer that one.
That's fine. So we're, May 28th and December, oh no, July 14th.
July, right, 14th, 24.
Yeah, we only had one meeting in June and one meeting in July. All right, so then we have the town administrator updates.
So we'll have our, our full update coming out in the next couple of days, but I do have a couple of things I want to talk to you about tonight. It is a little bit of a heavy heart that I am announcing the retirement of Chief Carrico, affected March 2nd of 2025. As you all know, Chief Carrico began here seven years ago in May 2018, just as we began the successful transition from BLS to ALS ambulance service. And that successful transition is solely due to Bill Carrico. He took that program and ran with it. He has grown our ALS department with the numerous grants over the years, and finishing out his career this year with the Million Dollar Safer Grant. There's no better way to go out for him. He has been such an important part of my team. We are going to miss him tremendously. His spreadsheet knowledge, his, you know, he's just a giant teddy bear, that he can fool anybody he wants with that gruff exterior. But he has been so important to us and to this town, and we're very sad to see him go, but also very excited for him to spend more time with his family.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so we will miss him.
Yeah.
He does know that I'm telling you all of this tonight. I did ask him three times today to make sure it was okay. So he is aware. Everybody at the firehouse, at the station, has been notified, so everybody is aware.
Total bummer, but to spend time with his family, you don't get the time back.
No, well-deserved time with his family, so. Yep.
I have to say that he's the first senior level leader in the town that came in after I was first elected to the board of selectmen. There's a certain spot that Bill has in my heart, because he was, he was a guy who came in with ALS as, as we were getting through. ALS was the first kind of added extra assignment I had when I first became a selectman. And then he came in at the tail end of that, and.
Oh, definitely. Bummer.
I know, but that's it. That's really, there's nothing else I can say.
All right, all right, so let me just quickly review the next meeting dates. Next one will be February 4th and February 18th, March, we've got March 4th, March 18th. And then March 31st will be the annual town elections. April 1st, April 15th, and then we've got a placeholder for the 29th, which would be the meeting before the annual town meeting. And then we have our annual town meeting, May 5th. Yes, right, select board member reports.
I used my Martin Luther King Day to do my state ethics training and got that completed, got it over to Marion. She told me that, after I emailed it to her, that she gets it from the state, didn't need it from me. I also used the holiday to go to the Blake Middle School blood drive again this year and bumped into Nora, who likes to run it so much that she's continuing to rook on it, even though she's a senior in high school now. And her ma, I met her mom, too. Angel Run had a joint meeting with the Medfield Foundation. The Angel Run was, was a success this year in terms of fundraising. So that's good, more money for the families in need in Medfield. The Energy Committee had a meeting, and, let's see. Susan McPhee told us that the library's rooftop units are coming soon. The, she's working to get the Green Communities grant work closed out. The way the Green Communities work is that you can't apply for the new grant money unless you finish the work that you got awarded money for the last time. And so she's trying to get the, the work done by, I think it's around April 4th that the new applications go in. The Energy Committee jointly did the town report. We got actually some very helpful assistance from Fred Davis, former chair of the Energy Committee, to help us do that. Susan suggested that the next Green Communities grant, she said the townhouse chiller is, is old and really needs to get replaced. She also said that we could do the boiler at the high school, that there'd be a good return on investment on that. And she actually said there's a lot of things that, that, because we're likely to have to run the Dale Street School for a number of years, that there are probably some things that would get good return on investment there. Apparently, the heat just goes up through the ceilings. Emily Lowney talked about the fact that there's a lot of federal monies from that IRA. And she was wondering about whether or not we could do the school roofs. The school roofs are horribly expensive, millions of dollars. And so we're looking for ways to try to pay for some of this stuff. Emily, also Lowney, reported on the solar photovoltaics in town. The Blake is, was installed last year. It didn't do the canopy because of, of some wat, water issues, I think it was. Medfield State, Medfield High School one has not been approved yet, but they're targeting installation for the next summer. Hilly talked about her tom cap that she's been in charge of, and she wants to add a waste section to that. And that's pretty much the Energy Committee. And then the last thing was, oh, today I read the, the new water permit that we got from DEP, 30 pages long. And also looking forward to going to the MMA Annual Meeting, two days, Friday, Saturday, is coming, Sunday and Saturday, and that's it.
Already mentioned the Parks and Rec meeting that I listened to, how impressed I was with it. The next day, then I attend, I actually attended the Pine Street Canyon Valley 40B proposed project that Bob Barelli had. He had a public information session at the Public Safety Building, so I just went to listen. And it was an interesting conversation. I'm not sure where he's going to take the feedback and what he's going to do with it. But it was an interesting animated conversation. We'll leave it at that. And the good part about it was that I ran across a whole bunch of people that showed up for that meeting that I, I haven't seen in some cases in years, that just I haven't run across them. So in a funny sort of way, at the tail end of the meeting, it was great to catch up with some friends that I just haven't seen in a long time. At the end of that week, I met with Gene Migno and Pat Casey to talk about infrastructure issues around the state hospital. So we had a constructive, you know, conversation, sharing of information. I, I realized that sometimes, like Gene's almost always here, you almost assume she sort of knows what we're thinking. And sometimes it's, you know, it's actually helpful occasionally have conversations where, where she hears it or gets a reassurance that what she thinks she heard is what really is there. And the only other thing, Chris, I got to thank you for this, because I read it this week's Medfield Insider. I just want to acknowledge Ralph Costello's passing. I didn't, I didn't know that he'd passed away. So I didn't know about any of the things I, I, Ralph and I didn't know each other very well, that he was on the state hospital committees at the same time I was active in the state hospital. I think all, I know all of you probably know, he designed the old town village on South Street. And I think Pete, you, you might have. I, when we were first thinking about the state hospital and we were thinking about the Arboretum, I thought of him and saying, well, somebody who could produce that would have been a great possible person to do something up at the Arboretum, because it would have been a top-notch thing. And anyway, he's just one of those people that's been in town, that's had good things, and that's basically, sorry to hear that he passed away.
Scott Collins, father passed away. That was in the globe, Costello, no?
Oh, okay. Quite a knowledge. That's it.
All right, I too, I had, I think it was, I sent it to both you and Marion, I think, when New York State had my exciting day with ethics. I think, yeah, I think, I thought I kicked off 2025. I got that done as well. But I did sit in, I did not get to go to the Pine Street one, I wanted to. And as Christine and Chris are aware, unfortunately Rooney, thank God, is still alive. But he went in for dental surgery on Wednesday, when I left here two weeks ago. Came out of surgery fine, within 10 minutes, he almost died, he stopped breathing. I will give kudos to the Foxborough phenomenal staff. They, he told me he wasn't going to make the ride, but he, I went with him, he made the ride. And they, up at a vet place in Woburn, two nights ICU, but he's home. Probably waiting at the back door for me to get home to take him out, but thank God he's okay, the first dog of Medfield. So that's why I didn't make Pine Street. I really would have liked to have done that, but I was up at the ICU. Housing Authority had a meeting a week ago, Tuesday night, I believe. And they had, they had the attorney that's representing Rose Bay there, some residents that live in Tilted Village, some residents that live on Town Street. They went over kind of where they're at, they answered the questions that we had. So one of the concerns that I had was the RFP issued correctly, and Kurt James, our attorney, confirmed that the RFP that was issued back in 2021, that was honored roughly 2022, 2023 timeframe. They could still apply that. They did not have to reissue to, as we move forward with this, as they move forward with this Rose Bay project. So Brian McMillan, who had been granted it before, went through the process to get the letter to sign on to be the developer now. He is still waiting for a few more things in the state before he comes to the town to start the paperwork here. I did tell the group I was going to reach out to Brian. He did call me within 24 hours. I think we spoke like an hour and a half. And the one thing he wanted me to, if anyone's listening and they're concerned about what's happening with Rose Bay, is he is absolutely open to talking to the residents. All he's asking is, let him meet with the ZVA first, because he has the plans that he submitted to ZVA before, and they were like 90% done. He's, I just want to talk with them absolutely positively, all the residents that have questions, especially the neighbors. They can come to that meeting, and then he will, he will absolutely positively engage. He said last time around, he had one-on-ones, sat at people's kitchen tables, and he acknowledged that a lot of those neighbors have moved out. But he's like, Eileen, I'm not shy of talking to people. I just don't want to, I don't want to make any changes to a plan. And I can appreciate this, if you ever build a home, and then you're, you get the first round of architectural plans, kind of want to look at all the changes that may come before you then make that next round, because every time you touch it, it costs money. So he, there were some ideas that I shared with him that the residents shared with me. He's like, I'm not saying no to anything. I just need to get that first meeting so I can kind of feel where we're at at this point, what changes may have happened, et cetera. So it was good.
So I have some questions on that one. We asked the Medfield Housing Authority to come do a selectword meeting to answer some questions. They were going to come, and at the last minute said no on advice from their attorney, and then they held a public meeting. I tuned in for the session, the acoustics were.
The acoustics weren't very good, I got kicked off twice, the second time I didn't bother going back on. I had questions that were in the, the MDA that were absolutely, to the best my ability to hear at least, for as long as I was on the meeting, never getting answered. My question is, are they planning to come to a selectboard meeting to have the discussion that we asked them to come and have with us?
So the reason they didn't do, and to be honest, after hearing why they didn't come, I didn't actually have an issue with, um, for the Medfield Housing Authority to come. If we want to talk to them about their, their direction is one thing, but when it comes to, um, the process with the attorney having, having the, having it so that it was in the Medfield Housing Authority's kind of area versus having, having a go at it here when she was saying she was advised it wasn't kind of the right environment in the point of, I.
So that's fine?
Especially, I don't, I'm going to say this, because I, I'm a selectboard member, I'm on the Affordable Housing Trust, uh, representing the selectboard, and I'm on the Affordable Housing Trust liaison to the Medfield Housing, so I'm tagging all areas. So as a selectboard member, I went and that's, I presented myself as, as the selectboard member and also the Affordable Housing Trust liaison. They, they did not shy away from any of the questions. The, uh, the acoustics were horrible, because they used the MacBook as their speaker, but everyone was facing this way, because we had a couple of texts come in saying, I can't hear what's going on. They, we did, every question that we had, that we could ask the Medfield Housing Authority, we asked. Some of the questions that we had, like EV and whatever, that's all ZBA, that's got nothing to do with Medfield Housing Authority.
My questions had to do with the structure of the MDA, some specific paragraphs in the end.
So, okay, so we, so you asked about like the June and October didn't make sense because the timing was off. How can you be 50% in, uh, in, in October, but 100% in June? Those, what was shared with us is the MDA that we got was not the actual final MDA, because we even asked about, but, no, no, so.
Right, that's what we heard, right? That it was the reason.
So the ones, because I said, wait a minute, you, you have on here a comment about the lease, and he couldn't answer the question whether it was a 99-year lease or a 60-year lease, and he's like, let me look at it, and then he's like, wait a minute, I don't think the one you had was the one that we, the final one here. So if, if, if you want to make sure that we have the latest and greatest, I have no problem forwarding that along, but that's where there's some confusion, because there are edits made after the fact.
So my question was a specific one. Do they intend to come back now to have a, have a meeting with us? I think the answer's no. I like this project, and I am absolutely baffled at the behavior that I've seen to include the behavior I've seen over the last month. As a result, I'll tell everyone right now publicly, if this project comes before this board, I won't vote against it, because I like the project, I will abstain. So if there's one member of the board that's ready to approve it, that's fine, then it'll pass, but I will abstain on that vote. I don't understand the behavior.
So let me do that.
And it does, really bugs me.
So here's where, I, I'm okay with reaching out to Candace and the board and saying, come in, now that we've flushed out a lot of the, the concerns and what was legit, what wasn't legit, whether they have to have their attorney next go around or not, because he wasn't available that Tuesday night, and a lot of the questions ended up going to, to Curtis James. So I have no problem reaching out saying, come, they.
At this stage, they can do what they want. I, I have a position. I asked, we asked for them to come. They decided to tell us that that wasn't really the right thing to do. I don't, that doesn't sit well with me, but I'm not going to fight about it. My position is I will abstain from any votes, because I will not vote against it, because I like the project. That was driving me nuts.
If we were, if we were in a meeting and we had to meet, and we either needed Lisa Mead or Mark, and neither of them are available, would you still go for a board to be peppered for reasons like, ah, my attorney's not here, my attorney's not here, my attorney's not here? So they did not realize it was going to be so, so.
Why did they assume it was going to be that kind of a legal?
There's no vote that you're involved in unless they had come before you asking for a friendly 40B, which they have not.
It doesn't matter.
It's the ZBA's call.
That certainly.
You can certainly take a position and, uh, make a presentation to the ZBA on behalf of the town if you want to, but it's their jurisdiction.
If we have no role, then I have no issue. But in fact, we probably were wasting our time to ask them to come.
What we were asking to come to was to clarify some questions that we had. I went to the meeting and they clarified the questions that we, that I read.
That you.
Well, none of those, but I read, I read what, the letter that we submitted. I went through each area and, and read through and said, okay, uh, I don't have it in front of me otherwise, I could, but there were certain ones I realized, the EV was irrelevant, that's a ZBA, um, I forget the ones, there were like three other ones that I realized after listening to the discussion, that it's not to ask of the attorney, it's to bring it in front of the ZBA, because they're going to actually have more input. The Medfield Housing Authority, they, they were gracious, they, they weren't trying to hide from us, but I understood, once I got there, what their concern was coming to us that evening without having Kurt and being peppered and being like, well, our attorney, because they tried to Kurt a lot. I mean, it was, he was the one that became the, the gentleman managing the contract, or whatever it may be.
Now, I, and his opening line was, listen, anything here, as you just said, if you have any issues here, it's not, this don't ask questions now, it's with the ZBA, when it gets to the ZBA, answer the questions, and I'm fine. If, if the short answer is, we have no role in this process at all, I have no issue. But if we have a role, and if we are expected to approve anything because of what's happened, and because I can't figure out why it's happened, but the things that I'm concerned about, to include the very first time this was released, which was a contract written one way that then got turned into a sole source contract, which I think they now can still, the contractor can sort, the developer can still recover the costs of that prior flawed process in this one, if I read it right, that was one of my questions. But if we have no role, I have no issue.
Yeah, well, you could easily send that, that your question right there to fifteen.
I have no interest in doing that. We asked them to come, they elected not to come. That does not sit well with me at all, but it's, that's, well, fine with me if we have no role. So if we have no role, I'm good with it.
I may have a role, because I'm here, I'm in.
Well, you may have a role with the Affordable Housing Trust, that's a different issue. And, and again, I'm saying, I'm not saying I'm going to sit there and do my best to destroy this project, I'm saying if anything comes to us, the way this is played out, I will abstain. That's all. I publicly stating my position, that doesn't stop anything.
Right.
Even if two of us did it, it wouldn't stop.
So, uh, let me just finish my report.
I'm just trying to make sure we go to eleven o'clock.
Yes. Uh, so sat in that, talked to Brian, um, I reached out to a couple of neighbors, I had a great conversation with Irene O'Toole, um, she was able to sit in via iPad, because she couldn't make a meeting, so the, the neighbors heard the message that right now it really is, and it's in the hands of the ZBA before a lot of things can, can, can go forward in terms of discussions, because they hold a lot of the strings right now. Affordable Housing Trust did not meet this month, we are pushing that out to the beginning of February, and I'm sure that this will bubble up, um, post, uh, Medfield Housing Authority meeting. And then I, I'm planning to go to Connect 531, which is the old MMA meeting. Quick question on that, is there, is there any reason to go Thursday, or is it strictly just Friday and Saturday?
Thursday, Thursday afternoon, there's a speed coaching session for people who want to be town administrators, because I'm doing that. Then there is a women leading government session for an hour, uh, and then I think there's a welcome reception, but that's just Thursday.
Really have to go Thursday, it's just Friday, and I'm out of town.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be there, just because I have a, I have a Maya board meeting, and then I'm doing, I'm helping do the WLG and the speed coaching.
All right, and then is there any of that stuff going on Friday night that in the past where all the different vendors reach out and want to, uh, have gatherings afterwards?
Uh, I'll see, oh, it's very different this year, because it's not at the Hines. So it's very different having it at the C point.
Which is fine by me, I just want to make sure I didn't miss anything, or maybe I think we did.
Nope.
I shouldn't blow anybody up, because I actually have to get back here, uh, Friday, late afternoon, so. That is my report, but, uh, Chris, if you have any comments based on my report of.
Yeah, just two, two separate comments, um, piggyback on, piggy, piggybacking on what Gus had mentioned earlier about the Park and Rec meeting, and it was mentioned before about how great that was, I would send it to Medfield TV to make sure that they have it as part of their collection, because it'd be really good for people to be able to get, get to it. And then the second point is, Gus, about your comment, about if you don't, as a selectboard, don't have a role, then you don't care about this. Each one of you are elected by us in this town, so you do have a role to be a voice for the citizens of this town. So you as an individual, if there's something that bothers you, people who, who can, who, who know that you are elected, appreciate you hearing what you think, no matter where it is. So even if it says individual citizen, please do not feel like you do not have a role, because you do.
If they stuck it out with us, I did that.
Okay, you did, but I just feel very, I feel very strongly about that, that it's important that everybody has a voice.
My point about the processes, I'm not, first off, like I said, I like the project, I'm not trying to, I'm not doing a slash and burn scorched earth thing here. I am concerned about two things. I'm concerned about a committee or, you know, in town that's asked to come here, that decides, no, we don't need to do that. I won't fall my sword over that if we don't actually have any formal role. You know, it's, I'll, I'll express displeasure, but I'm not, if we don't have formal role, then that's, I've done all, all I choose to do at this point.
I mean, all I can say is as someone who has been trying to report on this project, and just be able to report on facts, just factual information, and not be able to get those facts for the last year, as the project has moved along and getting more frustrated and frustrated and frustrated, because this is the only, honestly, Christine, the whole team here in this building is fabulous with getting me information. And if I can't, if I, I need to write about something that's factual, and if I can't get documents as I'm going along, then I'm just sort of making assumptions as people are saying things, and I'm not going to write about something unless I can document it, unless I can have the factual information. And that factual information has been missing for the last year. So I appreciate you speaking up about this, because it, it, it makes other people more likely to hopefully provide the information when, when people are looking for it.
So the only thing I will, I will say to that is when I talked to Brian, I said, Brian, uh, I had a chance to meet Candace for the very first time, and she had said, if I need anything, you know, reach out, ask, I'll be, I said, Brian, I'm the nicest person on the face of the earth, until you look me square in the eye and say one thing, and then you go do something different. So I'm going into this with, we're all going to treat one another with respect, we're all going to deliver what we, what people ask for. If people don't go down that path, I probably won't be the nicest person to deal with. And I was very blunt with Brian, like, Brian, this is, this, you have the right, you have the ability to do this right, but do not skirt people, and he's like, I'm not. I was like, okay, I'm just, and the same thing will go with Candace, that met her, she told me anything I need, I will get the, that Kurt picked up on the fact that we probably didn't have the latest MDA. We made it clear that we had asked for it, and that's why we had confusion during the meeting. I said, I wasn't trying to say it was shady, it's shady if I ask for things, I don't get it, and it's because things are being covered up. So, uh, I think they watch these meetings, that, you know, I'm the nicest person, if you stay true to what you say you're going to do for me, but if it's, if anybody plays the, I'm just going to yes someone to death, and then when I come and ask something on behalf of the town, I'm getting skirted around, it's usually not pretty.
Yeah, right. You have the benefit of being in the position that you're in, for me trying to write about something and trying to get information, because I'm hearing it from all different people in the town, that they're frustrated, and I'm trying to help them get the information at, just factual information, and it, it has not been available.
I mean, I will say though, in, to the meeting, everyone that was there was very much for it, is what they, they, the ones that live in Tilden were, they, they, we need senior housing. Eileen DeSorga was passionate about needing senior housing. Um, I know a couple, I'm not going to say the neighbors, because I didn't introduce them, introduce, introduce themselves in the meeting, but I know one of those kid corner to the property, I pinged his wife the next morning, and she was like, no, he was, a lot of them picked up on the fact, ZBA is what we need to be. Like, they were there and they wanted to hear, but the next step is when ZBA meets with them, that's when they can go and have a little more voice. But I don't, I mean, Chris, I don't think anyone was adamant that we don't want this to happen. Everyone was very much for it.
This really needs to be brought to a close.
Oh, it is, because we're going to a topic, even though it was in my report, we're going, yes. So it's not that conversation. Put on the agenda, future day of the evening.
Can we go for two more minutes?
Nope. And I got a motion to retire.
I go to retire.
Hold on to the paper.
I got it.
It might be that pocket slot.
It is, it is 11 o'clock right now.